Sorry, I've never actually done that before, but I had to get all these boys' attention. That was kind of exciting. If Mayor Protem Pimentel's got the gavel, he's doing it all the time, so. All right, we are convening this open session. We are going to call this meeting to order, followed by that, uh, we'll do, actually we'll do roll call, and then after roll call, we'll have the invocation led by Father Alexi Smith. Thank you for being here again, of the St. Andrew Russian Greek Catholic Church, and then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our very own council member, Perstak. Madam Clerk, would you please do roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Baldino.
Here.
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Perstak.
Here.
Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Here.
Mayor Boils.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All, please rise for the invocation.
I like the gavel, Your Honor. Let us pray. In the words of Psalm 92, "It is good to give thanks to the Lord, to sing praises to your name almost high, to declare your steadfast love in the morning, and your faithfulness by night. O heavenly King, Comforter, Spirit of truth, Treasurer of blessings, and giver of life, we thank you for the gift of our city which you have entrusted to our care. Look upon this meeting of our city council tonight, and fill everyone who participates, be they council member, member of our city staff, members of the public providing input, fill them all with the spirit of your wisdom and light. May the members of our city council always act in accordance with your will, and may their decisions be for the greater good and well-being of all who live or work in our city. May we always experience the sense of community that enveloped our city following the victory of our world champion Little League team whom we honor this evening. Enable all of us to use wisely the gift that our city is, that we all might be led closer to you and to one another, and to the eternal blessings you promise. May we never neglect those of our residents who are less fortunate than are we. Amen."
Thank you, Father Alexi Smith. Thank you, Councilmember Perstak. All right, we've got an incredible presentation this evening. We're all very excited to have the Little Leaguers here tonight, and we have some people in the audience that would like to present commendations. Is that right? I believe we've got a certificate from Senator Alex Padilla. Lauren Gallant, yeah, if you could please approach the podium. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Boils, and members of the city council, our esteemed city leaders, city staff, and everyone present this evening. My name is Lauren Gallant. I'm a senior field representative for U.S. Senator Alex Padilla, and just really thrilled to join you all tonight to recognize El Segundo Little League. We've all been watching you and cheering you on, and the senator is so proud, and our office is so proud of everything that you've accomplished. So on behalf of U.S. Senator Alex Padilla in our office, I'm honored to present this award to El Segundo Little League. On the occasion of your leadership, teamwork, and winning the Little League World Series, sending best wishes for your continued success. And we're just so proud, and many, many thanks to your families and your coaches as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gallant. If you want to stick around for a picture, you're welcome to with the commendation. That'd be great. Thank you. Do we also have someone from West Basin? Yeah, so we have General Manager E.J. Caldwell here. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Boils, member of the council, and thank you for providing the opportunity to join everyone here today to recognize the remarkable achievement of the El Segundo Little League Twelve Under All-Stars. My name is E.J. Caldwell. I am the general manager of West Basin Municipal Water District, and I'm here on behalf of our board president, Scott Houston, a very proud El Segundo resident, and our West Basin Board of Directors. Though President Houston sends his regards and was unable to be here tonight, it is my pleasure to present this proclamation recognizing the El Segundo Little League All-Stars for winning the 2023 Little League World Series. The El Segundo Little League All-Stars are a huge inspiration to our community. These young men have made El Segundo, the South Bay, Los Angeles County, California, and our nation very proud. We are proud of your accomplishments and pleased to honor your team's determination, perseverance, resilience, and above all, your teamwork. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Caldwell. Same thing, stick around for a picture if you'd like, please. And then Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office had a representative. Unfortunately, she's not doing too well. I think she's sick. So they were kind enough to do individual certificates for every young man on the team, which is great, and so maybe we could do the photo with those and/or with ours. Yeah. Okay, and then we have a commendation. Council Mayor Giroux.
Whereas, a sport of baseball represents the heart and character of America, and for many years has been widely recognized as our nation's pastime. And whereas, the El Segundo Little League baseball program serves the youth of our community and is dedicated to teaching sportsmanship, teamwork, and the competitive will to win, as well as furthering physical fitness and well-being through healthy community activity with other youth. El Segundo Little League All-Stars players, managers, coaches, officials, parents, umpires, and countless others who work together in an atmosphere of collaboration and camaraderie to provide valuable training for the participants and thrilling entertainment for the spectators. And whereas, the city of El Segundo was proud to be home of the El Segundo Little League All-Stars for almost seventy years, and whereas, by its extraordinary efforts, this dynamic Little League All-Stars team won the 2023 Little League World Series Championship. And whereas, El Segundo Little League's accomplishment include three times District Thirty-Six Champions, three times Section Four Champions, two times Southern California State Champions, Western Region Champions, U.S. Champions, and to top it all off, the 2023 Little League World Series Champions. And where it is fitting that we recognize team manager Danny Bowley, coaches Tim Abrams and Eddie Lee, the parents, sponsors, volunteers, and spectators who gave so freely of their time, energy, financial and moral support, and provided the team with the opportunity to enjoy baseball and to learn the basic ideals of fair play and good sportsmanship. And whereas, it is especially fitting that we recognize the team members who competed with great passion, intensity, and heart to achieve the extraordinary team effort of winning the World Series Championship on Saturday, August 26, 2023. Lennon Salazar, Colby Lee, Finley Green, Ollie Parks, Quinn Bowley, Crew O'Connor, Declan McRoberts, Max Baker, Lucas Keldorf, Jackson Kalish, Louis Lappi, and Brody Brooks. Everybody calls you Louis, right? It's never Louis. And whereas, El Segundo Little League All-Stars dedication, determination, hard work, high standards, and values are commendable and integral to their successful journey. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the city council, the city of El Segundo, California hereby commend and congratulate the 2023 El Segundo Little League All-Stars World Series Champions on their successful season, and extend this expression of community pride in the accomplishments of this exceptional team.
That was almost as long as the Candy Cane Lane one right there. You know, you know what's cool? I don't know if you guys know this, the boys, but these get in, put into the official records for City Hall, and those, that accommodation, your names will be in the public records for the next several hundred years. It's pretty cool. Seriously, no joke. So, uh, really exciting stuff, and we have commendations for you. Any of my colleagues like to say a couple of words? Okay, Councilmember Giroux said it so well. So if we could do a photo up here? Boys, if you don't mind, the coaches would love to come up and do a photo, please. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the, some council members or the adults up above, or if we fit and we're okay. Not too much, not too much, because we have, we got this wire here.
Okay, let's see. Who we got? Who we got? All right, we have some representatives, too.
Want us on the end, maybe?
Yeah, let's see if we can fit in, yeah. Let's see if we can fit in. We're gonna try and cram everybody in here. All right. All right, there we go. Well, that's pretty good up there. That's pretty good. I like that. All right. Okay, very good. All right, we got everything? All right, all right. There you go, but don't cover your face. You wanna see that handsome face? All right, everybody's, everybody's there. I see everybody. I think I see everybody. Okay. All right. All right, a couple of photos here, and if you could look in this last first, can everybody have an opportunity to get a shot? Okay, here we go. Just don't want the eyeballs to go all over. All right, here we go. Smile. You're the world champions. Come on, you're not gonna smile now? We're gonna get a smile. All right, and just one more for luck. All right, now wait, wait, wait. We have a lot of folks.
I'll take one. Ready? One, two. Adorable. Okay, look at Catherine.
Kobe, smile.
Don't smile, Kobe. Don't do it.
Mr. Gallant.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Drew, am I allowed to say something real quick?
Yeah, please, please.
I don't like to speak in public, but, uh, I've already said a lot, but I've talked to the players and the colleagues and some coaches and some El Segundo legends, and they'd asked me to, when I got here today, to ask you guys if it was okay on that new scoreboard that we get a sign-up that says, "Home of 2023 Little League World Series Champions." I think that'd be really cool for the city to see, and that'll be up there forever. Um, and I don't know if this is the proper way to present it, but hopefully you guys can take it from here and get that done.
We'll ignore the city attorney. I think everyone's probably in favor of that up here.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. All you do.
Thank you. Yeah, and the ball, the ball is gonna go up in the library, public library. That's awesome. Thank you. In a case. Amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Legends, legends are leaving the room. All right. We'll give it a minute here, and
we'll get right into public communication. many folks we have expressing interest in speaking this evening?
I have eleven so far.
Eleven so far. Okay. We're gonna limit the comments at three minutes each. Three minutes per comment, okay? Normally, we do five, but limited thirty minutes, so we're gonna keep it nice and succinct, please. All right, so Madam Clerk, who's up first?
We have Joe Lopez Morales? Morales? Not great at names. Sorry, guys.
Good evening, Mayor Boils and council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I'm here today in honor of the Brad Kaminsky Foundation. We fundraise for brain cancer research. Uh, we're gonna be hosting our sixteenth event this coming November twelfth, the Super Heroes of Hope Race for Research. Uh, this is the poster right here. Um, we are grassroots campaign, a grassroots organization, and, uh, we have been doing this for sixteen years. Uh, we fundraise for brain cancer, as I just mentioned, and all the funding we do fundraise does stay here in LA County. Uh, so one of the coolest things that I find is coolest, because any of our donors get to decide where their funding goes to, so it gets to go to either UCLA Hospital, UCLA Health, to the Cedar Sinai Hospital, or the Children's Hospital LA. Um, although the event itself does benefit the entire LA County, uh, the community of El Segundo plays a key role because they're always invested in the event, because the event does take place here in Playa del Rey, Dog Whaler State Beach. And at this point, at this particular time, I want to invite you, Mayor Boils, and the council members, to participate in the ceremony at the end of the event by helping us to pass out the medals the day of the event. It would be an honor to have you guys out there and just help us be part of this significant event that's really affecting positively the community of El Segundo and all of LA County.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Send us an email, will you, with the details?
I sure will. Now, at this time, I do want to invite Lizé Rodríguez. She is, uh, has been a part of our, uh, this organization, uh, and has been, can tell you firsthand what it's like, what we're doing, and, um, you know, how you can contribute a little more.
Thank you, Jose, and thank you, everyone. Hello, um, my name is Liz Rodríguez, as Jose just shared. And first and foremost, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to, um, bring awareness to this cause, and for me to share the story of our son. Dad is here with me today, our son Joey, and what he's gone through these last eleven years. Um, I'll be brief. Um, at just six years old, Joey was diagnosed with brain tumor cancer, an inoperable brain stem tumor, pilocytic astrocytoma, stage one. Um, at that time, of course, our life changed. Since then, he's been on eleven years of chemotherapy, on and off. Um, due to this great cause and this amazing organization, sorry, um, he's been able to get on the clinical trial. Um, he was on the clinical trial for two and a half years, worked great, but unfortunately stopped working. Um, since then, he had to jump back on traditional chemo. We continue to raise funds. We participated in this walk all these eleven years, and just recently, about two months ago, he was going to have his fourth craniotomy. At that time, he came to me and said, "Mom, um, I don't know whether", he's seventeen now, and he said, "Mom, I don't know whether to ask God for mercy or just accept my faith." And I told him, "Joey, we have to keep fighting, keep our faith strong, and you're not alone. We're in this together. You have, you know, the entire support of the family and the entire support of the community together with this walk." Um, he said, "Okay, let's keep going." Thankfully, he's on a new medication. He's doing great. He's strong. He's a senior now. Um, but I really plead for all of you to please support this cause. It really makes a difference in our lives and Joey's lives, but in the lives of many others who are struggling with such battles, adults as well. And not only for brain tumor cancer itself, but twenty percent of all cancer is spread to the brain. So, you know, the, this really makes a difference. The funds go directly to the hospitals here. He's been treated at Children's Hospital LA all these years, and, um, we hope for a miracle, um, for mercy, and we hope to see you there at the walk this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodríguez. What's, can you give us the name of the, is there a website? I saw the flyer, but is there a website as well?
Um, yes. Um, you can go to Heroes of Hope Race 2023. Um, there's multiple teams there. Um, Joey's team is Team Batman, um, but there are several teams there, or you can just join the, the overall main team. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next up is Steve Garrity.
Jeff Hart.
Jeff Hart? Sorry, sir.
Oh, good. I've heard worse. Uh, Mayor Boils, city council, thank you for inviting me this evening, giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I come to you right now as the principal of El Segundo High School. I felt compelled to come and represent the Eagles, particularly as this evening you decide on item D-14, an amendment to the Joint Use Agreement, and specifically the Joint Use Agreement as it relates to public recreation facilities. Um, I'm in my second year as principal at El Segundo High School, and I do recognize the longstanding tradition of the Joint Use Agreement between the city and El Segundo Unified School District. It's been a part of my everyday life since I've been principal, and so I understand exactly how important that is. I am grateful to have been a part of the negotiating team with city manager Darrell George and Ally Mancini, as we have exchanged information, exchanged, um, needs, and sort of met each other in the middle and collaborated overall on the needs of El Segundo Athletics, as well as the meetings we've had in the office. We've been able to give, um, Ally Mancini a tour of all of our facilities, not just the high school, but all of the school district facilities. And, um, these conversations and the collaboration have really demonstrated how the Joint Use Agreement, specifically how it provides an essential service that meets the needs of all El Segundo High School programs, or many El Segundo High School programs, including swimming, water polo, tennis, and I think there's some tennis players here this evening. As a matter of fact, didn't know they were coming, but what's up, fellas? Um, and I think it was pretty fitting that tonight we're representing or recognizing the baseball team, because we all know about how there's no onsite baseball field and the importance of that, and so it really sort of demonstrates where the city wants to recognize that baseball team and the interplay between them. And it's my hope to welcome all of those players at El Segundo High School in a couple of years, and through this agreement, they will continue the success. Mayor Boils, you called them legends. We want to keep these legends home and give these legends facilities to, to continue to operate. Um, with that, just under about seventy percent, if you didn't know, of all El Segundo High School students participate in one sport or another, which really demonstrates that this Joint Use Agreement not only supports El Segundo Unified School District or El Segundo High School, it's actually a community support. It goes beyond just what the high school is. If seven out of every ten students that are on my campus participate in one of the sports, and one of the ways that even those that don't participate in the Joint Use Agreement have space on campus to participate in their sport, it's because we have a Joint Use Agreement that allows those other sports outside of our campus to be able to utilize. And as you know, it's resulted in great success. Couple of weeks ago, you actually had the state and CIF championship-winning volleyball team in here. We know about soccer's success. We know, you know, referencing the pool, we know that last year's boys' swimming team won the CIF championship and sent representatives to the state. We know about the history of the girls' soccer team, and our soccer uses some facilities offsite. So there are consistently successful programs that are supported by this agreement. And because of that consistent success, that success, again, as represented by tonight, is not just El Segundo High Schools, it's the city's success. We share all of that. So I've appreciated this opportunity to partner with and collaborate with city personnel in the past. I'm grateful to the city for their steadfast and continued support of El Segundo High School moving forward, because one of the things I appreciate the most about El Segundo in the couple of years that I have been here is its pride in being a cohesive community that retains a commitment both to its history as well as its future. And that pride is demonstrated in situations where their commitment shows that we're committed to all students. Thank you. Almost right on the mic. Thank you, Mr. Gethard. Okay, next up. And that pride is demonstrated in situations where their commitment shows that we're committed to all students. Thank you.
Almost right on the mic. Thank you, Mr. Gerhardt. Okay, next up.
Hello, council members. My name is Caleb Tsai, and I'm the captain of the El Segundo High School Boys Tennis Team. Ever since I was nine years old, I've had a racket in my hand and even had some of my earliest lessons on the tennis courts of ESHS. Since stepping onto the campus, for years, I had a goal of representing our high school team, a goal shared by many of my teammates here today. As you can guess, then, we were all disappointed by the removal of our home courts, but thanks to the joint use agreement, we were able to continue playing and representing our community. Despite having fewer resources than other teams, we clinched the league title for the first time in El Segundo history and narrowly missed the CIF finals by just one game. Our team has shown dedication, playing late into the night on five courts and then rising early the next day for AP exams and zero-period classes. But we still want to continue that dedication. As a team that was mostly made up of underclassmen last season, our players are committed to working hard and winning CIF at our home ground in Recreation Park. Walking around the city lately, I've seen four words posted everywhere. "We're proud of our boys." And although we're not looking for a grand parade, these words describe the motivations of our players. "We're here to make El Segundo proud." So as we look forward to the next season, we kindly request your support for the use of six tennis courts. We hope that the community will celebrate the accomplishments of this tennis program and play a role in helping the new underdog story of El Segundo tennis that's just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tsai.
Bill Watkins.
I hate to kill the mojo, but we typically refrain from applause during public comments. Thank you. Dr. Watkins.
Thank you, Mayor Boyles and City Council. I, I happened to be present in nineteen ninety, when I sat down and Carl Jacobson was there and the city council, some of the city council people. And we came to an agreement to have one of the classrooms at El Segundo High School's new media center be used as a television studio. It just happened. Like most of the things at that time, when there was a need, we worked together to accomplish that. And so we had the space and the city had the need. The benefit of that program also helped our students, because it was actually a class where the students could go in and actually do TV shows. So it worked really together. And that was all done between the city and the school district, because we had a joint need. The use of the tennis courts, when I was tennis coach, we played all of our matches down there. I don't think there was any written agreement or anything, but they knew we were down there, and on the days of the matches, we played. And that was in the nineteen seventies, a little bit of time ago. Our libraries had a need, and the city stepped up. And for the first time, I could go to conferences and say we had a unique agreement where our students were all part of the city's library system. They could get books, as well as city people get one of the books from the high school, if need be. Again, part of the joint use, part of agreement between the two of us. Our pool, Earl Osari Swim Stadium, is named after a teacher from El Segundo High School, who happened to be one of the great swim coaches of all time in our country, took a United States Olympic water polo team in nineteen sixty-four to Tokyo. Our baseball field is named after a baseball coach, John Stevenson, probably one of the finest people I knew and a good friend. And the other baseball field is named after one of the great players to come out of El Segundo. Possibly one of the young men that you saw here today will continue on in that tradition, as he plays on Stevenson Field to represent El Segundo. The pools, the tennis courts, all of it, we work together. I understand that we're in a dynamic world, and the city has its needs, but I would hope that working together, because both the school district and the city represent the same people. They're our constituents at the school district, and they're your constituents here. And what we can offer together is an agreement between the city and the school district to maintain that kind of joint use, that kind of environment. Again, I understand you have your needs, and certainly the school district has theirs, but there's no reason why what occurred back in nineteen ninety doesn't keep going. We can all work together for the benefit of all of our students and all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watkins.
Hello. My name is Camden Chen, and I'm on the El Segundo Tennis Team. I'm here to talk about the courts at Rec. If we remove one court at Rec, we will be down from five to four courts. This means we will not be able to practice efficiently nor play matches in a timely manner. That presents two options for us. One, we must go to Raytheon and to play on the tennis courts there. However, that poses a danger. This is because we would have to drive there, and driving there is not an option for many people. This means that we would have to carpool with our senior and junior friends. However, many of them are not certified to drive us, and that would be illegal. In addition, walking there is just not possible, and many of us won't be able to do so due to the high intensity traffic. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
My name is Chase Leyes, and it's an honor to speak to you all tonight. I'd like to address how important tennis is to me and the high school. Losing any more courts would be, would have devastating impacts on the tennis program. The boys' tennis team reached CIF semifinals last year for the first time in her school's history. Losing more courts would mean less touches during practice. This limitation will affect our performance when we have shown how far we can go. I know our tennis team can represent El Segundo proudly, where the support and the facilities available to maximize our potential. So I'm humbly asking that you continue working with the school district to ride the courts at Rec Park for our practices and matches. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Paul Rayburn.
Good evening, council members. I, I just wanted to express, as you've heard already, the importance of the tennis program at the high school, both for girls and boys. I was fortunate enough to act as the volunteer assistant coach for the boys' tennis team last year and plan to do so again this year, schedule permitting, but I'm gonna do everything I can to make that happen with my schedule. And have you seen, as you've seen, there's passion and interest in the team, more so than I understand for many years. And so I, as given a role as a parent in town and the assistant volunteer coach for the boys' team, appreciate the efforts that the city made to work with the school district last year to provide courts that were needed for the season, and what I understand is already happening this year with the girls' team. And so I'm here just to reiterate the importance of continuing to work together, the city and the school district, for facilities. And I understand that the joint use agreement is broad and encompasses many issues, but I'm just here on an arrow issue to say thank you for working together with the school district in the past, and I appreciate the efforts going forward to continue to make it happen, because I see firsthand the benefit of the use of the courts at Rec Park for the El Segundo High School tennis teams, both the boys and the girls. And it's been, it's been really rewarding, and you, you know, you can see the interest that's here, and I just want to see that continue. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Coach Rayburn.
Jay Heschler.
Good evening, council. So, actually, I thought we did public comments during the item, but these are all coming ahead of time. Is that the way this is working?
If it's a public hearing, is that one a public hearing? Are you talking about downtown? Downtown?
Item fourteen.
Downtown, specific plan?
No, it's about the stop sign at Oak Avenue.
Oh, then no, that comes now.
Okay, good, good, good. All right. I'm Jay Heschler, two thirty-two Oak Avenue. Thanks for having me here tonight. One of the topics tonight is, is the, you guys are considering a four-way stop at Oak Avenue and Main Street. I understand that the traffic report was negative, but I've lived on Oak Avenue for ten years, and that, the crosswalk there at the corner of Oak and Main, which is the northwest corner of the high school, is the only unprotected crosswalk on Main Street, or at least in that area. I've seen many instances where cars are going by there at, you know, thirty-five miles an hour. They don't see the stop, they don't see the crosswalk. In fact, there's a little crosswalk sign that is constantly knocked over, if that gives you an idea of the, the velocity of cars that come through there. I know of three different instances where, where kids have been hit in that crosswalk. It's very dangerous, and so having a, a stop sign there certainly helps the public safety issue, but also it's a, it's a traffic calming on Main Street. You know, people go as fast as they can between Maple and, and Pine, the next street there, and it's just, I'd really love to see some traffic calming there and, and help the kids cross that street. So please consider that when you guys, when that issue comes before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heschler.
Debbie Schrum.
Hi, my name is, okay, I can't, can you hear me? My name is Debbie Schrum, and I live in town. I'm just gonna read this. "I moved to the city because it was a small town where its population bonded together to make the city a proud place to live. It's disheartening for me as a taxpayer of the city and its schools to learn that the city council wants to take the schools' tennis courts away from them and give priority to people that will benefit by coming to El Segundo to utilize what should be their courts. I wonder what the decisions made by those of this council would be if you had high school students in this tennis program, or that, do you realize that they have excelled and went to the CIF this year? Look at this team. They are, really, really want you to support them, and I hope that you will, just as we support baseball. Thank you."
Thank you.
David Hollup.
Well, waiting on David to come up. I just have to say this, because I don't know where the confusion came about taking tennis courts, but there's no intention of taking tennis courts away.
And this is the second time this has happened?
Not any staff report that I've read or anything else. So anyone else that thinks tennis courts are on the cutting board?
Second time.
No, I'm gonna, I can make a comment as mayor about a public comment, Councilman Baldino, and I just want to set the record straight that unless I'm wrong, has there been any mention of taking tennis courts away? Thank you for clarifying, please.
Okay. I wrote these remarks with a five-minute time limit in mind, so we'll see how much I can get through in three, so I'm gonna read really fast. Good evening, my name is David Hollup. I'm an El Segundo resident, parent, small business owner, member of C-Change, and tonight, a corrector of gross misinformation from the non-agendized presentation Chief Bermudez gave at the last council meeting. If you missed those remarks, because after all, it wasn't on the agenda, they start around the twenty-three minute forty-second mark of the recording. In that discussion, Chief Bermudez and Councilmember Drew discussed bail reform, with an apparent lack of understanding what bail is and isn't, how these changes to the bail schedules came about, and what the impact of bail reform has been. They said it was unelected L.A. Superior Court judges implementing this change, with Chief Bermudez saying, in essence, we've had people who have not been voted into office making policies about zero bail. First, L.A.'s Superior Court judges are elected, and second, L.A. Superior Court has explicit authority under the California Penal Code to set uniform county bail schedules. They referenced the failed Prop twenty-five from twenty twenty, saying this change goes against the will of the people. Prop twenty-five proposed a different bail system that would have completely ended all cash bail, that even bail reform advocates were against. Councilmember Drew said that L.A. County Court only put this policy in place due to the COVID emergency and is making it a permanent policy for no apparent reason whatsoever, which is patently false. The reasons are laid out quite clearly in the L.A. County Superior Court's release on the new schedules. Moreover, these efforts at reforming the broken bail system have been going on since two thousand seventeen, which is where these recommendations came from. And this is not some out-of-nowhere-new idea. Dozens of jurisdictions, both Democratic and Republican-led, from New Jersey to DC to Kentucky, have implemented bail reform in recent decades. Most egregiously, though, Councilmember Drew, in his remarks, said, "There are zero repercussions for anything that happens anymore, and there is literally nothing to deter, deter anyone from doing anything wrong." To say that because there is no cash bail, there is no punishment, is nonsense and conveys a serious lack of understanding of the American justice system. Bail is not punishment, and it never is intended to be. Rather, it's a way of securing an arrestee's agreement to abide by certain conditions and return to court for future hearings and to reduce the risk to public or victim safety. As we all know, everyone is presumed innocent until convicted guilty, or they plead guilty, and that is when punishment is imposed. Just like with the prior bail schedules, this bail discussion relates only to pre-trial detention. Defendants are still required to show up for their court date or face punishment, and still, of course, can face punishment if they are convicted. The U.S. Supreme Court has stated that in our society, liberty is a norm, and detention prior to trial is the carefully limited exception. As the chief noted, this is, this policy has been in place previously in L.A. during COVID, and again in twenty twenty-two. There is data on this in L.A., in California, and in many other jurisdictions, and none of them show that this policy leads to an increase in crime. Crime has gone up in jurisdictions without bail reform and with bail reform, with progressive DAs. It's, these policies are not related to the increases in crime. So saying so is just not supported by the facts. I commend Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel for clarifying some of these points and talking about the debate that we should have about these policies. Got that far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollup.
Eric Peterson.
Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Eric Pedersen. Good to be here tonight. Good to see everybody back from a beautiful summer. I'm here just because my partner and I love this city. And a couple of you got something from me last night, because I just realized this meeting was today with my passion. And five years, five years I've been in this little town. I came down Main Street, saw a corner that looked so dilapidated, it looked like it needed some help. And certainly, Almir and I have put our lives into that corner. And we see the passion of the city, the Little Leaguers putting us on the map like, like no other. We're trying to do the same with a different kind of operation here. We're excited to have a new chef. But I just want to emphasize to you all that we're here to be helpful. We're really here, and I'm almost, it's kind of a plea, because this whole development thing is very important to us and the city. And you talk about the traffic issues. There's a lot of talk, the development meetings I've been to, about reducing Main Street a little bit. The gentleman that talked about traffic issues, we got him right in front of us too on Pine. But there's a lot of things, I just want to say very quickly, because I can talk a lot, and I only got three minutes, but it's like I was involved with Mayor Bloomberg in New York. Union Square is where my operations were, and putting bicycle lanes in and all that. There's so much conflict with communities and all that stuff. It's, to me, it's very simple. We have a beautiful little city, and there's a lot of things that can be done very quickly. And I'm just here to say, keep moving. We're here to be as helpful as we can, and we need your help, too, with what I'm doing. So that's all I got to say. Good to see everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pedersen.
Hello, everyone. Hi, my name is Anna Miners. I am coming to you as a resident who lives on Oak and Main, basically. We live right above Oak or Main. We've lived there for five years, and we've used the crosswalk, you know, walking to the park and going to school. And I have seen some horrible, almost crashes. It's hard to turn left when, you know, cars are coming so quickly. My daughter was hit by a car last April. She'll speak as well, but I really think that a four-way stop at that intersection is key. It's so important. Cars race down from Maple, they cruise fast from Mari Poza. There's this gap of, of autobahn that's going on. I don't know what traffic, you know, study happened, but just as a resident and a parent, I think that it's really something to take into consideration because people are in jeopardy. I was sitting at the light, or at the stop sign. or at the stop sign the other day, and I was going to turn onto Main. And there was a little boy who was just walking across the street, and a car was driving so quickly and just went right past him. He didn't even realize that he was about to be hit by a car. I slammed on my horn, and he thought I was honking at him. And it was a car, you know, I was honking at the car that was about, she didn't even see that there was a kid there. It's just, it's out of control. It really needs to be addressed. I am telling you, as a parent who went through their child being hit by a car in the crosswalk after school, that this needs to be done because someone's gonna die. It's gonna happen if we don't take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miners.
Eva Dora Morini? Hi, um, this is not working. Okay, anyways. Hi, my name is Eva Dora Morini, and I am speaking to have a stop sign on the Oak and Main crosswalk. So on April 26th, I was walking across this, I was coming home from school, and I always used to cross the Oak and Main crosswalks because I live on Oak, so it just made, it just made sense. So I was walking across, I was walking across the crosswalk, and this car came in at twenty-five miles an hour and didn't see there was a crosswalk there. So the car came and hit me, and I was flown up in the air, and I was knocked unconscious. And I was rushed to the hospital with a concussion. And it's, I'm very lucky that I'm able to be standing here today and being able to speak here and tell you the importance of why it's really important to have a stop sign there because families and kids and adults all walk across that street. And I think it's just very important to have some, like a stop sign there. So we save people's lives, and no one has to go through getting hit by a car. Who knows what if it's like a truck or something? But it's just like, it's just safer. And it's just for the city too. Just have something to keep the city safe and everyone in the town safe.
We're glad you're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eva.
Thank you.
All right, that is it for public comments. Last call, no one. Thank you, everybody, for your input. Counsel, I mean, yeah? Yeah, please, go ahead, yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for, I appreciate that.
Can you just state your name? Because I didn't get it clearly. Thank you.
I don't care about it. I talk loud, so you can all hear me.
Really? Okay, you need to hear me.
Yeah, it goes out to TV. You're on TV right now, so.
Great, okay. Anyway, nice to meet you all. My name is Branwyn Steinhouser. I have been the good, had the good fortune with my husband and I to be residents of El Segundo for over thirty-five years. Yes, I moved here when I was two. We have lived on Oak and Avenue for thirty-two years. And when we moved there, young whippersnapper, drive down, go to Main, turn left, no problem, turn right, no problem. Well, now thirty-two years have gone by, and I'm older. And my husband and I, for years, have both talked about the safety issues that we've seen at that four-way intersection there. And, you know, meeting more neighbors down the street, it's kind of nice to find a collective that we're not the only crazy ones thinking that this is a problem waiting to happen. We did not know about, we knew about a couple of the accidents. We didn't know that there were more. I know you guys are busy. You have a lot on your schedule. But it, you know, being a resident living there this long, I'm getting older. It is a little harder. I do see people walking dogs. I do see kids. I, a lot of my friends who come to visit, we all know to avoid that cross-section at certain times of the day. Shouldn't have to do that. Kids shouldn't have to worry about walking across, dogs, people, walking, all that. So we'd just really appreciate you all really considering the importance of the safety of the four-way Stein's cross, I don't know what you call it, but you know what I'm talking about. Anyway, implementing a four-way stop sign at the corner of, or the intersection of Oak and Main. I think it would do a great service to the community. And I do believe strongly that it would save lives. And that's important because we all want lots of happy people in El Segundo. So thank you for your time, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steinhouser.
And if you do it, I'll make donuts for everybody while you're, I'll even help paint.
Homemade donuts.
I'll even help paint the stripes because I'm an artist.
All right, before we go to the city manager. Strike that comment.
Yeah, exactly. Before we, well, yeah, before we, yeah, thank you. Before we go to the city manager, any comments from the dais related to public comments? I know I stated mine. Any others? Okay, city manager.
Yes, just before I give my Hyperion report, I was taking notes on all the speakers. And as the mayor stated, the tennis courts, there's no change in tennis court usage or designability, I think, tonight. But we'll follow up in discussions with them. A number of the items will be discussed later on in the agenda as it relates to joint use agreement, the downtown specific plan, will be discussions about Main Street and other design features within that area. And then the four-way stop is also on the agenda for consideration. It'll be, a report will be given by our Public Works Department. So let me just.
Thank you. And while he's going up to the dais, great job, tennis and the CIF. That's awesome. Mr. George?
Yes, mayor and councilors, I usually do. I report on the happenings over at Hyperion Water Treatment Plant. And I guess fortunately, my list of items is getting shorter. So I do have a couple items, though, I'd like to report on. The most important thing is that on September 6th, our AB 1216 did pass the California Senate floor vote with the twenty-six yes votes and seven no votes, led by Senator Ben Allen, who served as the floor manager for the bill. So very good news there. The bill is now on the governor's desk for signature, or for consideration for signature. And it's funny, I was driving in this morning, and evidently, there's a little over a thousand bills on the governor's desk right now to be considered. So hopefully, he gets to ours. And I think it's gotta be done by October, middle of October. So we're keeping in constant contact with our lobbyist up in Sacramento who continually checks on that in the governor's office. AQMD, in the last two weeks, has responded to approximately ninety complaints relating to odors from Hyperion. There were not a sufficient number of confirmed complaints, though, on any one day to establish a public nuisance. In terms of activity on the plant itself, on Monday, a contractor for Hyperion began replacing the tank covers. On primary battery C and B, this replacement work is expected to last until the end of December of this year. Work hours will be conducted on weekdays between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And during the work, the old covers will be lifted up, which may release some odor. But in order to reduce the odor, only one section of each tank will be worked on at a time. And prior to the cover replacement work, each tank will be cleaned. So that's taking place as we speak. The scrubbers are also being rehabilitated by Hyperion. This task is scheduled for completion by the end of September, the end of this month. And then also, we continue to work with Dr. Stenstrom on his review of all of the reports that come out of Hyperion. But more importantly, he is also creating an internal dashboard to keep, as was discussed in our meetings with all of the electeds a few weeks back. He's working on creating an internal dashboard to keep track of Hyperion's progress on those thirty-three measures that were identified in the ad hoc advisory committee report. So we will have that together soon for review by the ad hoc, our own Hyperion ad hoc committee. So that is it, my comments. Thank you. Any?
Any comments or questions? I got one. I saw an email come through. Supervisor Mitchell also supported AB 1216 with a letter to the governor. That's good, that's a powerful position.
Yes, that was very helpful. A letter from the supervisor's office, as well as we did receive a nice letter from AQMD themselves that went to the governor.
That's great. So just real quick, the primary tank covers, that has been the primary source of odor, has it not? And I remember that was one that had the super-long lead time. We were waiting on these custom fabricated tanks. So that should make a huge difference for the residents when that's done.
We really think so.
But it could be bad in the interim, is what we're saying, right?
It could be, yes.
How long will that process take?
I think they're scheduled to be completed by the end of December.
So it starts now through December?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that was it on my list. Anything else, guys? Good stuff. All right. Thank you for that. Let's see, we've got consent. Any polls for consent? Items three through nine. Oh, thanks, Madam Clerk. Have a motion to read all ordinances by title only, please.
So moved.
Have a second?
For six seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk, five zero. Any polls on consent? No. Do I have a motion to approve items three through nine?
So moved.
Thank you.
For six seconds.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Okay, we made some changes to the order. We're going to present item ten, and then we're gonna go to fourteen, twelve, and thirteen, and then eleven after that. So item ten is a resolution modifying the basic salary range for the chief of police and the monthly stipend for the city clerk classifications. And I see HR manager, director, excuse me, Rebecca Reddick coming up to present.
Adjust it for short people. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. The item before you this evening adjusts the salary range for the chief of police by seven percent and the monthly stipend for the city clerk position by $1,000 per month. The chief of police salary range in adjustment considers changes to positions that were made last month with the unrepresented management and confidential employees. The chief of police position was not included in that. It also considers, we are beginning labor negotiations with our police captains and police lieutenants. So it considers potential compaction issues with the labor negotiations. And then lastly, our, we will be conducting an executive recruitment for a chief of police position. So it's good to evaluate the salary before running the recruitment. The second item in the report is an increase in the monthly stipend for the city clerk. So the city clerk's office has had a full-time vacancy for over one year. And it has been challenging during that time attracting qualified candidates who have city clerk experience. So during this time, the city clerk's office has determined that they're able to maintain service levels without that additional position. The city clerk's stipend has remained the same since 2016. So it's been the same for quite some time. An increase in this stipend would consider the additional hours worked by the city clerk. And then during this time of this current fiscal year, we would propose to maintain the vacancy at the assistant city clerk level, which would result in significant savings for the department's budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Reddick. Any questions?
Motion approved?
Yeah, just real quick. I just want to thank you for everything you've done. Your man's job, as we like to say.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one question? Can, can I ask one question, then? At, at the end of this term, will we seek to eliminate the Assistant City Clerk position?
We have things to discuss.
Pardon?
We will have things to discuss. That, that would be something that would have to go to the voters, correct? No. We would have.
Not the Assistant City Clerk?
Not the Assistant, but we may be discussing the elimination of an elected City Clerk.
That would go to the voters.
That goes to the voters. Then you would still, then you would need, still need a clerk.
Just 'cause, not everyone can hear us, I think what we're talking about is, uh, in the past, we made a decision, well, we actually voted as a council to put on the ballot to make the City Treasurer no longer an elected official and, and appointed official or hired by the City Manager, and so what has been, been discussed just now is whether or not we wanna take a similar action with the City Clerk position. So, anything to add there, Daryl? That's future stuff, I think, right?
No, it is future stuff, but it's, in terms of the assistant position, uh, that'll be evaluated over the course of the next year and see and, uh, you know, the, how that works out during that period of time before that decision's made.
Yeah, because that'd be significant salary savings.
Yes, absolutely.
And to be clear, that idea came from our then-elected City Treasurer. Um, so I look forward to what our Clerk's Department has to say about this issue.
Yes.
Yep. Uh, all right, so we have a motion, but before we do that, Mr. Hans- sorry, would you please read the title of the resolution?
Yes, Mayor, Council. A resolution modifying the basics monthly salary range for various job classifications is ready for adoption.
Thank you, sir. We have a first, we have a second?
For six, so moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero? Thank you. All right, item fourteen is the amendment to the joint use agreements with the El Segundo Unified School District and Director of Recreation and Park, Community Services. Everything related to Community Services is here to present.
Yes, Mayor, well, well, uh, Recreation Parks and Library Director is getting her presentation together. I would just like to open this item up and, and just start out by saying, uh, first of all, thank you to Ms. Mancini, to the, um, Superintendent Moore, Dr. Moore, um, the business, Lead Business Officer, Kim Lentz, over at the School District. Uh, because for the past year, we have been meeting regularly, particularly Ally and Kim, meeting regularly on this item to really go line by line through the agreement, uh, the joint use agreement. As you know, it is, uh, it's been ten years since that agreement's been thoroughly looked at, and we, we certainly did do that, uh, over the course of this past year when the Council and the School Board extended the agreement for one more year. So tonight we'll be presenting what is, um, a, 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 an agreement that is, um, that is mostly, um, uh, in agreement, if you will, but there are items that we wanted to discuss tonight with the Council, um, but we feel confident that we can, we can come together and make this, uh, this agreement work. So I'll pass that on to Ally.
Should I go ahead?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Boils, members of the City Council. Um, as Daryl mentioned, tonight I am before you to present a proposed joint use agreement with the El Segundo Unified School District. Still not switching slides. Okay, well, I'll go ahead.
The click is not working.
All right. There we go. Thank you. Yes. So to give some background on the history of the joint use agreement, this slide outlines a timeline of some of the significant, uh, amendments, additions, and changes since the city first entered into an agreement with the School District back in nineteen ninety. You can see that the last agreement was approved in, uh, fall of twenty twenty-two, where this Council approved a one-year amendment to the agreement. As, uh, Mr. George said, for the past nine months, city and district staff have worked together to address a variety of aspects within the agreement and to draft a proposed agreement for both the School Boards and the Council's approval. I'm very pleased to report that this effort has been incredibly beneficial, in my opinion, for both the city and the district, and that we have strengthened relationships that will continue to benefit the residents of El Segundo. The School Board approved the proposed agreement and related in-kind lists at the Board meeting of September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The joint use agreement has several proposed changes to the document, um, but I'm gonna talk about, um, three of the most significant changes, which I think we are in very clear agreement that these are gonna be really beneficial to both parties. Um, the first being that we have agreed to change the term of agreement from ten years to seven years with a re-opener at four years, which means that though the agreement will be, um, for a term of ten years, at four years, um, there is an opportunity for us to, or I'm sorry, a term of seven years, but at four years, there's an opportunity for us to reopen the agreement and reexamine it at a closer level. Also, the district has agreed to consider pro-rata cost share of one-time equipment upgrades, um, with the caveat that those upgrades will need to benefit El Segundo Unified School District, uh, activities. Um, the district has certain, uh, regulations around how they can utilize their funding, so any of those equipment upgrades um, would need to have a direct, uh, benefit to their students. And finally, the city and district have agreed to meet twice annually to schedule fields and facilities, and the difference with this will be that, um, myself, the Director of Recreation, Parks, and Library, and Kimberly Lins, the District's Chief Business Officer, will provide leadership at this meeting. Um, so the two of us will be sort of making sure that the staff are carrying out the terms in the agreement and, um, really making sure that we're meeting the needs of the community according to the priorities in the agreement. Some of the proposed changes to agreement items for discussion, um, Richmond Field. So just to give a little bit of information on Richmond Field, it is currently owned by the district, um, but it is maintained by city staff. We've approximated the maintenance costs to be about forty-five thousand, a little over forty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, there are some additional staffing costs related to scheduling of the field, um, and oversight, um, from the management of Parks Maintenance Staff. Um, so one of the things that has been discussed is the potential of returning Richmond Field back over to the School District. Um, in that case, they would maintain the field and district staff would do the scheduling as well. Uh, the second discussion point has been the possibility of Center Street Field, um, returning to, or being turned over to the city for, um, scheduling, and we would, at that point, be able to retain any revenue from that scheduling. It is currently owned and maintained by the district. Um, it's currently scheduled by the district. Uh, however, if they turn it over to us for the, for the opportunity to rent the space, uh, the district will continue to maintain that field. One of the things that the Council asked us to do last year when we had this discussion was really take a look at the use, um, each, each group's use of the other's facilities. Um, so I have broken down, um, some of the, some of the most, more significant uses into a couple of slides here that I'm gonna go over. Um. So the city use of El Segundo Unified School District facilities, um, we have two sort of types of use. We have use for our own programs, and we have use of the district facilities for community user groups, such as AYSO and, and girls softball and the like. So this slide here talks about our use of the facilities to facilitate use by community user groups. Um, again, this is for Richmond Field, so currently we schedule for AYSO, El Segundo Girls Softball, also the high school uses that field, um, for a total of about fourteen hundred, a little over fourteen hundred fifty hours per year. Again, those are, these are hours that community user groups are on the field, um, but city staff are handling the scheduling and the maintenance for that field. So the city's use of district facilities for city programming is a little bit limited. Um, right now, we use the, a gymnasium, um, for youth basketball. We have a youth basketball league. We also have an adult basketball league, and then we also offer an open gym program. And then we also run an adult softball program out at Richmond Field. Um, and from my understanding, the, the adult softball league only uses that field every other year, depending on their tournament schedule. Um, so approximately, little over four hundred and sixty hours. Um, but I did want to include in here that we do also use a classroom over at El Segundo High School to run our city and media services. Um, and we use that facility, uh, Monday through Friday throughout the year. Um, the district is currently using the cities for several of its, um, sports programs. I think we've all heard from the tennis players this evening, um, that they have been, the, the high school has use of our courts, little over twenty-four hundred hours a year. Uh, I think you heard the students mention they use five to six courts, um, for several hours a day, most days, um, during their seasons.
Ally?
Yes.
Does that rec park include the girls softball field? Or is that just Stevenson baseball field?
This is Stevenson baseball field.
So you're missing a calculation in there.
So there, that would be additional hours.
It's probably equal to eight fifty. I, I assume they're practicing now, so.
Okay. Um, so Rec Park Stevenson Field is for the high school baseball team, and then we have, uh, Campus El Segundo for a little over two hundred years. So about thirty-five hundred hours the students are using the fields. Hour, hours, sorry.
It's a long time.
He got me mixed up.
But, but I just wanna point out one thing on those hours, just before we forget. So the hours that you're talking about, the students are playing on the field.
Correct.
Eighty percent of the students of El Segundo Unified are El Segundo residents, and so they're playing in a sport where the hours that the city is using the, the district faci- facilities, those are for profit, where the, 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 the school district's use of the field space is not for profit. We charge, correct?
I think what you're asking, yes, so we charge for our youth basketball leagues, our sports leagues.
Correct, so there's a revenue gain.
There is. It's about twenty-six thousand a year, I think.
Correct, but for when the district uses the fields, it's a residential gain, right? It's, there's no, we don't, there's no charge 'cause it's the youth of the community through the school district using it, okay? So I wanna make sure that's clear.
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Clear that we're not charging them to use the field, is what you're saying?
What I'm saying, it's our own youth using the facilities, where the other, when you're talking about the, 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 the city using the district facilities, those are profitable, those are organizations that we charge, because a lot of them for club sports or other out ancillary sport leagues that, that pay to use the facilities. So it's very different components. I just wanna make sure it's real clear.
Okay, but if-
You can't, you can't look hour to hour, because that's our youth using our parks and recs, right? For free, which they should, because they're, eighty percent of them are residents, versus other ancillary organizations. The other slide, which showed the, um, use of the district facilities, those are for, or nonprofits or for-profit companies that come in and schedule those fields. I just wanna make sure that's real clear.
Are we talking about slide five? Can you go to that, please?
Yes. So like the youth-
That, that's our programming.
Oh, yes.
That, right, that, no.
Those are our programs.
Okay.
But the other one, slide five, that's not our programming.
Those are not our programs.
No.
Those are, that's what I'm talking about.
We're just a pass-through.
Right, but I'm just saying, the city garners profit and revenue from those.
I see what you're saying.
Right, so you're comparing apples to oranges. So I just wanna make sure it's clear.
We do collect a per-player fee for AYSO and I believe Els- or girls softball as well. So we do collect a player fee that's based per player, not based per field. So it's, you know, whatever, forty dollars per player, whether they're playing on one field or three fields during that season.
I'd also like to point out at the same time, then, that every one of those organizations is a five oh one C three, and they are not a private club team. Can we just agree to that? Because it's a private club team.
I just, but I just wanna make it sure it's clear, the other, the others are during, for the school or, organized with it during the school, not maybe in the school hours, but part of the school curriculum.
Yeah, I think you-
Do, do we capture the free use of the golf course and driving range as well?
No, we don't have that in this agreement.
Okay, well, those are our facilities that are, we're foregoing revenue on those.
Right. Side here. So then, um, the other aspect of the joint use agreement would be our in-kind, um, services list. So these are, they're lists that we provide to the district, the di- district provides back to us proposed services that we will provide to one another to sport, support, um, each other's, um, user groups.
Just so I'm clear, are these, these are actually out-of-pocket cash outflows, right?
Yeah, so the, yes, so most of them are, however, if you go to, so you look here, you've got Fire Department, Public Works, Police Department. If you move here to Rec Park and Library, most of those are out-of-pocket costs. However, you do see there are some rental values. So we consider those soft costs, uh, under the Recreation Division, so it's rental value for Stevenson Field, um, rental value for Recreation Park Softball Field, et cetera. So those are lost revenue opportunities. The others are direct costs.
If you excluded the lost revenue opportunity, what's, what is the cash outlay?
I think it, I think I wrote that in the report. Yeah, let me just check there. I think it's about, um, total direct, total direct co- the indirect costs are two thou- two hundred and five thousand five hundred and thirty-three. So it's about, the total is, yeah, eight ninety-seven, it's about six hundred something?
Six, almost six hundred ninety-two thousand.
Six ninety-five, yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, what was it, two fifty-five?
The two oh five are the indirect costs.
Oh, I see. Indirect, indirect is roughly six hundred?
Right.
Thank you.
Exactly. Okay. So any questions on that? Then I'm gonna move to the in-kind services list, um, from the School District. So, um, this is a list that they provided to us. This does capture some future potential opportunities that the district has offered. Um, if we wanted to utilize facilities for expanded programming, classes, um, that sort of thing in the future. Um, they have agreed to allow us to do that, potentially move the drama program over to free up space at Gordon Clubhouse. So these are some of the things they've offered.
Just, just so we're clear, this is, these are in-kind offerings, these are, none of these are cash outlays? Or these, or any of these? Is there any component here that is?
Well, I believe, um, if they take over the maintenance of Richmond Street Fields, that would be a hard cost. And, um, it looks like there's some maintenance in preparation for the Media Center. Um, I know they do some custodial as well, so it looks like they're kind of broken out. They have some-
Well, the Media Center is a hard cost, because that means we could put students in that, in those classrooms, which is profit.
No, 'cause I, I'm, no, I'm trying to look at just apples to apples, like, we didn't look at the lost opportunity for the city. I'm just understanding just pure cash outlays between two entities, so. What is the number roughly? Is it about a hundred thousand?
Um. Do you know? We, I haven't done the math on the, on the district's list. But their total in-kind service amount is eight hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred sixty-two. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to start off, I just wanna say, I know that the joint use agreement started in nineteen ninety.
Nineteen ninety.
But the partnership between the city and the School District goes back from the beginning of time, from when the two program, two entities were formed. And it's very difficult, and when it, when you're, have a partnership, it's a long-term partnership. And these two entities are gonna exist long before, long after all of us are gone. And when you look back in the history of the partnership, there has been goodwill from both entities for many, many years. One of those good wills was when the city wanted to build a library and put a parking, parking structure there. Where did they get that land from? The, the, the School District deeded the land at the Library Park to the city. So that enabled us, the school, the li- the city to build a library and have a beautiful park for everybody to enjoy. And there's many type, many examples of that goodwill for the benefit of the, of the community, because eighty percent of our, of the, of the student body of El Segundo Unified is El Segundo residents. So when you charge the School District for the use of fields, you're charging your own residents. So basically, it's one in the same. And I just wanna make sure that when we go through this, and the other thing that's frustrating for me, someone who creates policies or has created policies for big corporations, you never create policies that you will have long, that you want to have longevity to be at an extreme micro-management detail. And I feel that we've gone into such detail, and the amount of hours, both from the city side and the School District side, not just in staff, but in lawyer times, we've way spent over, you know, hundred, hundreds of thousands of dollars in staff time, and the School District, I'm sure, has spent the same time. So I just wanna remind everybody what the essence and what the purpose of this joint use agreement was, is for. It's for the continuity of our community, and so I just wanna make sure if we're gonna bicker about forty thousand dollars, we've way spent that on your time, Ally, on the district's time, and the lawyer's time. I just think we just need to, you know, remember what we're doing here, and that, that what we're supposed to do is, you know, empower, ensure our residents have the, and the students of our residents have a place to play and grow and come become amazing tennis players or Little League players. And that's, I'm gonna stop there.
I was gonna say, I really appreciate the level of rigor. This is something that came out of the School and City Subcommittee two years ago, maybe, is that we wanted to get on this joint use agreement, and I was a, a significant advocate for understanding both sides, what we're offering. And I think it's money well-spent. If we spent a hundred hours of a hundred dollars an hour, that's ten thousand dollars, but we're talking about basically seven to nine million dollars of value over the course of this agreement. This is money well-spent, to understand. Um, I also absolutely appreciate the partnership between the, having had four kids go through the schools. They're phenomenal schools. We benefit, both sides benefit from this, um, mutual agreement. Um, I do have a couple thoughts, though. Nothing like fundamentally changing the agreement, but I do have some thoughts about requests. I know they've already taken it up to their School Board for approval.
That's correct.
Probably have, you know, if there's consensus, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues.
All right, I'll go. Um. I actually have no issue with, with the overwhelming majority of this entire agreement. I mean, bottom line is, it, it is a symbiotic relationship. It always has been. There are a lot of things that have changed in ten years, though. So let, let's not, not pretend that the funding mechanisms are the same now as they were ten years ago. Ten years ago, the Ed Foundation wasn't given one point eight million. Ten years ago, there wasn't a ninety-two million dollar school bond. I mean, so I'm just saying, it's all good things, but let's, let's not pretend that things haven't changed, that's all. So a couple of things I, I, I do wanna point out. First of all, thank you on the, uh, the term of the agreement. I had a pain point on that. Making a ten-year agreement when you only have a four-year term, it's, it's a bit much. I mean, you don't wanna pass things on, on like that, so I thought that was a, a, a great way to compromise on something. Um, one of your, I, I guess, really, even on the, on the, the one where the, um, the district's in-kind, I just wanna point out and, and just kind of reset the narrative a little bit here. Those not-for-profits are not city-run organizations.
Right.
Okay, they're not. We, we all support them. You support them, we support them, but the in-kind services on here, that's not us. Like, the rental value for Center Street School has nothing to do with us. We don't have any programming on that field. So it, it, they're offering for us to take over something they're already running. So my, my entire, the only pain point I have left in this entire thing is that the Richmond Street facility, it's the School District's property. All they have to do is administer it and schedule it and collect the way they are doing it on the high school field, the middle school field, and Center Street. I, that's the, literally, the only pain point that I'm even gonna talk about tonight, because it doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make sense that if you're able to schedule, administer, and collect money from, on the other three fields, that you wouldn't be able to do it there. Us maintaining it and collecting money on it and trying to invest money in a property that is not ours? It doesn't make any logical sense for me, because at one point, there might have been a need, but there's, there's not a need now, because if, if it, if it was a financial thing, they wouldn't be offering up Center Street revenue. It, it doesn't make sense. So all I'm saying is, you already do it. I used to be the president of Little League and, and girls softball at the same time. I wrote checks to both places. So it doesn't change anything for the user groups. All it changes is who they're paying their, they're paying their money to. It's, it's the same thing, so that's all. And the reason why also is not just on a principle. The practical matter is, is that we have, we're pretty, stretched pretty thin from a staffing standpoint in Parks and Rec. It's difficult to find people. So we're spending our time, like, I think, two people a day, probably, at that Richmond facility. So it would, we're about ready to, to, to vote on spending an awful lot of money on Rec Park, never mind the plunge. So I'm just saying that I, I, I think that the use of tho- those two people that we have over there would be better served at Rec Park that we actually own and maintain, rather than doing it for the School District when they obviously have the ability to do it. So that's, honestly, I'm fine with everything else. I have no arguments. SROs and, and crossing guards and all that stuff, it's all good stuff. That's the only issue I got.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring one-up thing, because you mentioned crossing guards. So I just wanna remind everybody that historically, the, the, the city used to pay for the librarians and the crossing guards, and then back in, I think it was twenty sixteen.
Twenty fifteen.
They said, they, part of the partnership was, they wanted the, the, the School District to buy, to pick up the librarians. Well, the School District hasn't the money to pick up the librarians, 'cause it, it's not funded by the state of California. So what happens? The Ed Foundation said, "We'll do it," so the residents are once again still paying for librarians, because the, the residents are the ones who donate to the Ed Foundation. So I just wanna make sure, every time we push back money off to, to the schools, you're impacting your residents. You're impacting, that the, the School District doesn't have additional funding to pay for this kind of stuff. So that's why the Ed Foundation raised their hand and said, "We'll do it. Residents, you have to help us pay for this, the librarians." And that's the process that, that's what's in place today.
I, I would, I understand what you're saying, but I- I, I would, I understand what you're saying, but I'd also argue that it's the residents that are also paying for the school bond that built all the facilities that these kids are using. So, it's, it's neither here nor there. I mean, literally, we're, we're fine. Even taking out the fields thing, it's still a nine-hundred-plus-thousand-dollar in-kind thing, and we're paying actual checks out. So, I, again, it's one small thing. I'm basically just saying, you take care of your property and we'll take care of ours. I don't, it's like me building a pool in my neighbor's backyard and, and running parties for him. It doesn't make any sense. It might have made sense at one time, but it doesn't make sense now.
I got, I got one more thing that, I said there were two things. One is Richmond. Fundamentally struggle with the Richmond component. Also, why, and I brought this up several times to both groups, but it still is not incorporated, so maybe there's, there isn't the will, but the, we have brand-new basketball courts at the middle school, and we have a brand-new media center, but those are not specifically called out in the agreement. Is that right?
Uh, are you talking about the middle school gymnasium?
No, and outdoors, there are basketball courts that have been painted.
So, we've talked about that moving forward, I think we agreed that the first year that the school, that the gym was open and those facilities were open, they would assess their needs and that we would come back in a year and that they would be willing to negotiate use then.
My request can, is gonna stand for seven years, and that is an opener to have a discussion that could take two or three years, that we would include the basketball courts. I don't know why, we've got a, I see back there, but we have a basketball program specifically-
Yes.
-at the Rec Park. Had kids participate in all, in all my boys, and that thing sits at Teen Center.
That's correct.
Heavily used, not a great facility.
That's correct.
Uh, we've got club teams and everything else vying for space, renting space in Smoky Hollow. Why would we not take advantage of those basketball courts now that they just painted? So, that would be my request. The other is, from an arts standpoint, the media center is much better, having been in there, than what we currently have at the clubhouse at Rec Park.
Okay.
And I don't think we have that in here either.
No, that's not in there.
Okay, so those, I said, there's a couple things. Fundamentally, I think the agreement's great. I'm glad we've, we've gotten ninety percent of the way or whatever. We might be done tonight. If I had my druthers, we'd include those components. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Baldino.
Chris? You sure? First, thank you, Father Alexi, as always, for coming to speak. I recall what you said about, "Let us make decisions that are best for everyone who lives in town." And I think about that as I'm struggling to comprehend why this dais has spent so much time trying to put dollars on our kids, trying to negotiate against our own children, when what we should be doing is, what can we do to make things better for everyone? And if we have that mindset, then why are we talking about eight hundred thousand versus six hundred thousand? If there is a need from someone who lives in our community and we have the wherewithal to provide that, then why aren't we providing that? With respect to the individual comments, when you talk about the fields AYSO not being city-run comments, those are still our kids. That's where we met. Right? I agree. They're all the same kids. Little League, these are volunteer-run educations, this is where we meet one another, we watch our kids grow up on these baseball fields, there's no better town than El Segundo. But again, we are living on top of one another. We don't have enough field space. And what this agreement does, it doesn't say, "We're gonna have the basketball courts at the middle school every other Tuesday, and the school's gonna use this." It just says that Ally and Kim are gonna get together like they always have done and figure out, "How are we gonna make all these moving pieces make sense so that we can have AYSO, so our boys can play tennis, so that we can continue to give the services that make this town so great?" So, if we focus on that agreement, and it's a very simple agreement, in fact, can I get a hard copy of the red line? Because there were changes that we made in the two-by-two that I want to make sure are in the agreement. Uh, Trace? Thanks. But again, we are here to, to do what is best, and I, I just don't understand this kind of focus on the dollars and cents of it, to where if we have a facility or the ability to help our school district make our kids' lives better, then why would we say no to that? Why would we throw up a roadblock to that? That's kind of my question here, is why is this causing such kind of, I don't know, just reluctance to help out our school districts when all they're trying to do is, is make sports more available to the kids who go to town in our, in our town? That's it.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I wasn't gonna get into this, but now I am. Ask yourself right now, ask the district while they're here, how many minutes does AYSO get on any district field? Zero, unless you count Richmond, but we're running it, so it's really coming through us. So, ask any AYSO kid, how many minutes they've ever played on, on, on the high school field, on the high school practice field. So, I'm with you. They're all our kids, man. The thing is, that I'm trying to get across here, it doesn't, it's all going to be the same. They're all gonna be playing on the same grounds. Nobody's doing, it's just a matter of, you collect the money for your field and we collect the money for our field. You're already doing it. So, that's the thing. It's not an argument about what's best for our kids. It's already happening. The kids aren't gonna be affected because no one's taking any time away. It's all the same time. It's just a matter of who's collecting the money. That's literally all it is.
Yeah, I don't think the district has a problem with that, taking over Richmond, right? Wasn't that part of your-
It's been a pain point. I've been trying to get it done for six months to avoid this conversation, and it was rejected. And that's why we're here. I would've said yes to this six months ago.
I think that the point you're making, or the question you're asking, Mr. Baldino, is that they have agreed to take on the maintenance cost. We would still maintain the scheduling and any sort of improvements, if you will.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and you've worked that out at the staff level, and you believe from a staff, that's the best way to proceed? So, why would we get up here and try to micromanage or even try to program?
Because they're not saying that that's the case. They're saying that's the case. I don't think Ally's saying that the best way forward is for us to invest in fields that are not ours. We're saying, "It's your field." If something goes wrong on Center Street Field, do we take care of it? If there's an irrigation problem in middle school, do we take care of it? Does the school district take care of it? They take care of it, except for Richmond. That's why I'm saying, it's the anomaly, it's the outlier, it doesn't make any sense. That's all I'm saying. So, I, I think we're putting words in each other's mouth, because bottom line is, is that this was a request of the district, it wasn't a request of Ally.
Can I just clarify one thing? I believe, because Richmond Street has lights, it is programmed late into the evening, where Center Street does not have lights, so it's not programmed late into the evening. And so, the district does not have the staff to manage the programming late into the evening, where we, as a city, have staff late into the evening. And I believe that is part of the, the question, correct?
Incorrect, because they, because there's, there's club soccer being played at the high school until all hours of the night. It's the same thing. They have staff for that. Why wouldn't they have staff for Richmond? I'm just saying, it doesn't, there's, there's no consistency in it. If you don't have staff for Richmond, then you shouldn't have staff for the high school.
But what's the harm? Where's the win here? We, we push more costs onto the school district?
What? No, no. They're gonna be collecting the money. We're foregoing it. Because it's their property. Just let them, if, if the issue is revenue, let them collect the revenue.
So, but with the, with the Aquatic Center, how do, do we-
We don't own the Aquatic Center.
We don't.
I know, but we manage it and we program it. It's the same thing.
And in the joint use agreement, they have their space.
But it, but at the, at the Aquatic Center, the Wisebourn District can use that facility without paying anything. But we're, we're, we're asking this, the Richmond Street kids to pay-
I don't think that's entirely accurate.
No, it's not accurate.
In the Wisebourn Agreement.
So, I just, but I, to Ryan, to Ryan's point, we're getting in the weeds here. Let the staff manage it, the way it's supposed to be managed, which has been managed for many, many generations. And we'll all have a win.
I, I want to address something, Councilor Baldino, with all due respect. You asked why? Why are we having this discussion? And I don't think I generally get into the details. I like to stay pretty high-level. This is a policy decision that has major financial implications. We are first and foremost fiduciaries of the city. We have different, different revenue sources and different entities. We are completely separate entities for reasons. And so, we have to take these considerations very seriously, which is why that we asked for this to be done, this study, several years ago. And so, if we're saying we're gonna do this, it's good that we're having this discussion because all the residents that pay tax, that, that pay into the city know that part of their general fund is going to support the school district. And we also have other schools in our boundaries that have not made those requests of us. So, this is an important, this is true.
Okay, let me just clarify, the Da Vinci School, less than one percent of their populace are El Segundo residents.
I understand that, but they're within our boundaries. My point is, this is a serious consideration regardless. I would like to see access to the middle school, basketball courts, and media center. I agree with Richmond. I don't know why we're still involved in that. Those are the only changes that I would like to see. Otherwise, I think it's fundamentally sound. That's my, that's my standpoint.
The agreement's not written in such a way to get down to the level of which field. All it says is that they will meet, they will discuss scheduling. Every six months, they're gonna look at all the fields to program. That would include the basketball courts, whatever you want.
But I'd be more comfortable-
Looking at this-
I'd be more comfortable, Ryan, if it was written in. All the other ones are written in.
They're not.
That's not written in. The other fields aren't written in the agreement?
No, because that's not the point of the agreement.
They're in, they're reflected in the in-kind list, I think, is what we're talking about, which is an attachment to the agreement.
It's not even, it's been omitted from the list. Why was it omitted from the list when I personally brought it up several times?
No, those, those numbers weren't in the actual agreement, but they're listed in the in-kind, which is our attachments to the agreement.
So, you're, you're telling me that, and, Mr. Hensley, I assume you've reviewed this agreement ad nauseam. So, you're telling me that the, the basketball courts and the media center, whatever that facility is, the middle school, are at play right now for us to use?
Oh, those are not. Those are new facilities. I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Yes.
But, under the way this agreement is written, which just says, you know, two is district use of city's facilities, and then the city use of district facilities, and it, they're the same paragraph, it just says the district's allowing the city to utilize the facilities for programs, the city is allowing the district to use side its facilities. So, if there was a need, if there suddenly was an explosion at Teen Center Basketball and they needed courts, then this is designed for Liz and Ally to have a talk, or Kim, I'm sorry, Kim, Liz. I keep calling you Liz. But it's, it's just an agreement saying that we know we're sharing facilities and we trust our staff to have the competence and the smarts to figure it out, as they always have been. I just think we're being distracted by talking about dollars and values and, and, you know, what are we losing, what are we gaining? I can tell you what we're gaining. You look at this front row. How great do these kids talk today about their tennis and their passion for sports? You know, like, this agreement, as it's written, is meant to cover any change in use. So, if there was a need for those basketball courts, they could negotiate that under the terms. It doesn't need to be written in as a separate paragraph.
When I hear negotiate, that means you give me something in exchange for something that I'm giving you. So, why are we negotiating again? I mean, why can't we just say that these facilities are at play and the school district intends to allow us to use them? Period.
It says that.
It says that. Well, I would, Mr. Hensley, the lawyer and the, the other lawyer in the room-
The other lawyer.
I'll read it to you.
It's not a long agreement. This agreement is four pages, five pages.
Can we please get the legal opinion of our general counsel?
Sure.
Knock yourself out.
In the recitals, D and E, is where they identify, and, really, just, this is where the definition is for, for the facilities. And so, that, that's what both parties are putting on the table.
Mark, can you get a little bit closer to the mic, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Recital D and E respectively set forth what city facilities are being put in the mix and what district facilities are being put in the mix. So, you know, and this is, this is, you know, where staff comes in, is there, is what the mayor's describing, is that part of, I mean, is everything in there in exhibit E, in recital E that the mayor's referring to?
I think we would need to add the facilities that he's mentioning, because those are new, right? The, the gym and the media center and the, those would need to be added in, correct?
No.
Oh.
With all due respect, Dr. Moore, we have our general counsel giving us a legal interpretation of the agreement. So, you're telling me that those facilities are not currently in that exhibit? Yes?
District, it says El Segundo Middle School.
It's not excluding, it's not excluding anything.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't exclude or include anything specific in the actual agreement.
And do you, as the coordinator of all things related to this, do you feel comfortable with the language that's in there as it's currently written?
If we can, if we can negotiate with all of the facilities within each of these schools, one hundred percent.
Will you clarify that for me?
So, so typically, we've used the, the in-kind list to sort of talk about what we're gonna use in each facility. So, right now, that, those facilities you mentioned are not in the in-kind list. So, I guess my question for city attorney would be, does the in-kind list play in at all?
Is the in-kind list an attachment or addendum-
Right.
... or exhibit to the contract? Then it, they should be on that, too.
Right.
Yeah, agreed. So, you've got the specific-
Uses.
You, you've got the specific facilities in here, but if there are uses identified on there, I mean, this is where I think it's a little fuzzy. It would be clearer to say that all of those, if, if some use is included on those in-kind or isn't included on there, it would be better to include them or not include them based upon your intent.
And what we could do is, we could, I mean, as you see, these are all at high level. They don't talk about what day we're using them and what hours, but if, if we included them in the in-kind list, then I would assume those would be all facilities we could negotiate.
We're not, I don't think we want to get into up here, days, hours, how you execute-
No, exactly.
Is, are those facilities available to us? Because I have not understood through conversations yet or in writing that those are. And if those facilities are included at play without having to give something up from the city, I'm content.
I'd have to defer to my colleagues on the board.
Well, I, I think it has to be in agreement, is what I'm saying. It's not, if the, if the in-use list is an exhibit indic, that's associated with the contract, it should be in there.
Let me see if I can explain it this way. The recitals list out all the city facilities that the school district uses. It also lists out all the school properties that they own, including Eagles Nest Preschool, in case you want to do any programming there. That's what is defined as district. Everything else that the school uses is defined as the city. And then, it's really, we're talking about two paragraphs that mirror each other. District's use of city facilities, this is paragraph two. City agrees, allows the district to use the city facilities for educational programs, events, direction, supervision, and district accordance, blah, blah, blah. Provided such scheduled, cannot anytime interfere with the use of city facilities or equipment, blah, blah, blah. The next paragraph, three, just flips it. Says the city's use of district facilities. And the district's agreeing to let the city use their district facilities, which includes every school site that they own. And then, it just talks about how, you know, duty to repair, equipment, indemnification, And then it just talks about how, you know, duty to repair, equipment, indemnification, attorney stuff. And then it just gets down to scheduling, which is just deferred to staff, like they've always done. So this shell of the agreement, if you forget about the recitals, which you just put a dollar amount on it, which I don't think, in my opinion, was necessary, but I guess, you know, that's already been done. If it's not in those exhibits, and those exhibits are referred to on, uh, where's that?
Well, if you eliminate the, the exhibits and take them out, then it would be clearer.
Yes, that's been my point. This is a snapshot in time, which is gonna change six months from now. Alright, so. But I think we all agree, right? We all agree that none of us are smart enough to figure out how to schedule the fields up here. We're gonna trust our staff to do it, the district's gonna trust their staff to do it, and they're gonna figure it out. We're gonna let them use our facilities, they're gonna let us use their facilities, and we can talk about it another seven years.
So, again, my, my comment on the Richmond field, does that not make sense that they would take back their field?
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Uh, if it ain't broken, don't fix it.
Yeah. How's it broken?
How's it broken?
It's broken because.
Forty grand? If that field was so valuable, right? If it was so important to the school district, that field, could someone explain to me why not one dollar of that 92 million dollars was put towards maintenance, upkeep, redo, anything? Why? If that was us, and we had that money, we would have to spread it out over all these facilities, right? But it didn't get done. Is it because the expectation was we were gonna take care of it?
No, it's because they did a community survey and a master school needs program, and then they had this huge push to the public to get support for the bond, and they figured out what they were gonna do.
Yeah, I know, I remember, I remember very clearly. All I'm saying is, if you're running your other facilities one way, why is this the anomaly? Why is this the outlier? It doesn't make any sense.
Okay, I just want to, there is some clarification, because when the school district was redoing the TLC Center at the corner of Richmond, they did reach out to the city at the time, and the city did not want to partner with the school district to put in expanded bathrooms and other facilities. So the school district were willing to partner with the city, and the city said no.
We put $300,000 into that field.
They were partnering, what was the partnership, what was the request? So that was on time, or was it partnership?
No, it wasn't that long ago. It was when, maybe five, five, six years ago.
So the request was for us to?
No, to partner, the, the school district had reached out to the city to say, hey, do you want to partner with us on building, because we're going to be building out that T, the TLC area, redoing the parking lot? Is there anything else we should be working on together? And the answer was no, from the city. So the, the school district went their merry way and built it out for their needs for the TLC Center. So I'm just saying that, that conversation did happen, and the city said no.
But what does it have to do with the Richmond field?
No, because it was part of the Richmond field, like.
But it still wasn't our, but it still wasn't the city's property. It's, it's still, that's like us investing in their property. That's all I'm, it doesn't make sense. If, here's the other thing. If, if it's, why don't we treat it, why don't we treat it like the plunge?
Hold on, folks, 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 one at a time, one at a time.
Why don't we treat it like the plunge, right? So plunge, it was decided, they couldn't, smartest move ever, by the way. Um, you sold it to us, I think, for about a buck, right? Because you couldn't, the administration, the cost, all that stuff, it was just, it was way too much. Trust me, you were absolutely right. So is Richmond in the same boat? Is it a matter of not having the finances to do it? If that's the case, we'll buy it for a buck. And then we'll just continue along a merry way, the way it's going on right now. But I, I would not be willing to put more investment into that field, because it desperately needs, that needs a new irrigation system. Alright, it needs laser grading, it needs, it needs so much. And I wouldn't be willing to put the money into that because it's not our field. But I would be willing to put it into it if it was our field. That's something, if it's your field, then you should be investing in it. It's, I mean, again, your students are there until 3 o'clock, every day.
So can I ask if we can get consensus to strike the exhibits? Because I, I do think it clouds and kind of limits when you talk about specific services, as opposed to what the agreement says, which is, here's all the properties the district owns, here's everything the city owns. We both agree we can use each other's facilities based on scheduling agreed upon by the parties. But if we strike K and L.
Councilman Baldino, because we're gonna, we're gonna make a vote, and so we can do that at that time, include that as part of the motion. But before we do that, anything, Mayor Potem, any comments for you?
Well, we have, or not we, the will we, will the nonprofits like AYSO have priority use of district fields? Or will it be pushed out by club teams?
I'd have to defer that to the school district personnel.
That would be, because that, while that might fall under the penumbra of you'll work it out with them on scheduling, if it's not a requirement that those groups that are beating us over the head for field space get to use it, and then they turn around and send us pictures of kids who don't live here in fancy uniforms playing, uh, that, that, that's a rub. Uh, and I think that is something worth calling out, because historically, you know, those club teams have enjoyed priority on those fields, or at least they, we have perceived that they have.
My understanding is that, that they do a similar allocation to the way the city does it, with district probably first, then city, and then nonprofit organizations. But I would have to, to ask the school district personnel to comment on that.
And I, and I, I think this is, it is somewhat unfortunate, right? All of us, have kids who've gone, or either in the schools, have gone through the schools, spent plenty of time in the schools. But the way that we're set up in California is it is two competing entities. Not competing adversarially, but it is two parallel government systems. And that's not the way it's run in most of America, so it seems somewhat bizarre that we appear and have to haggle over some of these things. But we are, whether we like it or not, the advocates for the 16,800 people in El Segundo, right, and those residents. And that sits apart from the 3,000 students enrolled when it comes to these matters, even though, you know, most of those kids, or 2,400 of them or so, are, are El Segundo residents. So I think it's, it's totally okay for us to ask some difficult questions, even if it comes off somewhat terse. Uh, you know, there's 20% of the populace with basically 50% of the budget, right? I mean, it's, the school district's a $38 million budget supporting 3,000 people. You know, we have $85 million budget supporting 17,000 people, so our dollars are held somewhat dearer. Now granted, we have different funding streams, totally get that, and, and we also have greater flexibility with how we use our income. But there's things in here that I think we shouldn't discount. I mean, I, we take it as an article of faith that we will supply resource officers to each school district, right? But those are two officers we take off patrol, which we are now offering $70,000 bonuses for people to come in and backfill those roles. That is not an insignificant cost. That's $70,000 on top of $140,000 salary. So those are the total comp on two positions we're backfilling, is $300,000 each. So I think that it is okay for us to ask those questions. Now, we don't ask, and in this negotiation, paying for resource officers clearly was not on the table. But that's not an unheard of scenario in different, different cities right around us, right? You go to Hawthorne, you go to Redondo, you know, the city's kicking in, the school district's kicking in half the money on those. Uh, now granted, one of those districts is not represented here, but those are not insignificant costs that we're taking on, both in terms of direct funding and, and the opportunity cost we have to go and backfill these. I would ask, and I guess it's the elephant in the room, because they're sitting here, is there a plan for a tennis court? I mean, we were blindsided. We were blindsided by this, that there's suddenly a tennis court went away, and a tennis team shows up and asks us why they can't use it. And I know the tennis team is here, but I assure you, there's other tennis players in town, and two of them live right by me. And I want to assure you, when I bring my trashcans out, they demand to know why they can't play tennis. And I have to look at them and say, because there's another governmental entity that has priority over you. Instead, they just yell at pickleball. But I'm like, it's not pickleball. I was like, was a person playing pickleball on your court? Like, no, it was kids playing tennis. It's the school district. Right? So is there a plan? Is it, are they going to Raytheon, or are we just carving out, you know, cutting out part of the 16,800 and saying, you don't get your tennis courts? Why? Well, because somebody blew up theirs.
So there's no, there's no plans that I'm aware of for us to take the court use back?
So we're absorbing a varsity sport in suicide?
That is true, yes. From what I understand, yes, that's accurate. That, that.
Does there anything, like, you ran the bond, is there anything left in the 92 million? You put it on top of one of the buildings? Put some net around it?
Of course not. Are you really upset that our kids are playing tennis and?
Oh, for the children, I know, we wave, it's always for the kids. Cue the Whitney Houston and bring the tambourines. But, I mean, this is, it's an honest question. We are competing, this is something, we are directly subsidizing, right, another entity. And that is okay, that is joint use, and we invested the community for it. But it's an okay question to ask, if they have a varsity sport and they got rid of the tennis court for it, did they have a plan for? I mean.
And they got rid of the tennis courts because they're putting a special needs classroom and.
Putting a band around in there. I mean, true.
Alright, so, if we, I feel like we might be, we might be close in the agreement with the exception of a couple, uh, well, the problems that I brought up would potentially be solved if we strike the exhibit.
Right.
It sounds like, hold on, let me finish, Carol. Sounds like council member Drew is on board with that. I'm trying to read the tea leaves here. I'm not sure where Chris is at, and I certainly know where council member Baldino and Perstak are. So any further comments before a motion hits the floor?
Are, are we, when you, I mentioned, in what you just talked about, are we talking about the Richmond thing as well, or where are we at? Because I'm, I'm actually, I'm okay up until that Richmond, and that suggestion on Center Street makes less than zero sense.
Yeah, I mean, if, I think if we, so you're okay with what they proposed in there, which is not to, uh?
No, I'm not okay with what they propose. I'm saying, you take all of it back. You take all the programming, you take collecting all the money, you take your maintenance, if the, if the pipes blow out, you take care of it, not us. It's your field. It's like you do with every other field that you have.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I'm asking for.
Okay.
Out of the entire agreement.
Yeah, I support that. I also support, um, the getting use of the middle school, which I believe will be solved once we strike those exhibits, based on what council member Baldino pointed out. Anyone like to make a motion?
Well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, joint use agreement that was approved by the full school, school board.
As is, you're saying, right?
As is, yes.
Okay, then we can have any further discussion?
Can I ask just one question? With that, that thing you said about the middle school, does that enjoy us getting, does that include us getting the nonprofits getting priority usage on those fields? Or is that something different? That's, that's a good point.
I think that, I think that goes back to Mr. Baldino's point and my point. We are getting in the weeds here, let the, the professionals manage this as they have for almost 100 years. This agreement has been in play for almost 100 years. I know it says 1990, that's when they probably officially put it in writing. But for that, it was a handshake, an agreement between two entities for over 100 years. So I just let, let's continue and let the professionals actually manage it.
Let me see if I can get a little arms around what we have here. So council member Drew is proposing that they take back, um, pretty much everything associated with Richmond. Can you state that one more time?
Take back, all of Richmond and run it the same way you run everything else.
Okay, well, I have a motion on the floor, and I'm unwilling to amend it.
We can have, we can, okay, we can have a substantive motion, so I'm just trying to.
I'm just letting you, I'm, I'm unwilling to amend mine.
That's, that's fine. Yeah, we can have some further discussions, so.
Well, I think she said she doesn't, she doesn't want to amend her, so she has a motion on the floor.
We can have comment before we take for a second, still. We're still giving Roberts' real order. So, I understand where you're at, which is that they take back all, take back all Richmond. Mayor Potem, your point was what now, related to, um, the middle school?
Nonprofit priority use on district fields.
Okay, and then we have the, um, notion of striking the exhibits as part of the joint use agreement. Okay, any further comments? Do we have a second on councilman Perstak's motion? Okay, the motion dies.
So I'll move to approve the proposed joint use agreement as written, except striking paragraphs. K and L and their attached exhibits, which are those in-kind contributions. So approve this as written, remove the reference to the in-kind exhibit, so it says, here's all our properties, here's all your properties, and the staff will figure it out.
That's in K and L.
He started about the exhibits that I think we referred to, right, same ones, councilman Baldino?
Yeah, if you look in the, the agreement, paragraph K says, the benefits provided the district shall be in addition to the in-kind other contributions, which are anticipated to be blah, 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 and they're attached as exhibit A. And then I says, the benefits to the city are these in-kind contributions, dot, 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 which are exhibit B. And so that is kind of a limiting on this agreement, whereas the way the city's properties are defined and the district's properties are defined, it's like, here's all the properties we have, we know we're gonna be using each other's properties, we're gonna work out how to schedule it.
So basically, you're saying it's, it's what the previous motion was on the floor, except strike out the two tables?
Yep.
But you're still including their recommendations on Richmond and Center Street?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'm seconding it.
Just so we're clear, so the motion was different than the first one in that, just striking out the two exhibits, yeah? Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, no.
No.
No, no. Okay, alright, so there's two motions. I, yeah, did you wanna make, I was gonna say the same thing as what I proposed earlier. They take back all of Richmond field, they give nonprofit prioritization to any school district facilities, and we strike those exhibits that council member Baldino already referred to that relate to the uses, the facilities themselves and the exhibits.
Here's one thing, on the, on the, um, I guess, five, a local 501(c)(3), um, um, prioritization, I, I, I think that's us overstepping our bounds. I can't, I can't ask for them to manage their own facilities and then us tell them how to manage it. It's up to them whether they, look, right now, AYSO and El Segundo Girl Softball are on Richmond Street. They've been there forever. If they don't wanna keep them on there, that's their decision, not ours.
Here's, here's what I struggle with fundamentally. The way I think I understand, you guys know better than I do, but having involved, been involved with AYSO for a long time as coach of a couple different teams. They, the school district, I think, doesn't necessarily prioritize the 501(c)(3) to the same extent that we do. So to me, that is not a staff execution, that is a policy decision. So if we're gonna make it a priority, I think Mayor Potem has a point that they should make it a priority as well. AYSO is the most participative sport that we have in town. The ones with the least amount of fields, and, uh, the one that we get the most pushback on.
I agree, but I, I still think that we're trying to dictate their policy. It's like them trying to dictate our policy. We wouldn't want that to happen. And so I, I understand what you're saying, but in the end, if, if this is all about the kids, what we've been talking about, they would keep it the way it is. So we either trust them to keep it the way it is, or they're gonna have to answer to the community, same way we do, right? Isn't, there's no difference in this thing. If, if we decided to say on Richmond, we, we own it, so, you know what, we wanna make more money, so we're gonna put a bunch of club teams out there, we'd eat that hard, and this, this place would be filled. So it's their facility, let them run their facility the way they want.
So I just wanna make sure we're clear. Currently, the city owns the lights at Richmond Street, it's Richmond Street Field. And if the, if we move forward, if you move forward with giving that back to the school district to manage, and the city, the, the, the district does not have the, the staffing or the wherewithal to manage it the way it's managed today, you're going to get a lot of complaints, we're all gonna get a lot of complaints, and the field will be closed. And so I just, you know, be careful what you wish for, is all I'm trying to say to you. Be careful what you wish for.
There's a second option, sell it to us for a buck. We'll keep it the way it is. It's our property then. It's not gonna happen, right? I understand that, but why?
So I just don't understand what the issue is today.
But, hold on, let's, uh, we're kinda going in circles here. Mayor Potem, what do you say to councilman Drew's point about not dictating policy with regards to prioritizing nonprofits?
Uh, I, I think that that's, the joint use is a matter of, like, coming to agreement on what a joint degree of policy would be. So ordinarily, I'd say, don't touch my stuff, but that's not what we're here to do, right? This is a, a communal arrangement, so I think we're well within the bounds of a communal arrangement to say we have mutual priorities on how the fields will be used. Because, a little bit to, to councilmember Drew's point, if, if people can't get field space, they are not showing up at a school board meeting. They don't care whose field it is, they're gonna show up here, and that's how we screwed it up.
So can you amend that to say that they will continue to, to, to program? Basically, Richmond, they're gonna write a check to you instead of writing a check to us. Other than that, we have no, we have no claim on anything. That's it. It's their, it's their property. That's all. I just, I just think it's unfair for us, it's not right for us to, to sit there and say they have to do things a certain way. If they choose to do it a certain way. But in the end, if we have a bunch of people come in here and start complaining about Richmond, I'm gonna say, well, the school board meeting is next Tuesday. Go talk to them. I, that's all. I just, I think the, the idea of you take care of yours and we take our ours is, is fundamentally correct. That's all. I, I, I wouldn't wanna take it that step for, that, that step further.
Fundamentally different than the way the school district and the city have been cooperating for generations. Where it's like, what do we have to do to make it work? But I, I would like someone to make a motion so we can get this agreement approved. I think we're pretty close here.
Yeah, um, I think I did, but if not, take back all of Richmond, uh, nonprofit prioritization. I still think that's important on the US, ESUSD facilities. Strike the exhibits that are used at state, the specific facilities, and then endorse the agreement overall. That's my motion. Do you wanna second that, or do you wanna start over?
Oh, I, I, I think if you want a second, you probably should live that way.
Now, now I'm confused, because the only difference is what you wanted to add into the agreement, so he's just.
Oh, I, I have tons of other issues that did not get a motion to pass, so I don't think it's worth even asking. My, my, my. I mean, I want my police officer funded, that's not gonna happen, you know?
My feeling to land this plane is that I feel that I, I'm cool with literally everything on that agreement. Just take back Richmond, I mean all of Richmond.
And Center.
And Center, but, but that Center thing was never in the original agreement, so we should have nothing to do with Center Street School either. And I am, I am not in favor of dictating their policy on prioritization, that is up to them. But since every one of the kids that are in those programs go to their district, I'm pretty sure they should, they should prioritize them.
I think what you're really doing is you're directing staff that the city's no longer gonna maintain those fields, and you're no longer going to schedule them or collect money, because that, again, is all sort of in those exhibits. The agreement doesn't really get into. The agreement doesn't really get into, I mean, we take the exhibits out, then it comes back to staff, and you're telling staff, "Don't do those things anymore."
Wait, Mark, can you speak a little bit closer to the mic and just restate that?
So for, for purposes of the middle, of what you're saying on Richmond Street, I mean, that's, that was dressed with these exhibits again. That's, that's the, um, who's doing what specifically right now. So with those gone, what you're really doing is directing staff, is those are no longer there and, and don't, you're not going to continue to maintain those fields or, or schedule them. That will become the district's, um, obligation.
So it would be an amendment to the agreement?
Well, it's actually by taking those out, it just becomes, you're just telling your, you're telling your own staff to not, to not undertake those activities anymore.
Got it, okay.
And, and to be honest with you, by taking them out and having the staff just discuss it, then they can go through the consequences and go through the, like, a, if, if the city does, if the school district does take it back, what would be the impact to the residents or to the community? So that you can have, actually see, because you're just up here saying, "They need to take it back, they need to take it back and get the programming." But we haven't, they, they, we don't even know if they have the money to even, to ma- ma- uh, uh, maintain that land. So it's just, you're, you have to, you, you have to go into it with your eyes wide open, you have to look at the consequences of what your actions are doing. And so maybe by, to Ryan's point, let the staff deal with it. If you say, "Hey, can you look into what's the probability if they could take that back?" And then they could have a conversation to say, "Is it viable or not?" But right now, you're just saying, "I want them to take it back," we don't even know if it's viable.
If it wasn't viable, they wouldn't be offering the revenue from Center Street. It doesn't make any sense, that's what I'm saying, like, you're saying that you can't maintain Richmond, yet here's the revenue from Center Street. It doesn't make any sense. There's no logic to it, that's all I'm saying, like, I can't wrap my head around the lack of logic.
There's totally logic because Richmond Street has lights, it is open late at night. Center does not have lights. It's not, it's open just during the day.
So they're gonna be collecting the revenue from the places that we're currently collecting it from. AYSO and, and ESGS are writing a check to them, not to us, so that...
That should pay for it.
I, that's what I'm saying, like, the money is just...
You're really in the weeds.
I'm not in the weeds, they're, they're saying that it's a benefit to us, but if it was such a benefit, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be offering it.
Councilmember Drew, I'll make a procedural suggestion that, uh, I move approval that we, uh, strike. After getting clarification from Mr. Hensley, goes back to what Councilmember Baldino proposed probably thirteen minutes ago. We just strike the exhibits from the agreement and we sign the agreement as is.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further comments?
Does that sat, I, well, you just, does that satisfy what I've been kinda like...
Oh, and direct staff to no longer maintain Richmond Field.
Well, then I do not second that.
No.
That's a totally different motion. I liked your first motion, it sounded like my motion.
All right, yeah, that was good clarification.
It was a great motion.
And the simplest way out of this room, guys, we are so deep in this hole right now. We have a...
This was a completely avoidable hole, that's all I'm gonna say. It's been a year of negotiation on this thing on, on one topic. This is a completely avoidable hole, so let's, let's make sure that there's two sides of the negotiation, right? There's two sides, not one. And while that negotiation managed to be... And there's five people on the school board.
Right, right, but we also have a two-by-two, and we talked about this agreement at the two-by-two. And the only thing that we talked about was, "Maybe it should be ten years because this is a lot of work and we don't want to do it again."
Well, then, then that's sad because I've been making my, my feelings known on this topic for a very, very long time. And the fact that that wasn't discussed at your two-by-two is problematic for me.
All right, do we, let's see, so it sounds like we don't, we're basically didn't pass.
No, you tried making your motion again because I didn't second it once you changed it.
Yeah, no, my motion is now what he amended. I didn't, I misstated it. So it would basically be to strike the exhibit use and direct staff to take over Richmond and Center.
Why don't you amend it to say, "Have staff discuss with the district on the viability of taking over and what the impact to the residents would be and the, the participating..."
I think better than that would be just, "Let's defer back to staff and come back at a future council meeting after having all this." We've had an hour of discussion, certainly there's things to work with there. Let's have staff go back and take another swing at this.
Our year temporary agreement is about to expire. We spent a year going round and round, so we have to approve at least this agreement, and then we can have a separate conversation about field maintenance. I think we can separate the two.
I would move approval of this agreement as written for thirty days term.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
And it's gotta go back to...
How about I just extend the second?
Only have in place for thirty days.
We have wasted so much time in my...
That's even better, just extend our, our current agreement for thirty days and come back and get rid of these pain points.
Is that a motion? I, I, I will motion to extend for thirty days the current agreement with the direction to clean these issues up. Second.
After giving zero guidance.
Whoa, Pimentel. Hold on, you can have your opinions, but let's, you know, come on, let's be professional. So any further comments on this?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, um, with the thirty days, I know that any changes that we made, because the board, their board already approved it, I think we would have to take into consideration making sure we have time to go back to their board as well. And I'm not sure what their schedule is, so I don't know if thirty days is, is gonna be enough time.
Well, worst case scenario, we come back and do another thirty-day extension.
The, the idea is to get it, to get it done and get it done right, there's very few pain points here, like, very, very few. It should never have gotten to this.
Mr. George, look, you want to say something?
Well, so we're gonna just, obviously, just focus in this thirty days on the, the final couple of issues that are still being debated, and that's it.
The big one was to Councilmember Berstuck's point is, can the city, is it viable for them to take on Richmond, what's involved in doing that? And would they entertain that? And if they can, I think we have at least three or four votes.
Just so the council knows, I mean, I, and, and we, we did discuss that at length, um, and that's how we got hit. But we, we would certainly go back and, and now that they, they've heard the discussion at the council level, I think...
In fairness, this is the first time as a governing body that we've had this conversation outside two-two ones in city, school districts. So this is a healthy debate. They've had the opportunity, now this is ours, and, okay.
Absolutely.
One question, you said, I know you've discussed this particular issue a lot. Has it come up to you that, that the response was, "We simply can't afford it"? Was that what the response was, or was it they just wanted to keep it the way it was?
I don't recall it being an affordability question, I, I, or a response.
No, I think there was, there was some, some, you know, that it could potentially benefit the community if we just continued to, to schedule it, so it would be centralized scheduling.
But it's not centralized scheduling because we all cross beams on, on, on the, when we're, when we're running these organizations.
I guess that's a fair point.
It, it literally does not change anything for the user groups, just a matter of who they write the check to.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the agreement for, the existing agreement for, do we?
No, no, I said, we, we motion, I motioned to extend the current agreement for thirty days.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those?
No.
Nope. Okay, three, two, Madam Clerk, thank you. Thank you very much, thank you, school board, school district, appreciate it.
Now that's how you run a meeting. Thanks for coming.
It's good to see so much passion, everyone cares a lot about this town.
Yeah, but you know what?
It's really good.
The history of the partnership, we've just now put cracks in that partnership, and I just want to make sure that we understand there's consequences to actions.
Consequences, that's interesting. So by them offering a gratuitous part of the agreement, that's somehow our bad?
There's a lot of threats up here about how the school district reacts to us when we question things, it's interesting.
I think it was a healthy discussion, I'm certainly glad we had it. It's, uh, was well overdue in terms of both sides. Okay, item twelve, Phase One Recreation Park Renovation Project. Mrs. Mancini and someone else?
I hope it starts with the tennis courts.
Yeah.
The ones I'm selling to Putin.
Well, hopefully, this item will be a little happier item. Um, yeah, so we, uh, as you know, we've been working now for, for several months with, uh, LPA, a design team on several iterations of the Phase One Recreation Park renovation project. So tonight, we're here to share with you some of the, the concepts that they've come up with, uh, we'll talk a little dollars and cents. And then, um, if you can review this, provide some comments, and really maybe get into some prioritizations would be helpful tonight. Uh, this is, this is gonna be several elements of the plan that, that'll be presented tonight. Not all of them that we can afford, at least the way the budget looks right now. And so that's, that's the, really, the, the big part is to review these conceptual plans at this point.
Hello again. Hopefully, this is a little bit easier subject to get through. Uh, I am very pleased to be before you this evening to continue our discussion on the future of Recreation Park. Tonight, staff is asking that the council make recommendations on several design options within each element of the Phase One projects and to then prioritize...
Mrs. Mancini?
I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. I think, would it be, would it be terrible to move up one item really quickly? I'm so sorry, I know you just got started, but we got people here, I just realized, in the back of the room that are waiting on one particular item.
No, whatever's the wish of the council.
Happy to come here.
Okay, is, you guys okay with moving up to Oak and Main? Okay. Item, thank you, item, uh, thirteen, consideration of, I'm so sorry, Mrs. Mancini, for the false start. Consideration of converting an existing two-way stop to a four-way stop at the intersection of Main Street and Oak. LeFond, great to see you, our city engineer with Public Works.
Good evening, um, Mayor Boillos and Mayor Duff's counsel. First of all, I offer quick apologies that I, I underdress for occasion because, you know, I think this is the first absentee for a Public Works director I ever remember. So I, I completely caught off guard and I, 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 I so, I apologized, I saw up, uh, just underwhelming. So with that being said, um, so the intersection of Main and Oak, um, I think we looked at it, um, a few years ago in twenty nineteen as part of downtown.
Sorry, LeFond, sorry to interrupt, is there, we're still on the old one, is there any, um, exhibit?
Yeah, that's one, I think, uh, Tracy, if you can change that.
I think somebody left that was driving that thing.
Nice job throwing Mike under the bus, though, I like that.
Mr. Patterson, we should be getting to the downtown specific plan by eleven thirty-five. Thursday. LeFond, you want to start? We'll just, yeah, thank you.
Yes, sure. Right, so, um, we looked at this as part of the downtown traffic study a few years ago. And, um, you know, we didn't go into the, the details, but at that time, uh, there wasn't enough justification to, um, to do any further, uh, 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 study. So in the last few years, we got a lot of requests from residents and regarding to turn this from currently a two-way stop where we have the stop sign on the side street, Oak, uh, uh, on the, um, eastbound and westbound, and turn it into a four-way stop sign, uh, at the two, uh, stop sign of Main Street and the northbound and southbound. So, um, actually, at, on, on a, at a stop level, the, you know, our job is actually pretty simple. So there are very specific guidelines we look at, um, for the four-way stop sign, we look at the, uh, accident history. We look at the, um, uh, volume of, uh, uh, cars and, 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 uh, pedestrians and bikes, and we look at the side distance. So we did a, we have a licensed traffic engineer did a study and, you know, uh, we found that, um, it did not meet the warrants. So, um, so I have to make the technically correct, but maybe unpopular recommendation that we keep our current stop sign, two-way stop sign, uh, the way it is. However, the decision is, uh, in your hand, uh, will implement, um, under your direction. Any questions for me?
Yeah, any questions for LeFond?
Does anyone know when that crosswalk went in? Because we have, we have the designated, you know, we have the stoplight one block away to service the high school. That crosswalk, what, why does anyone know the history of how we ended up with a crosswalk there? Because exceptionally poorly lit. Like, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult spot. Like, I wonder, is the, is the issue here the crosswalk, or is the issue the lack of a stop sign?
Because the way, uh, you know, it looks, the way it's decided, if the people really get to, try to get to a high school, it's the same distance whether you're crossing Oak or crossing Palm. So you really, the safer, uh, path would be directed the people to cross at Palm because that would be where the traffic, uh, 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 control signal is. You, you actually don't want people to, this encourage people to try to cross on, on, on Oak because, uh, you know, you're really walking the same distance.
So let's, let's understand, these are high school students and it's now no longer illegal to jaywalk. So they are not going to walk over to the light at Palm, they're gonna cross where they can cross. So if you put, if you take away the crosswalk, they're just going to continue to jaywalk now, now, no longer a, a crime.
Jaywalking is illegal if it's, if it's dangerous, it is illegal.
No, they, they've just passed a law that says it's not, you can't be ticketed for it anymore. So we can either pretend that they're not gonna cross there, or we can say, "You know what? There's a lot of accidents there, here near misses, put a stop sign in." Because if you're going down Main Street, the chances are you not having to stop at the two lights, one at Palm and Mariposa, is pretty good because the, the lights, they're managed pretty well and they flow east, north to south. So you just have to stop at Maple, you stop at, at Oak if there's a stop sign there, and you can blow all the way through to Pine.
Uh, LeFond, just further to Mayor Potem's point.
Mm-hmm.
What, what would be, I know there's like levels of, uh, you know, I don't know. I'm thinking like impediment, like, you know, there's the stop sign, a stoplight would be the most, um, restrictive, I guess? And then stop sign, and then, there's also different grades of crosswalks that we've experimented with.
Right, so if I remember correctly, the, you know, a few years ago, it was a simple crosswalk with two, you know, the, two yellow lights. And then in twenty nineteen, when we presented that to the council, council directed staff to do enhanced crosswalk. So that's why we ended up with the lead of patent, uh, in, in twenty nineteen. So that, we did that.
Okay, so we didn't, I couldn't recall exactly, no, okay.
Right, so we did the enhancement, now people want us not enough, then, you know, we want a, a, a stop sign. So, but you gotta, you know, that's where things are, but if, if you want to look further ahead, the next stop, the next thing would be put a traffic signal there. Now you're, you're talking about, you know, uh, 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 so it, but where we are is where people are requesting a four-way stop sign.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Could we put a stoplight there that was synced up to the one on Palm? So when Palm went red, Oak went red, and then when Oak went green, Palm would go green. So they were completely in sync, so that there would be, if you push the button, everybody stops, both Palm and Main, uh, uh, Oak, and then when it goes green, it goes green. So that way, there's not adding an additional stop.
So to answer that question, it's really a two-part question to, you know, whether we can put a, a traffic lights there. The first part is technically, you know, uh, whether, under the guidance, um, we, we, we meet the warrant to put a traffic lights there. And based on what I see, the answer would be no. The second part is can, does council still direct the staff to put a, a traffic lights there? I think the answer, you know, uh, maybe the attorney can confirm, the answer would be, you know, we, we implement what you decide.
Yeah, but could we sync the two lights?
Yeah, that's, that's no question at all, we could.
Then so what, so to me, that would be the best solution. If you add a stop line there, because you're gonna stop anyway at Palm, you might as well stop at Oak.
So what's the, LeFond, what's the cost in recurring maintenance of a street light?
Uh, the implementation, first of all, is, um, we are probably talking about, uh, 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 a two hundred thousand dollar project to add a, 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 a stop sign here, uh, because...
Like stop sign or stop?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, a traffic light.
Okay.
Two hundred thousand dollars, uh, because you gotta consider where the power is gonna come from. And then also we need to, um, you know, get Wolf of Addison to... need to, you know, get Wolf of Addison to walk through all the permitting and, and so it will be not only a $200, $250,000 cost, but it probably going to be a year and a year and a half before you can actually put it in place. But for the stop sign, the staff can pay it this week.
Okay. And then, city attorney, any potential liability implications of either traffic stop or stoplight or?
Sure. We've talked about this before, anytime the city installs a stop sign or stoplight that isn't warranted and if there's an accident, we're potentially subject to liability for putting in unwarranted traffic calming devices.
And, yeah, I know you've represented half a dozen cities over 35 years, have you seen those lawsuits surface?
Um, a couple where the lawyers have thrown in that as an issue. I mean, they weren't, they weren't significant injury cases, so not, not anything that was a significant damage case.
Could, could someone also make the case that even if it's, even if it's not warranted, could an attorney make a compelling case that someone was hit and the city was negligent by not having a stop sign, even if it's warranted, not warranted?
Uh, they'll argue dangerous conditions in the way it's, it's designed, yes, they're, yes, I mean, there's, you know, lawyers will argue whatever, that's the way, the nature of the game, but it, it does add a degree of risk that attorneys don't really like about adding in the, you know, the unwarranted traffic calming devices. Now, again, I haven't seen a major lawsuit. Now, that doesn't mean there haven't been any across the state, but I haven't seen it with my clients.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I think in this case, we have to look at the fact that the time that kids are in school now has drastically changed, dramatically changed. Like, so you have zero-period kids that are in there early in the morning, you got first-period kids, you got some kids that are seniors that are getting out after fourth or fifth period right now. And then you also have the fact that, again, we've mentioned 70% of the kids play sports. So, there's actually kids running around there until 6:00, 6:30 at night going back and forth. So, I, I do think we have to kind of look at this a little bit more holistically, that it's very different from when we first imagined what that was like. I guess the big question is, what is the best way to go about this? I know the most immediate way to go about it is a solar stop sign up there. But I think there's some credence to what Councilmember Pirstuk said, where you're, you're kind of just locking down the front of the street by having the actual traffic lights up too. So, I don't know how we get there. I think the immediate problem, probably, it has to be solved because it's like playing Frogger out there right now. But I'm not sure if you guys remember what Frogger is, but it was a cool game when I was a kid, 100 years ago. But it is kind of like that right now. So, I, I think we have to address the current problem. And I know there's like, what, 27 stop signs on Main Street as it is right now?
This would be, so right now, in a five-block span, in a five-block span, we go four-way stop, traffic light, traffic light, four-way stop, four-way stop. And so, I think that if we are chasing traffic calming, I don't know what else we could do.
No, I agree with you. I agree, but this, this intersection, I mean, just the overhead view of looking at the way that is, it's, it's, it's rough. So, I'm just saying, we do have an immediate problem that has to be addressed. I'm not sure of the best way to do it, but...
If we just make a motion to approve a four-way stop and then direct staff to evaluate the potential of a traffic light, which you said would take a year and a half anyway, correct?
I will make, I will make that.
So, we're going to have three traffic lights in front of the high school. Would be the end state. On the north, they said, they don't sync now. I mean, you know, I could join the gym. You know, we would have three traffic lights in front of the high school.
Three over light, that's a little bit of overkill, yes. I agree with you.
I've got to get in on the traffic light business, or the brake business.
Well, I would like to motion approve.
Well, let me ask you questions, I'm sorry. Do we know the cost of adding that kind of light-up traffic signal like we have right here on Main Street where you push a button and it flashes? Just a rough estimate of that?
Right, so, light a traffic signal, I think, you know, we...
No, not, you're just a crosswalk.
Got it. I think, I remember, we did, we placed it a few years ago using the solar power or crosswalk. It's about 30, 40,000 per crosswalk. That's what, why we remember, that's from four years ago, so the cost may, you know, in the last few years, go up a little bit.
It doesn't work that well in the daytime, though, does it? I don't think it does. At night, great, daytime, you don't even see it. And there's way more kids and people just crossing the street over here at Oak than there is right here in front of the jewelry stores. Great place to buy anniversary gifts, by the way. So, maybe my recommendation is, we would recommend to install the four-way stop, have them explore either a lighted crosswalk or a traffic signal or what else might be in the best interest of safety. And you may have to stop one more time on Main Street, I hope you're okay with that. Is that an official motion?
Uh, well, yeah, the, the only motion really is to, and, and, LeFond, we understand you did your work, you did all the calculations, that's great, but hearing the concerns of the community, my motion would be to reject staff's recommendation of keeping a two-way stop sign and instruct staff to install a four-way stop at the intersection of Main and Oak with the recommendation of exploring other safety issues, be it a light-up crosswalk or a synced traffic light. But the only direction now is that $500 ask of stop signs.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll second that, okay? Are we done? Okay, are those in favor?
Aye, aye.
No. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, LeFond.
Thank you, LeFond, thank you. I, I understand your concerns.
That was supposed to be quick.
I hope it's as well-attended as the Maple intersection, where people are, nobody stops at the stop sign, put up spikes. We need the police department's support on that one, enforcing that traffic stop.
Can we at least take the stop sign from somewhere else in town?
We have a net zero, net zero stop sign policy.
Tracy, not time for public comment, Madam Clerk.
Take a really important one on Hillcrest. Everyone's getting a little giddy up here. Mr. George.
Yeah, man, we've got a few more significant items on the agenda, so can I recommend or suggest that item 11, the communications plan for the city, we can bring that back to a future meeting and it's not, there's nothing urgent about that tonight, but that's going to be a 11.
Yes, good idea, thank you, sir.
Bring that back, okay.
No one's objecting up here.
So much PowerPoint.
All right, now, we're back to twelve. Phase One Recreation Park renovation project.
Yes.
Thank you. Will it have stop signs?
Yes.
Perfect.
And, and lighted crosswalks.
For the kids, stop the coyotes.
Yes. Excited to be back tonight, asking that you make some actual recommendations on several design options within each element of the Phase One projects and to then prioritize which projects be slated for next steps. To provide context as you view the presentation and begin identifying priorities, it is important to note that there is approximately $8.7 million already set aside in the CIP budget for these improvements. Additionally, there are upcoming grant opportunities for park improvements through both Prop 68 and through the Land and Water Conservation Fund that staff intend to apply for. As you view the presentation, please keep in mind that the projects and elements were identified, were selected based on community feedback and data collection as part of the 2021 Recreation Park Needs Assessment and in meetings with staff and stakeholders, multiple presentations to the Rec and Park Commission, and also several meetings with the Recreation Park Renovation Subcommittee. All of that to say, this has been a real community effort, there's been a lot of opportunities for residents to provide feedback on their vision and what they prioritized, and I do believe that each element will ultimately transform our beloved recreation park into the crown jewel of this community. Tonight, LPA Director Arash Azadi, Principal of Recreation, will present conceptual plans for potential improvements to Recreation Park. I'll turn it over.
And I just wanted to add, you know, sitting on the Subcommittee with Mr. Baldino, we've met multiple times and reviewed this as well as Parks and Rest Commission, and you've also presented it to the Planning Commission, and there's been consensus, correct?
We haven't gone to the Planning Commission.
We haven't gone there yet, okay.
But the, but the other groups, I think everybody's pretty much in agreement on all the things that you're going to see tonight. There will be some, some options, some of the elements have a couple of options, but Mr. Azadi will explain that to you.
But there's, there's consensus in the general direction.
Yes, and I think on the priorities.
Yes.
I'll turn it over to you, thank you. Thank, thank you for being so patient tonight.
No worries at all.
Unless you just advance here.
Absolutely. This is, this is early compared to some, so this is great. Well, glad to be back in front of you again. Thank you for the opportunity here. We've been, we've gone through quite a bit of work here, everything from design concepts to engineering to cost studies to everything, so hopefully, we hit all the boxes today. And first of all, I know, I think it was one of the comments or one of the items earlier, but congratulations on the baseball team. I wish they'd waited a year so we could have taken credit for it, but, but this is justification, if anything. So, the areas that we, that we were asked to focus on was Bret Hart Field, Stevenson Field, and the softball field, really looking at the condition of those and proposing improvements to deal with the drainage, irrigation, and some of the issues that related to the playability of those surfaces. The tennis courts, their general condition, which we'll go into. The shuffleboard area's got a lot of names, we're calling it the shuffleboard area, and some ideas on how to repurpose that space. And then looking at the teen center and the teen plaza and the proposed, possible improvements that could be made to those areas. Those were the specific areas. I know there's a lot of needs across the park, but we've really tried our hardest to maintain the original scope that was directed to us and focus on these specific pieces. Looking at just a schedule of how we got to where we are today, we started back in May, we had our kickoff meeting officially then, we did what we called surveys, we got a lot of information from the city, our teams went out and sort of looked at all those things and gained some familiarity with the spaces. Then we reconvened again and brought our engineering teams and some of our specialists to look at specific components of the project and understand what the issues related to those were. We then developed some conceptual ideas, some thoughts, a meeting with staff, understanding their programmatic needs, understanding some of their priorities, developed a few concepts and ideas related to what could be done, created essentially shortlists and refined some of those ideas, met with Subcommittee and reviewed, reviewed some rough order magnitude costs. And from there, we met with the Commission to obtain some feedback and got their ideas and thoughts related to the proposed improvements, and that brought us here. So, a few months' worth of work, to say the least. We'll break this down into the same pieces that we shared with you a moment ago, looking at the three field scopes, specifically the softball field and George Brett Field. We developed two options for dealing with the, the issues that were, that were identified. And frankly, we were just chatting the, the other day and Ally mentioned, he goes, it hasn't rained and it's still a swamp out there today. So, how do we deal with those? The options are, one, is to really design this like what we would do, a competitive field, creating a subdrain system for it. You bring in what's called a USGA root zone, essentially it's sand with organic material in it, and it promotes full vertical drainage, and then there's a subdrain system underneath that. That really helps with the drainage, but it also does a lot of benefits, it reduces compaction on the field, which is one of the biggest issues. Doesn't eliminate anything, right? There's still, it's still a natural field and has to go through its processes, but it really gives at least the grass a chance to develop deeper rooting structure, it minimizes compaction. There's a reason why golf greens look as good as they do, right? Because they have the similar kind of system, although more robust than what we're proposing here. So, that is one option. And then the second option was to look at a synthetic field. And a synthetic field, essentially, you're creating a bathtub which fully drains in and of itself and is designed to be played almost immediately, depending on the rain event, almost immediately after that. Looking at the electrical, again, we developed two schemes. One is to look at, just fix what we have, essentially, make sure everything's working, replace lamps if they need to be, if there's an electrical issue, deal with those kinds of things. And then the second was to fully replace the lighting systems and go with a new LED system. Those were the two options that were discussed for those. We're going to share some rough order of magnitude costs. I was at a city council presentation the other night and we spent literally an hour talking about what a rough order of magnitude means. Essentially, this is saying what the value of that amount of work generally is. It's not saying this is exactly what it's going to bid at. We are not contractors, so we don't bid on these things, we're a design firm that's sharing some, what the value of that scope of work is. We are at 10,000 feet right now, so as we get into the engineering, these numbers could be refined and, but hopefully, they are providing a, a good ballpark, pardon the pun there. So, looking at Bret Hart Field and the softball field, we're talking roughly about $4.4 million to go with option one, which is the natural grass field, so all-new grass, all-new irrigation, full subdrain system on it, bringing in the root zone that we discussed, and then repairing the lighting system. Looking at an upgraded option, if you want to call it that, is to go to a synthetic field, that adds about four point, about $5.1 million, so these would be cumulative numbers, so you would add them to each other. And then, options for going all-new lighting, about $2 million a field to fully replace those lights.
So, you're saying the, the 4.4 is mostly for the drainage, and then if you want, you have to do that with the synthetic turf as well?
It, it's a different drainage system, but these were all encompassing.
You're basically adding 4.4, then you add 5.1.
Right, they're completely different, but we're not, we're saying that essentially, it's $9.5 million.
That's what I'm, I was thinking.
To do both of these fields with brand-new, brand-new system.
And then I believe, I mean, with the Subcommittee, there was a lot of discussion about the lighting, and they felt that lighting was sufficient as is and just replace whatever bulbs and clean it up a little bit. There was, there was, I think concession both for the Parks and Rest Commission and the Subcommittee that we did not need to move forward with the LED light.
No, I'm saying, actually, I was kind of saying the same thing. So, you're saying that the Parking Rec Commission and everything, they were, they want to go with option one, which was you can actually put the LED lights in, you just wouldn't need new poles and do everything?
No, clarification, you're not replacing the lights, you're just making sure they all work.
That would be nice, okay. Gotcha.
Quick question on the artificial turf. How long does that last and what's the replacement cost?
Artificial turf, if you, if you properly install the system, it's just like your house, you don't replace your slab of your, your home, you just pull up the carpet and replace the carpet. So, your initial costs are more because you're building the slab, you're putting the carpet, you're doing all those things. They typically, I tell our clients, all of them have basically an eight-year warranty and some have a 10-year warranty, depending on the right uses and things like that. On a facility like this, on a city facility, you tend to see greater wear because they're less controlled in the sense of uses. I tell our clients, plan on eight, replace at 10, and if the only, if you absolutely don't have a penny, you replace a 12. But knowing that by your 10th year, your 11th year or so, that field is a safety issue moving that forward.
And that's another 4.4, or would it be less than that?
Uh, to go to the synthetic would add 5.1, so to go to synthetic, you'd be at 13.5. If you took out the lighting, you'd remove $4 million from that.
And then another 10 years or so, you know, 5 million.
And another 10 years, the cost would be significantly less. You're, you're talking about at least, less than half the cost.
And is the maintenance for artificial much different than it is for what's involved in terms of annual operating expenses?
The great thing about synthetic turf, you're not watering it if you don't use it, right? You're not, it's all based on use and wear. Natural systems, they're going to grow, you've got to fertilize them no matter what, you've got to mow them no matter what, you've got to water them no matter what. Synthetic turf is based on use, right? So, the, the maintenance is typically in two stages. One is what we call a general sweeping. It's kind of like you would do on an, on an infield for a baseball field. There's a little pull behind, it's got little brushes on it, and it essentially tries to get those fibers to stand vertically. When they lay on their side, you're playing on the side of them, they shear off and so you wear your field more quickly. So, you want those to stand up vertically like that. And then the second one is what we call a deep grooming and sweeping and vacuuming. That is typically done once or twice a year, again, depending on your use. And typically, we always recommend you contract that service out. You have the manufacturer that put it in or a company that maintains that because you can do more damage than good.
I think our terrific campus land lasted four years.
Yeah, that was a main question. We had to do a complete replacement of four years. And then we had to basically shut it down so people didn't use it to try to maintain it, so. We have a bad history with turf.
Oh.
A very expensive history with turf.
The other thing that's real important to mention is the pump station there that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, that's the next slide.
So, the, one of the things, the, regardless of what we do here on the drainage, we'll never fix the main problem until we replace the big pump station, correct? For Stevenson, so, just wanted to make sure, okay.
So, quick question on, when you're talking about the, the turfing on George Brett, are you talking about the baseball field or are you talking about the entirety of George Brett?
Everything's shown in green essentially, minus maybe some of the little areas behind the backside.
Wow, that's expensive.
It's a large area, which is why it's a, the cost is there.
Yeah. What was the recommendation or the feedback from the Park and Rec Commission on that? Stay, stay grass?
Grass.
Okay. What about on the softball field? Okay. What about on the softball field? So, one of the things that, um, on these fields that I, I would, would like to see or potentially look into is that all the non-playing surface, like it's the, the aprons behind the home plate and all that stuff, right? There's a lot of maintenance that goes into that, and it's not a playable part of the field. What would the cost be to turf whatever is in the foul territory area? You know, that kind of thing. You know, same thing with softball field.
That is a very hot topic now, and, um, uh, with all due respect, I highly discourage you doing that. Uh, what it does is it creates a lot of complexity in terms of the construction of that. It's very expensive to do. When you build synthetic fields, you're creating a bathtub, so essentially you'd have to create a little bathtub for this little area. When they go to mow these things, they're essentially mowing your synthetic field along with your natural. It, it just doesn't last. You say four years, it's going to be less than that. Um, you're not getting the wear and tear, but that edge gets destroyed. Um, and it's an expensive way for a little area.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, so that is, uh, the, the two fields there. Looking at Stevenson Field, uh, you, you, you started to go down, right, exactly?
Uh, I apologize. Can you just go back one more time? One more thing on Brett. One of the things I want to talk about on George Brett Field is when we redo this, um, is, right now, it's Little League distance. It means the, we never get any play on that field, other than when Little League uses it February to, to June. And the reason for that is, is that Pony Baseball has different base lengths and different pitching mound lengths. Okay? So, Little League is 46 pitching mound. Pony Baseball's 50. So, all these kids, they just play club. And so, we can't rent that out any other time of the year because Little League's not being played. Is there a, a way that we can sit there and say, okay, at least with the regular season or whatever, let's take the mound out, put a temporary mound in there that can do both distances? Be able to have two different sections of base paths so that we can, once Little League's over, we can sit there and, you know, we got Beach Cities and other guys in town. We can start trying to pay for this by actually renting it out again. Is there a way to, 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 to lay the field out that way?
Yeah. Absolutely. Uh, putting, putting embeds for the bases, that's easy. They're very cheap things, and you can install those. The challenge comes in, it turns into a Swiss Army knife. It can do a lot of things. It doesn't do anything really well, right? Um, so, and the reason I'm suggesting that is because, um, you, yeah, there's a few ways to do that. You essentially design it similar to a softball field, where your entire infield becomes skinned. You have a portable mound, and that mound can be placed wherever you want. You place a couple additional embeds. Or you design it to the smaller one and then overbuild the skinned area for the other. It's not the right sizes. They're not the right shapes. The gla- the grass isn't really theoretically in the right place. So, it can do it, but again, it's not doing either one of them really well. So, um-
Gotcha. So, it's kind of, I don't want to say the word "half," but you know what I mean.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
I don't want to "half" it. Okay.
Right. Uh, we're good? Um, okay. Perfect. Um, so, looking at Stevenson Field, this is a whole different, uh, animal, if you want to call it, that whole different ballpark. Uh, we worked extensively with staff. We met on site multiple times. We've had our engineers look at this. And what we've been able to discern, and this, this is, we're not speaking officially, but, um, essentially, this is designed as a detention pump. So, it's, uh, the way that pumps work, as we understand it, and, and city engineers confirmed this for us, is that these pumps are designed with a certain capacity. So, if you're there, and I don't know what that capacity is. 10-year storm, 50-year storm, 100-year storm, et cetera. Once you exceed that capacity, that excess water goes into this field, and it's intended to settle, and it holds that water until the water settles down. So, when it floods, it's essentially doing what it's supposed to be doing, right? Which is not a good thing from a playability standpoint, but it's a good thing in the fact that it retains the water on site and recharges groundwater and does all of those things. So, those things that we see in the outfield, those actually aren't drains. Those are, those are outlets for that excess water to come out of those things. So, think of them as bubblers, right? So, um, to fix the, to truly fix this, you need to look at the infrastructure in place. You need to upsize and reevaluate the strategy of those pumps and install additional pumps, and that is a whole project in and of itself because you're talking about a regional watershed that's draining into this. We explored a couple of options on, well, is there anything we can do to make this better? Um, and possibly, you're, but you're just moving the needle, essentially. So, one of the ideas that came to the top after discussing several options was to create a series of dry wells. So, as this water comes into this field and begins to flood it, you create these vertical infiltration units, basically, that take water down. They themselves have a minor amount of capacity, so they hold a little water, and then try to get that water to percolate into the subgrade quicker than at the surface. That requires more engineering. We'd have to do some geotechnical investigation to validate that. But again, we could put that in tomorrow, and you have 105-year storm, and your field will flood, right? So, it's, it's just really moving that needle and getting you a little more capacity, uh, in that sense. And it's a, we'd have to do more, um, evaluation and work to really validate the feasibility, um, of those. So, really, this is an infrastructure issue and a regional issue related to the pumps. Um, and fixing it, it would be, um, uh, uh, we, we couldn't apply the same strategies we do on the other fields because honestly, you'd be throwing your money away. Synthetic field would get destroyed after a couple times of getting flooded. The natural field, that sand layer would get, would get filled in and would get polluted over time and not drain as well the next time around and so on.
How, how far away from the, the hill are those outflow things? Are they right up against it?
Well, not up against it. They're just a little ways off of it, but they're very close to those.
Is, is a potential way to round this? Because the problem is, if anybody's watched a high school baseball game, I'm, I'm shocked nobody snapped their leg in half out there, okay? It's dangerous. I've seen it. I'm like, oh, my God. I can't believe it. So, is there any cred- uh, credence, or is it viable, to actually move the fence in front of that area? You'd shut that, yes, it'd be a smaller field, and anybody who listens is like, great, short porch. No, build the fence high, okay? Make it difficult to get over, but I think we have to take that out of the equation somehow. So, is there a way to move the fence down in front of the berm and in front of that area? So, yes, the field's a little short, but build the fence high, so it's, it's not a short porch. Does that help alleviate any of those potential dangers? I know it doesn't solve the problem holistically, but does it keep our kids a little bit safer that are playing out there?
That's a great point. So, there's really two issues. Uh, one is the safety of that field. Um, looking at it, I, I was shocked initially. The first time I saw it, that someone hasn't been hurt, but, um, they're used to it. They know where those things are, and they basically run around them, right? Or they might-
Except for the visiting team.
Except for the visiting team. And at that point, you know, um, but, uh, so there's that issue. Yes, we could certainly look at either a permanent fence or even a portable fence that's placed in front of it. Um, and you can create the green monster, right? And make them as high as you want to. To really understand the dimensions and stuff, I could, I'd have to get back to you on truly is that viable, understanding where those are? And is it so short that it's going to be ridiculous? Or is it something that's, we're getting into realistic areas, but we'd have to build a pretty tall, tall fence to make that viable? So, we can certainly explore that.
Are those out pumps? Do we know if they're out pumps? They're not part of the county drainage? They're not part of LA Sands rundown, like the one by TLC?
No, I don't believe so. I believe they're out pumps.
So, yeah, the issue with the fence is that it's still designed to flood. When that little blue, that pump house that we all walked by and didn't know what it was, that's just not engineered to perform to get the water out of this low area. So, all of Stevenson is designed, when you see it flooding, that's a good thing because it's not coming back into our homes, right? That's where the excess water is going. So, I, I think the point is, you don't want to spend a lot of money on new turf or anything because next time we get a big storm, it's going to flood again. So, the long-term cure is to increase the size of that pump, which means increasing the size of that little brick building, which is well beyond the scope of the money we have to try to make the field usable. So, the, the, the more you look, think about Stevenson, it's kind of an engineered, uh, holding tank for excess floodwater, and that really limits our ability to try to pour a bunch of money into either drains or, or improvements, knowing that the next time we get a storm, it's all going to be flooded out.
Okay.
I, I, my suspicion was true. Dr. Watkins, when he was in the school district superintendent, authorized that pump house, didn't he? That's the school district facility. Just kidding, Bill. Thank you. Please continue.
Sure. Uh, just to place some, uh, budget parameters around that, we're looking at roughly about $3.8 million to do the same thing, essentially. Put in new grass, put in a new subdrain system, and then put in these deep wells. But again, you're just moving the needle and, and it, they would not have the longevity of your other fields because of that constant flooding.
I'm sorry I missed it, but does that solve Councilmember Drew's comment about the-
The fencing?
The liability? No, the following.
Oh, the liability. Uh, the, the dry wells, we would move them to the furthest point we could and look at a fence structure of some kind in front of that. Um, but, um, and we would try to put those wells possibly in areas where they weren't in the direct field of play. Not sure that's really possible. If that's a true viable option, we would have to explore the, you know, how to make that work. How many wells do we really need? How many can we get in there? And once, when we do the geotech, how deep do we have to go before we're hitting thing? Is there groundwater there? Are we going to get to the groundwater level? There's a lot of, lot of things that come into play that we'd have to continue to evaluate. Uh, and then lighting, again, about $2 million rough budget to replace the, fully replace the lighting on that.
Um, one other thing that, that needs to be part of this is those dugouts have been around since Jesus was a baby, and these kids are giant, okay? So, we got to do something about them. They're way too, these teams are 20 players deep now. So, is, we have to look at redoing them and giving them something that's from the century.
That, that, that's a great point. So, for the sake of this, right or wrong, and we can certainly look at whatever you guys would like, um, but we are not touching the backstops, dugouts, or any of those improvements, the bleachers, et cetera. Certainly can.
I just think that if we're going to do this, we got to do it right. It, it's just, it makes no sense to, to, to fix the backyard and not the front yard. You know what I'm saying? We, we, I, I just think, while we're doing it, I don't think that redoing dugouts and redoing a backstop is going to cost the same as redoing lighting.
It's, it's-
I said, "I don't think." I didn't say, "No." I'm not a contractor either.
Well, you, the reality is, is discussions about costs right now, uh, are very challenging. But I can tell you, because when you replace that, you're either doing 30-to-40-foot fencing systems or you're putting in a netting system for the backstop, and then the dugouts themselves would be, uh, uh, masonry dugouts. And so, the cost is pretty significant.
I, I think we got to throw, I, I think there's multiple options on how to do that, though. So, why don't we just kind of look into it? While we're beautifying it, let's, let's make it look right.
Certainly.
Because again, you got, you know, baseball's big in this town. We, you know, high school's, it's a big program, and, uh, it's very important. And if we're going to take the time to fix it, let's, let's take, let's take all of it into consideration.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to the tennis courts. Um, so, we've looked at, uh, uh, we really looked at the tennis courts holistically and then started to look at some detailed areas. Uh, when I first saw them, the surfacing is actually in fairly good condition, considering the age of these. My initial inclination with this was that they were post-tension courts. Post-tension courts have a tendency to last very long time with ve- very little cracking. But once we got into it a little more, realized they really aren't because the way you'd have to construct them would be different. And so, we don't believe they're post-tensioned, but they've held up very, very well. The surfacing itself has. With the exception of the two courts at the very top, those, uh, my unofficial evaluation is that those receive more water from the grass area, so you have more migration underneath of liquid, of, uh, moisture underneath those slabs, which causes expansion and contraction. And we believe there might be a utility line running underneath those first two, which is represented by that, uh, blue dashed line that you see there. Because there is cracking that occurs right along that line. So, it has the, some thoughts that there is probably some, and there was some settling and/or movement that's associated with that utility line. Now, the, uh, walls are a completely different story. Um, those are in, in very poor condition. Uh, in all sorts of scenarios where you've got cracking, there's even been previous mitigation measures done where they've removed the fencing and relocated them to behind the walls in some areas, but then really didn't fix the, the walls themselves, or if they did, those fixes have failed as well. Um, you've got corners, uh, it, just about anything that could go wrong with those has gone wrong with them, with the exception of that they aren't falling over. Uh, so, the footings are probably in decent condition, um, with those. So, uh, uh, and really, there's portions that are acceptable. There's portions that are really bad. But overall, all the walls have some level of issue associated with them. So, we developed a whole series of options, and again, shortlisted them down to these two. Uh, one option is very similar to what was done before on very limited number of those courts. That, i- i- if you notice, there is issues everywhere, but the main issues have to do with where the posts come into the walls. And the reason for that is, you may have a wall that's so wide, and you have a post coming, the cover you have around those is very little, and those wall, those things tend to move and contract, and so that's where the failure tends to happen. It's a weakened plane in, in the, in the vertical, in the vertical angle there. Um, so, we would remove the, cut those posts, very similar to what's been done. Relocate them behind, cut into the existing slabs of the tennis courts, and then repair the walls. And we would suggest, uh, limited removal of the actual wall where those posts are and rebuild those pieces. It's a bit of Swiss cheese to do that. Um, but it's viable, and, uh, um, then we would probably reskimcoat those walls and, and get them to an acceptable level. It is not a 100-year solution, right? And I don't, I couldn't give you an exact duration, but it's a, it's a reasonable fix that should get, obtain more longevity for you out of the courts without having to tear down all the courts and completely rebuild them. Option two looks at really removing, um, everywhere there's a failure and replacing that portion of wall. Um, that really creates Swiss cheese. Um, and by the time you're done, you may just wind up having little pieces of wall left. Um, and we may get into a, a condition where, uh, we may come back to you later and say, "We really continue to evaluate this, and there's, you know, five feet left of this court's wall and 10 feet left on that court." And it may justify a full replacement. Replacing the walls as a whole would require either removal of the courts themselves or significant cutting of, into the courts, replacement of the walls, repouring those courts, and then we're completely resurfacing those. So, there's quite a bit of work if we wanted to look at an alternate for full replacement. So, those are the two options that were evaluated. Again, looking at the rough order of magnitude, looking at option one is $3.8 million to deal with the fencing and those walls, and then resurfacing those courts. By the time you're done, you're probably going to want to resurface those courts, and so includes all of that.
Wasn't that pickleball tournament going to resurface one of those courts? Wasn't that part of the, the coming for the pickleball tournament? They were going to resurface Court One?
I think they painted it and then they repainted it back.
It wasn't a resurface?
Resurface.
Going to the more significant option two, you would add $1.3 million to that. So, if you wanted to go with option two, that's a little over $5 million. Looking at option one, a little less than $4 million. Okay? All of these things, I want to remind everyone, these are, again, very high-level evaluations. While we've had very intensive reviews by our engineers and architectural teams and our landscape architects, et cetera, there's a lot more investigation that would need to be done and figured out to continue to document these scopes.
Was, was there any, uh, what was the input from?
I think that both the, the subcommittee and the planning was option one.
Option one, yes.
And to be clear, based on the comments earlier, there's no changes to any of the courts. If it was a tennis court, it stays a tennis court. If it was a pickleball court, it stays a pickleball. We would, there was, this, we didn't contemplate any changes or anything like that. Looking at the teen center and the teen center plaza, we broke those into two pieces.
But, sir, we were not adding any courts?
No.
I, I know the discussion was on, was on pickleball, right? I know at one point in time I'd like to expand that. But to be honest, you got eight good courts right now with the option for two more, right? Because you got the volleyball court area. So, you have, you have 10 courts. I think, again, I've been an advocate for this, but I, I think we're, 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 we've spent enough on that right now in lieu of some of the other things that we have to deal with.
I, I just know that we have, right, the adult women's league can't get court time, and we have invited a varsity program to, to-
Tennis, somebody did this.
Tennis? He's on my, oh, yeah.
Yeah, tennis. We have a shortage of tennis courts. We have a shortage of money to get through everything in phase one.
I'm just saying that there wasn't, well, look, we're, we're, we're talking about LED systems. It wasn't going to pricing. There's not an option to add court capacity, which is our single biggest demand point in the park.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the one thing we're short of, is, is racket sport courts in this thing. The other side, we've got some things to be repaired, but we don't have-
Well, we were talking about the racket court, the racquetball court, and that is going to cost us a fortune to tear that down to put it into a court, correct? It was going to cost, so their recommendation was basically denied to touch that and use it as storage.
You probably got a lot of pickleball courts at, uh, the teen center when you move that skate park to a more appropriate area.
Um, I think, to answer, um, Mayo Pro Tem, we did sort of look at it with, we do have a recreation specialist, Connie Thrasher, who's a pickleball, um, savant, um-
No, we seem to have pickleball- No, we seem to have pickleball. We don't have room for tennis.
Oh.
But we got five courts.
We can, we can recon, we can paint these courts however we choose. So we can, but you'd have to take away pickleball courts. But as far as adding a new court, building a new court, when we looked at this, we didn't think there was any in this area good location to do that. Because you'd either have to go out in front of the Jocelyn Center, or you'd have to remove the basketball court in the back, or take out checkout building, or do demo over here of these other buildings. We didn't think any of those were the best option. Um, and I do think, like Councilmember Drew, I think we're, we're in good shape with our pickleball courts. Tennis is a challenge with the issue we have with school district.
So question I have on, on the tennis thing, right, is, is, does the school district get three hours a day every day all year? Or just, when's it, is it, is it?
They have two seasons, yes.
Two seasons?
Yes, and then they also do typically in the summer, towards the end of the summer, ask for practice time. And they're, they're on the court twenty-five hundred hours a year.
Okay, so the women's league that is not.
Yeah, adult women's tennis cannot get court time.
Is it because it's during the same timeframe as the school?
I, I suspect it is.
Yes.
They can't move that time?
The school?
No, the adult women's.
I haven't talked with them specifically.
I, I don't, I, I don't.
I have a part of their schedule, but, you know, they, they, they pay taxes too, you know, I mean, like.
I, I haven't had any certain, I haven't, I'm not saying that's not accurate, but I haven't had any, I haven't had any conversation with.
Oh, I, I can just walk you down the street.
Maybe I shouldn't say that.
Pop mobile by the time they're done with you. You'll be behind glass.
Okay, I'm gonna step away from the microphone. Go ahead.
We, we can certainly look at adding courts if that's.
No, there's.
Look, I watch, I watch plenty of the alien landing strip stuff on TV, and it looks like that the lawn tennis thing was probably once a tennis court design.
Or it could make a good skate park too. I, I think when we get done with this, you realize how few dollars we have to accomplish so much. And in none of the subcommittee meetings that I've been to, or the Parks and Rec Committee that I watched, was there anyone clamoring for, we need to add more courts, it's just not financially feasible. What, I would just add to you that the Rec Park Commission and others probably didn't say the skate park should move either. But we had the top manufacturer in the country of skate parks say that is the wrong location and always has been, that we need to move it. So, okay, good, thank you. I'm just saying to Chris's point, you know, maybe there's an option to use that facility. If we did move the skate park and that basketball court that's used mostly for little, for rec, and the school district gives us some facility use at the middle school, we might have more space available.
So looking at the teen center, uh, we looked at this, uh, again, working with staff to identify programmatic needs and their priorities. We broke down the spaces into these three categories, uh, areas for play, areas for performance, and areas for creativity. Uh, so take that in that context, this could really, that, part of the idea, again, in our discussions with staff is that we're not looking to compartmentalize this facility. They like the idea that it's an open facility that they can use, uh, how they deem appropriately. But there's pieces in there that they'd like to see, and then a lot of this can be done with furniture solutions and, and movable programmatic things that they can adjust and open up and move things to the side and utilize in a variety of ways. Um, so, but generally trying to zone these, to create these and look at the different program pieces, this is the ideas that, that started to evolve. Part of the idea was a connection to, from the indoor to the outdoor. Um, once there's improvements on the, um, the plaza itself, there's that connection, the idea with some movable doors. We call them nano walls, but folding partitions or roll up doors, some kind of things like that. New, uh, storefront system for the, uh, the building itself in terms of the windows and the doors and glass. Looking at, um, uh, uh, modernizing the gender neutral restrooms, taking a look at the restrooms and creating gender neutral restrooms there, um, and bringing them to code, uh, making them appropriate both from an ADA standpoint and just a usability standpoint. Uh, looking at the bottom right hand corner, you see that number four, that's a very dark, uh, uh, dismal space. We have, are very limited because of the construction of this building itself, the block and the age. We're trying to be very careful not to trigger seismic upgrades to this. Um, but there's, so we can, very few opportunities to make penetrations into the existing structure. But that's one area we figured we could actually get a window, uh, into that space and bring in a little bit of natural light. Um, looking at the stage component on the bottom left, that is the, uh, uh, item number five there. And really upgrading that facility, making it appropriate, getting an accessible ramp to it so it meets current code. Looking at the, um, looking at the reception desk right now, it's sort of in the middle of the space. And once you create some of the storefronts and the, uh, connections to the indoors and outdoors, relocating that into a more appropriate place on the upper left hand corner. Uh, looking at new roofing and insulation, looking at new lighting, adding some skylights. Uh, we call them solotubes, which are a very unique system. Um, new doors and new hardware, and then interior and exterior paint, refreshing the whole facility. And then looking at the hidden items that you absolutely have to add, but people don't see. Um, looking at a complete mechanical system, uh, re- replacement, uh, your full HVAC system, fire alarm, your audio visual, the speakers for the stage. We're not creating that like a performance venue, but having adequate, uh, 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 resources there to, to do the program elements that they're looking to do. Uh, the electrical service itself needs to be upgraded to some degree, um, new lighting and lighting controls. And then even looking at the option to add solar photovoltaic on this in a storage system as part of that, if that's something, um, that became a priority. So just starting to look what this could look like, we're not designing anything yet, we're just, this is the ooh moment, right? Um, and really kinda what could be, um, depending on what improvements are, um, are desired. So looking at the conceptual costs for this, uh, and gutting and replacing the restrooms, doing the interior finishes, the ADA upgrades, and the furnishings themselves, anything, we call them FFNE fixture furniture and equipment. If you took a building and turned it upside down, whatever falls out's really not part of the project. Whatever stays bolted is. So there'd be significant furniture and things like that, which isn't part of this, but that could be limited to very little few things or a lot, depending on what you wanted to do. Um, and that's about three point six million, uh, to do that. The PV, the photovoltaic system, uh, the solar panels and the storage system, adding about point six million. And then we did include, because again, depending on additional engineering, and once we start getting into the roof itself and all of those things, in the event a seismic upgrade was required, roughly an allowance of about point six million dollars to do that as well. So.
There's money available, isn't there grant money for green applications right now through the administration?
There is, there's certain conditions to it, and there's one program, um, where the, any sustainable elements like PV panels, um, you can submit for those and anywhere from a ten to thirty percent reimbursement on the cost of those. The challenge there is you're up, you're fronting all of that cost, and then you submit for it, there are timeframes. But it's a good program ultimately, if you're gonna do it anyway, because it's not just the PV panels you can substantiate. If you're, for instance, you built a, a shade structure that also has that, the cost of that shade structure could be added to some of that. So there are creative ways to look at that. But again, you're fronting that cost and then you submit for reimbursement. So about four point eight million to do everything, or really, uh, going back to the, uh, excluding the options that we talked about, three point six million, um, uh, rough allowance. And then looking at the teen plaza itself, um, the, the basketball court has a nice little slope to it. Um, the entry itself is very understated and, um, past its prime. And then really the, the street edge itself has, um, uh, some challenges. And in terms of ADA accessibility, you're non-compliant, uh, for the majority of the facility. So looking at options on how we can do this, updating that bus, that drop off area, creating a true drop off and a, an accessible parking stall, um, creating a series of spaces. I don't know if it'll show up on this, it doesn't typically on screens. Looking at that area right there, creating a, uh, series of steps and staircases that get you the appropriate access, the ramp structure, but also creating those in a creative, uh, building those in a creative way to create seating opportunities, areas where people are waiting to be picked up, and or even small gathering spaces and so on. Uh, redoing the court itself, leveling the whole thing off appropriately, doing new landscape, and then, uh, creating a true entry, uh, for the building itself that allows for that connection pieces that we showed a little bit earlier. And then looking at the skate park itself and also embellishments that could be created on the building itself. Looking at, if you went, we go back a couple images, looking at, for instance, areas where mural walls and art, uh, uh, components could be integrated into the project. And then really looking at a wholesale replacement of that, uh, skate park and building it in an appropriate way that meets some of the age requirements and some of the age criteria that's been expressed. We have not designed it, the, uh, piece itself, that, for that, we would engage a specialty consultant that we've worked with, either Spawn Ranch, I know you guys have worked with, we work with a, a whole slew of other ones as well, designing skate parks. We would engage with them and really define and design that in an appropriate way. Okay?
Does the, do you have the stats on the use of that? I mean, I certainly remember my kids participating in the, uh, Rec Park Basketball Program on Saturday mornings. But the use of the basketball court, like the numbers, and it doesn't seem to be highly used outside of that program.
I don't think we keep stats on that. I think most of it is drop in. We do have some programs, but when I was talking with staff, they were very adamant that the basketball court stay. And I think you heard that when you met.
Why? What's the rationale?
That people, that the kids like it.
They use it.
Yeah, I mean, we, okay, I understand that, and teen center is right there, but does it have to be there? Why does it have to be there?
You mean as opposed to?
Somewhere else.
Well, I think.
I don't think there's that many opportunities, having reflected on my kids going through the teen center. They were heavy users back when.
Back in the day.
Back when Neil was doing music programming concerts in the teen center. There was very little, like, I'm gonna go outside and shoot hoops from the teen center. Has that changed or just?
It sounds like from staff it has changed, because I had the same, we, we kinda had the same conversation about, could we make this a nice seating area? And they, they were very adamant about this.
And it's got adjustable height rims, so that's like a draw.
And the other thing is, we, we walked the space, uh, Ryan and I, and the, the reason why there is a slope is there is a drainage there, and that's, and so we asked them about the slope, was it a problem? And they said, the, the, the teens didn't think it was a problem having a slope, they just knew.
Yeah, the, the surface needs to be redone, you've got bad cracking. But as far as the money to take that slope off and make it level, what we saw when we walked out there, that it slanted and then it goes into a drain that goes underground and probably ends up at Stevens and Field where the pump is at. So once you take that slope, which comes off of, you know, Grand where they run the cars, all that hardscape, all that rainwater comes down, goes across the basketball court, goes underground into our subterranean kingdom of water. Um, and so I, I would not recommend making that flat. Cause again, it's a teen center, it's a pickup game, it doesn't need to be perfect, it never has been perfect, but it, it's a great benefit. And when it comes to who's using what, uh, I agree with what the Parks and Rec Commission said. It's like the staff at the teen center knows what the uses are. And so when it comes to like the movable furniture and all that, we're gonna defer to staff on what the teens want and what they need. Um, but they said the full court is important because it gets used. Okay, so going forward, one of the things we talked about for four years since they rolled out Rec Park, that expensive software, is actual numbers on resource utilization. Rather than just deferring staff and guessing, can we have numbers in the future? You know, I know we're not gonna solve that tonight, but it's hard to make decisions about resource allocation when you don't understand the full utilization of our hard assets here.
Right.
So I would love to know numbers, and the other question would be, what do you do with that skate park space if the skate park wasn't there?
Hmm, that's a good question. I don't think we considered that. We didn't consider.
Because that is a, that is not a good space for that skate park. The design has always been insufficient. We've heard that for years for the users, anyone that skates knows that. It's not gonna, we're gonna shoehorn it into the existing space if we're keeping that basketball court. And we had, we had someone that's in the space that you work with say would be better where the lawn bowling is, which is idle space. So assuming we went down that path, who knows, you might have a different opinion, it looks like. But what else could we use with that space? What are our users telling us that we need? Could you fit a couple tennis courts there or is it not big enough? Does it, uh, there's not teens there now, there's adults skating in there as well.
You, you probably, probably could fit one tennis court in there, um.
Did you fit, how many could you fit if you eliminated that basketball court?
No, I think, because the tennis court would just be a little bit bigger than that basketball court. By the time you get the runoff zones, the fencing and the walls and all of those kinds of pieces, you probably wouldn't have enough room. And then we'd wanna look at the orientation as well, making sure that we're going north, south, and not east, west on it. That makes it a little bit tougher, uh, in this area, but you could probably fit one, maybe you can fit a second, we'd have to evaluate that.
Well, I have you, the other question is, that, is that parking required or is it just something was a nice to have?
Uh, really, it, it, you, you, you are required to have accessible parking. There's no accessible path of travel to get to that front door. Um, now you're on a hillside essentially, but you are required.
Even with fairly abundant parking along Grand Avenue.
But, uh, from that stall, you, your closest stalls to your entrance are the ones that are required to be ADA accessible. And then you have to have from the doorway all the way to that front door essentially has to be less than two percent slope or has to have a appropriate ramp structure and so on. You're non-compliant with that, so you do need at least one parking stall, if not more.
Got it, okay. If you had parking down below and there's a way to get from that massive parking lot that we have up here, ex- with the exception of ADA parking in here, would that meet that requirement?
Um, so since you have parking on the street, um, now you are your own building officials, you guys can evaluate and.
Because the parking that's there is so compacted, it's not very easy to use. It's good for a drop off, but that's about it. And most of our users, if they're truly teens, are gonna be riding their bike or skateboard there anyway.
Right, right. Um, but you, you could argue that getting access, but really getting access from your parking lot to this, then you'd have to make sure you have a true accessible path of travel all the way to that elevator. That elevator works appropriately, gets you up, and then someone could argue that you're not providing equal access. You're making someone, um, with a, uh, accessibility issues traverse the park when there is parking spaces for, uh, 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 you know, others at the, at that northern edge. So you would run into issues there. So, uh, again, we looked at the, the skate park component itself. Um, ultimately, we could evaluate other locations on the, on the site if that's something that we wanna explore. So the teen plaza renovation, including both the building and the plaza itself, roughly about four point two million dollars. And that, um, uh, looks at one point one million dollars for the skate park allowance to design that. And a million dollars gets you a decent sized skate park. It's not massive, it's not tiny, it's a decent sized skate park. Uh, and the space allowance that we had there is certainly, uh, uh, appropriate for that budget. Okay? Then the, the famous shuffleboard area, we looked at, uh, what could some of the uses be? Part of this is predicated by the senior, the Jocelyn Center that's really there, and looking at, um, complimentary uses. Um, and really a bit of a, a space between the tennis courts and the Jocelyn Center, the community garden area itself. Uh, part of the issue, what we heard was grass is great, and we'd love a very nice pristine lawn area. The way that lawn bowling area is set up with the fence, with the depression, all of those kinds of things, very difficult to get into. So really redoing that space and creating a more appropriate, um, and we'd probably design that very similar to how we would design the athletic fields with a full sub drainage system that it could, it could accommodate some of those uses. Adding trees and seating areas for shade along the perimeter of that, and then looking at a garden area. There we go, oops. It jumped way ahead, okay. So looking at the, uh, creating a really, two defined spaces, one grass area that could be used for a variety of things, everything from yoga or, uh, uh, you know, a community gatherings, et cetera, uh, farmer's market, who, who knows, whatever that is, to, um, creating a seating area and a, allowing for really a variety of seating options. Tables where small groups can meet, individual spaces, creating a little softer surface related to that, and providing more shade as it relates to tree canopies and, um, uh, addressing some of the comfort level, uh, pieces. And then also creating a little bit of a buffer again between the tennis court, pickleball areas and some of those other programs, uh, that are along there. This, the seating area too is specifically located to provide, again, some potential use and shared, uh, access with the, uh, with the Jocelyn Center there. So looking at that area, um, with the demolition of that existing improvements and the proposed improvements, about a million and a half dollars, uh, worth of, uh, uh, budgetary allowance. And that's a, really a good way to look at this, is these are almost like budget allowances that you're providing, and you knew a design within those parameters.
Just a quick question, I think you said the skate park where it currently is would be, we had one point four allocated.
One point one.
What would be the incremental if we did it here? I'm just curious.
I honestly would have to look at the square footage and, and the space. I think you could create. I think you could create that same 1.1 million and create a skate park in this area and just stay within that 1.1 million dollar budget, right?
Okay, thank you.
So giving you a overall summary to this, Stevenson Field, we talked about that piece with the 3.5 and the 2 million dollars for lighting. George Brett and the softball field, about 4.4 million. If we wanted to look at the option of synthetic, you'd add the 5.1 million. And if you wanted to add the lighting, about 2 million per field, so an additional 4 million there. The tennis courts, option one's about 3.8, option two adds about 1.3 million to that 3.8. The shuffleboard area, 1.5 million dollars. And then the teen plaza at 4.2 million, including the skate park. And then looking at the teen center with 3.6 million, the PV adding about point six and the seismic adding about point six. So cumulatively, taking out Stevenson Field, we've sort of dropped that below the line. The numbers are still there, but we dropped that below the subtotal line that you see there. Looking at the basic improvements, you're talking about 17.5 million dollars. And then looking at the upgraded facilities of adding an additional 11.6 if you were to select every single one of those options. Sorry to share the bad news.
If you took out the lighting, how much is it? It's hard to read that, but is that?
The lighting, think of the lighting about 2 million dollars per field.
So 15 if we didn't do lighting?
Well, the, the, the basic numbers on the left include fixing all the existing lighting.
Gotcha, okay.
Right? But it doesn't include upgrading that lighting or replacing.
What did the Rec Park Commission and the Subcommittee recommend in terms of prioritizing these things? Certainly we don't have all the money.
No, there was definitely a priority or very strong consensus that we focus on the teen center and the teen plaza. And then I think the number two was the courts, or I'm sorry, not the courts, the fields. And then the, I think there was, there really wasn't consensus, consensus between the courts and the shuffleboard area. But definitely teen center and the fields were the top priorities, if I'm remembering correctly and I know.
Yeah, that's correct. We didn't think we, there would be any money left for anything else, to be honest with you.
Right.
And Julie Stolnack made kind of your point about if we're gonna spend this money, it, I gotta, it's gotta be something, what you say. I gotta, I gotta touch it, I gotta see it, I gotta feel it, I gotta be able to appreciate it. But there's so much work to be done. And if we don't start with the drainage and the irrigation at Brett, then we'll never get to use that field. As much as I like to have a nice backstop and all that, I, I think we need to focus on the, the infrastructure on Brett. And then we'll see the most bang for our buck at the teen plaza and the teen center, which is in dire need of some TLC. It's, it's a well-used facility. And then after that, we're pretty much out of money for phase one. That's, that's your 8.7, stretching that, which is all we have allocated for phase one. Everything else then rolls over into phase two and possibly even a phase three. But yeah, the last paragraph has your priorities that I think accurately summarizes the, the Recs Commission meeting I went to and the Subcommittee. They were teen center and the plaza were number one, and then upgrade and repair the fields so that we can actually use them and not have to shut them down every time it rains.
And the fields not, why not do in the fields first? Does that have to, with that conflict with some seasons? Are we worried about teens?
They just thought the teens was the highest priority.
I just don't think we've done our due diligence. No, no disrespect to Rexson Park. I don't know any skaters in that group. I don't think we've done our due diligence with the skate park. I would be ashamed to recreate what we have, which is a poorly designed, highly utilized facility in spite of itself. I just, I really struggle. It's the only piece I struggle with here is if we're gonna do the skate park and spend that much money, let's do it right. And we haven't consulted with, I don't think we've asked any skate park companies to look at the facility, have we, as part of this? And that is a major driver of what we do with that teen plaza. So I think that my perspective is we have to start there. Everything else we solve for, but we don't know the answer to that. What can we design in terms of the skate park in that versus somewhere else without asking an expert?
So the other thing is, you know, when we were talking about the shuffleboard area, making the long field.
Yeah.
Do you know, like an area for open, open grass or play? If you put a skate park in there, you're gonna have to put gating, like large fencing. And it, it does definitely change the, the dynamic of, of the.
Not necessarily. I'm thinking about like Venice. Venice doesn't have gates or fences. I've seen others that don't, especially if it's like a flow track. You don't have to have that. I mean, you could, but.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we should at least explore it with some experts. Where it would be, I can't imagine we're gonna spend all this money, a million and a half, 2 million dollars on a skate park. And then we're gonna end up with the same end product. That's my only point. Am I reading the tea leaves correctly that one of the challenges with that shuffleboard area is its proximity to Jocelyn?
That's correct.
So the banging of tennis balls and the clacking of skateboard wheels. Yeah, I agree, Chris. We might have a vendor that says, look, just take out the basketball court. Staff doesn't recommend it. This is how you're gonna get a really good product and we'll put this basketball court somewhere else.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying from the very beginning. And there, everyone was saying, no, 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 we need the basketball court.
I think if you asked the public though, if you asked the users, and if we had numbers to show us the utilization of that basketball court versus a skate park. I think that would tell us the story versus a couple staff members.
Is there anyone else up here who wants to move this skate park from the teen plaza? Because I do not.
Why don't, rather than going so extreme, Councilman Baldino, why wouldn't we just say, do we wanna direct staff to at least engage with the consultant? Understand what's doable in the existing space and elsewhere before we answer that?
Well, because we've already gone through a process to get to here.
Not at the council, we haven't.
I, I agree. I agree. But if, if you're asking what the Parks and Rec staff and your Parks and Rec Commission and the Subcommittee talked about. No one talked about moving the, the skate park.
I get that. And do you want to plan a commission for all those years? Did you ever disagree with what staff presented?
Yeah.
Okay, so all I'm asking is that we go back and we reevaluate where the ideal place is for the skate park. If it's at the teen center, is this enough space? And if we get a vendor that's reputable that comes back and says absolutely, and here's our recommended design. And a couple of users from the community say, yeah, it looks right, we're done. That's all I'm suggesting.
That's fine. And all I'm telling you is even if a vendor came back and said that would be super nice to have the skate park there. I don't like the idea of putting the skate park in the middle of Rec. I like it being by the teen plaza, so they have their own space next to the basketball court where they can hang out. I, I think you put it where the shuffleball court is. I'd rather prefer it just to be open grass.
Okay, thank you for that.
I just wanna make sure, I, the, sorry. The, the teen center 3.6, that's just the, that's the building, right?
Right.
It's not the basketball court.
That's correct.
Are we in agreement that that's a good idea? Right? Cause I, I think one of the things I wanna come out of this with, we, we, we always wanna do these big grandiose things and then we end up doing nothing. Because, so is there a way that we can start and say the teen center 3.6, we like that idea, let's go with it. And then we're gonna have, and we can address the second piece of it. And on the base, on the fields, putting Stevenson as a, it seems that's like an afterthought. I don't understand that. That's one of the biggest issues that we got right now. Now, I get you, Brett Field for sure. The, the softball field is the most utilized field in the city.
Bobby Sox is a disaster.
That field probably is, is one of, then one of, one A. I agree Stevenson's probably the third out of this. But I think we gotta figure out, cause it's the fields and the teen center building. I think we can get started on and get it done because that is gonna, that literally is probably what, as far as use in the city.
Yeah.
The overwhelming majority of the, of the kids in town and, and adults and, and for that, for that matter. And it probably gets up to about 11 million dollars, right? We're gonna have to, I, I just think that if we're gonna make an impact, those four spots are a great way to start it. And then to Mayor Boyle's point, look, if we have time to look over what that other option might be for the skate park, then let's take the time to do it. But let's get something done. That's my opinion on that.
In regards to the teen center, you certainly could pull that out and do it on its own. But you would have to make improvements to the site work if you do that in and of itself. So you can't just do the building. You would have to do some level of site work to address the accessibility and really to address the accessibility.
Is that part of the teen plaza calculation then?
That's currently.
Okay, can you, can you sit there and say teen plaza calculation includes what you just mentioned, the basketball court and the skate park?
Correct.
So can we break out those three costs?
Yeah, we, we, we would need to design something appropriate, cause they were designed holistically right now. So we would wanna say, okay, if we're only doing the teen building itself, what is the minimal level of improvements that we could do on the outside to get that? And that's a, that's a line that we'd have to figure out because how much, how much do you want out there, right? And so we could certainly do that and then allocate the dollars appropriate to that and then address the skate park piece separately. I, just as a suggestion or just as a thought, we've roughly got a million dollars allocated for the skate park, right? That could be generally applied to anywhere, right? That number could go up some, that number could go down some depending on where you put it. Because if you put it somewhere where there's existing improvements, you would demo those existing improvements and then put it there. So you could say that we wanna move forward with the skate park and the teen plaza and the teen center. But we need to come back with options on where that and what that cost impact simply would be to that million dollars. And maybe the million dollars is adequate. I mean, we could easily direct the consultant, and we design skate parks. We bring them in as part of our process. We could easily, you got a million dollar budget. Let's design a really great million dollar skate park, right? And then we can look at how that million dollars fits into somewhere on the site.
The only problem I have with that is the million dollar constraint.
Okay, well, yeah.
Because we might say, look, for 1.5, 1.7, you're gonna have an incredible skate park that users are gonna love. But for a million, we're gonna get what we have.
Sure.
So I, I think what I hear land stands, why, I don't understand why we wouldn't, we wouldn't do the fields now either as a priority. I just, to me, that makes the most sense. That buys us time to figure out teen plaza, finesse that a little bit more. Is there any attractive nuisance quality to the, to the racquetball area? I mean, no one goes in there. Like, do we know? Is there anybody living in there? Like, is there some Morlock living in there?
I didn't go in there. I peeped into it and said, I'm not going in there.
We talked about the, the racquetball and it was basically gonna cost us a lot of money to demolish it. Cause it's sunken. I know, cause we talked about maybe putting the skate park there.
I was gonna say, cause that, those would be the seemingly the characteristics of the skate park. It's already tunneled in and got a bowl. What, what would demo cost? Do you have rough numbers of that area?
We didn't, we didn't.
I mean, we have to address it at some point. You can't have like an idle, is anyone using it anymore? I haven't played there in like five years.
Somebody went in to play in there and was like, there was cobwebs and everything.
Well, someone, we're gonna have to address that at some point. We can't let that just sit as a dangerous potentially idle facility.
Yeah, I mean, there could be somebody living in there. Like, it's not a joke.
No, it's not open. I think it's just stored right now.
Well, Rectifier wasn't open. There are families living in there. I mean, that's.
Part of the consideration is demoing it. And then part of it is what do you put back once that hole in the ground is there or that bare dirt is there? You could say we're just gonna put some grass seeds on it and just let it become weeds or whatever it is. Or what do we put back in its places at the skate park or is there some programmatic piece that we'd wanna include in that? So that would be, we'd go through a programming process. And if that's something that's tied to the skate park itself, we could look at where that, as an option for the skate park.
There's just one more question. I can't, I can't help but think about that area right outside the batting cages, next to the hockey rink. You know that area? Is that, who, that's rarely ever used, is it? I'm trying to think about.
You're talking about the backcourt up top, the, the little.
Yeah, it's like the back of George Brett. Yeah, yeah, that corn.
Right by the pavilion?
Right over there, right?
Not that that'd be a good place for skate parks. You got Park Vista right there, but that's pretty idle spaced. It's not really used, isn't it? Anyway, so, anyway, so please, if you're talking about in the outfield or over by the.
No, like just that triangle down below. Basically baseball is, literally they use it as part of their, their practice routine.
Okay.
When you're doing batting practice and you're herding cats, you're trying to keep them occupied in that little square.
Yeah, okay, okay, forget that then. I, I would like to, I just think, I would like to move approval that we go forward with the, with the fields, which is lighting, bulb replacement. And come back at it with a little bit more.
This is George Brett and Bobby Sox, that first on the 4.4 line? Yeah, I, I don't think it included the lighting because they said the lighting was adequate and the cost for LED wasn't worth it. It's like drainage and irrigation.
Yeah, no, I thought light bulbs, light bulbs or whatever is needed, right?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, make sure they work, but not replace anything.
Correct.
And then it's just a, trying to get a control of the drainage issue so we can actually use that space and not have it flood out. Like, I don't know why it would be flooded right now.
And you, and you can move forward with the fields and the teen center. I mean, they can be done parallel. Where you don't have to do one and then the other. So I would recommend to your point is go back to your, your, you know, architecture and design and say, we have this space. And, you know, look at the, look at the teen center plaza without the basketball court versus with the basketball court. And let people get to designs and let people weigh in on them. You know what I mean? Give people the option and then we can go to the teens saying, hey, would you rather this or would you rather this?
I fully support that.
Because I, I wanna move forward on that teen plaza. We, I mean, I've been on, we've been on DIAS now for how many years? And we've been talking about the teen center? Yeah.
All right, so do we have, anyone like to make a motion to approve authorizing staff to go forward with beginning the plans to redo the fields Brett and softball, softball field?
Yeah, I mean, the ask is just what the priorities are. So should we just tell them fields, teen center, skate park and then? But here we're saying fields minus Stevenson, right? So that's gonna get pushed to phase two?
Stevenson is a much bigger piece because to really resolve the issues on that field, you're talking about regional board approval. You're talking about social commission. So it's at the timeline on it.
Gotcha.
Would, you could get these other things done much quicker.
Okay, I'm, I agree then.
I, I just want one little caveat to what Councilman Baldino stated, which is that before we say just do it in this order. That they come, staff comes back to us with options on the teen plaza. That's all before they just say go forward with it.
Do a design with, like a quick. Sorry, you could do a design, not a full design, but like a quick.
We could do a conceptual study.
Yeah, conceptual design with, without the basketball court and with the basketball court. And then we can take it to the teens. It's their area, right?
He was saying that would take just a couple months.
Yeah, it, it, and, cause you'll want costing as part of that. Would that include looking at options for, there, there's two ways we could address the skate park. One is to really just look at options and spatial allowances for it and say, here's a great spot for it. Let's give 30,000 square feet to it or 2,000 square feet or whatever, appropriately sized. And that's partially dictated by the area that's a lot, you know, that you have in that area. And then design the, the exact features of it when we move into schematic design, cause that's typically when we would do that. So we could easily look at options and from a, again, a rough order of magnitude, say, hey, you've got existing improvements here. That's 200,000 dollars to remove that. And then it'll cost, you know, 1.5 million based on the square footage to design the skate park. That way, as a council, you're not committing to designing and spending the dollars to design that yet because you're not sure where to put it yet, right? So that's one way to look at it.
Yeah, that makes sense. As long as you incorporate, I think, I don't know how my colleagues feel, the Councilor Perstak's perspective of bringing whatever you design conceptually back, getting input from the users.
Whatever you like, yeah?
Is everyone okay with that? Well, we don't have a motion yet.
Yeah.
It'll be a polling 12 year old.
One quick question. On, on the, the teen center thing, whether, I'm not sure if we're doing it yet or whether, but we think we need to. There is a security camera system that we have put in place in that area. I think it's important to do so at this point in time. Can we look at that because?
Yeah, I think that.
I think anything else, it's our kids right now. It's, you know, at night, it's very well.
Yes, so.
There's a lot going on there.
We, we installed one recently over at the checkout building because of some of the issues we had there. And I know Jose Calderon, our IT director, is looking at a more, a larger plan for Rec Park and the facilities. But we can certainly, if we're gonna redo the teen center, we can prioritize.
I absolutely think we should.
It wasn't a huge cost from what I remember either.
Thank you.
Is it a significant effort to, to get a, just a really rough costing on a demo? I mean, probably, you may know if there's any users currently using racquetball. I could be, I could be totally through, you know, consigning it to history. But I, I, you know, that's.
And just look at minimal replacements, something just to cover the dirt essentially.
Yeah, just put under because if we were really looking for a spot to put, I mean, you could put a lot of things right there. You could put, maybe put a tennis court or a skate park or something there. And I think we have a dump truck that we were about to auction off. We could just ram it. Auction that off.
So, so if I understood this correctly, moving forward with Brett Hart and the softball field and doing all the things that that needs to do. And then looking at the, the options for the plaza associated with the teen center. And then looking at potential as part of that, potential alternate locations that might make sense for the, for the skate park. And really not designing those, but just allowing spatial pieces. And then looking at the, and coming back to you with, look, here's the, here's what we would worry about in these places and here's what this means in this space. And then looking at a demo cost for the racquetball area and looking at very minimal replacement. And then, um, looking at a demo cost for the racquetball area and looking at very minimal replacements, sort of keeping it open for future development. Uh, whatever that would be, but the cost to remove that structure.
Can you restate that as a motion? Um, I think we have consensus, we want real grass out there, right? We don't want art, okay. So as long as that's clear and we're talking irrigation and grain, drainage and all the good stuff that goes along with it.
But we, again, we aren't touching the, uh, backstops or any of those. And to address that point a little bit, if you were putting in synthetic turf, the way that's built and the cost of that synthetic turf, you'd probably wanna do other things at that same time. When you're talking about natural turf, cert- you'll certainly disturb that if you replace those in the future, but the impact is less. Uh, so you do have the ability to do more, uh, because you're going with the natural turf. Just the two cents you didn't ask for.
Okay, so I'm gonna see if I can come up with a motion here. I'd like to move approval of authorizing staff to move forward with the softball field and Brett field to include lighting repair only, not replacement. To look at the most effective placement of the skate park with implications. And to consider what it would take to completely demo the racquetball courts and do something with that. Did I capture everything you said?
Uh, I think the teen plaza, the options on the teen.
And the options on the teen plaza, coming back with those as well.
Sure.
So that's a motion. Any second? Further discussion, second? Oh, second. Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No for one. Thank you, Councilman Baldino.
Welcome.
All right, thank you very much, good stuff, look forward to seeing more.
Thank you for your time and patience.
Now, on the next item, we're gonna, Councilor Purstuck and I are gonna recuse ourselves, this is downtown specific plan, before we do, we're gonna make a, yeah. Oh, I'm so sorry, yeah, we do. This is to authorize the staff to move forward with the second phase with LPL? LPA, LPL to continue the study and that requires money, it's in the staff report, so I'll, I'll move approval of that as well.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was five oh.
Yep.
Madam clerk? Yeah, well, true. Uh, all right, so as I was saying, Carol and I are gonna recuse ourselves and we're gonna make our comments really quickly because we're gonna leave. I have a wife waiting for me, it's our twentieth anniversary right now, so I know Chris loves the gavel, it's yours. Uh, Councilmember Purstuck comments.
Yes, I just wanna, um, congratulate the Women's Club on becoming a California State His, Office of Historic Preservation. Um, it's one of the only buildings in LA County that is now a historic site, it's obviously the only one in El Segundo. Um, you know, the Women's Club was formed back in the thirties by seventeen, actually the twenties, by seventeen women who, um, had the foresight to buy some property and then commandeer the, uh, old schoolhouse and they brought it to the current location. And, you know, that schoolhouse, the architect that, when they moved it to the location, the architect that, um, re-helped them, put in a new door and kind of fixed it up a little bit, was the same architect that did the plunge as well as the LA, LA City Cowall, as well as the Observatory, Griffith Observatory. So, um, it's kind of cool that we now have an historic building and I think the crazy part is, is she was able to get it done in, after one application, the first time around, so it was very well done. And she's actually offered to help us do our plunge when we're ready to do that. So that's all I had.
Thank you, that was a great event, congratulations to the Women's Club and Jane Burrell and everyone that made that happen. That's our first, I think you said this, first historic building in El Segundo. Happy twentieth, twentieth anniversary, Lee. Uh, and LAX Advisory Council, we're looking for members right now. Uh, Dick Croxel has been involved many, many years, still attends, as does former mayor Carl Jacobson. And we need, uh, looks like we need two people, cause Carl's been doing it a long time and doesn't have the means to get there necessarily, so we need people. We should round up some folks that are interested to help us, some of the people that maybe have applied for different committees, commissions and boards. Maybe Ms. Jennings could help, Mrs. Jennings could help with that, but that's all I had. Uh, Mayor Protem, I'll turn it over to you, have a good evening, we'll be paying attention to how this turns out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, can we take a quick five minute biology or biological break here?
Biological break.
If you would, come back at nine fifty-five?
Yes, our principal planner, Paul Samaras, will give this presentation.
And if I might, just for the record, it's required, um, Mayor, uh, is, has a conflict of interest due to property he owns and a business he operates that is within five hundred feet of the specific plan area. And also because of a business he owns and operates that's located within the specific plan area. And Councilmember Purstuck also, uh, has residential property and a business within five hundred feet of the, um, specific plan area. So that's why they're both conflicted out this evening and not here.
Thank you, City Attorney, and I'd point out to people at home that this is a report where we will receive and file, no decision or action is being taken this evening. This is a study session.
I, I, we talked about this in, uh, uh, executive team and one thing I was gonna point out is because there are only three of you that are, um, that are able to vote on this and it will take three of you to approve the downtown specific plan. Cause it'll be done by resolution and parts of it may be done by ordinance, both of which take three votes. Um, it'll be important as you're having this conversation that if, you know, there's a ti- important topic that you're not in agreement on, you might wanna talk about that a little more depth to see whether there's a point where you might come to an agreement on, cause when it comes back to you, it will take all three votes to approve, uh, the plan.
Everyone gets a veto. When two.
Yes, pretty much.
All right, Mr. Samaras, the floor is yours.
Okay, good evening, uh, Mayor Protem and fellow council members, it's been an exciting evening so far. Uh, good time to go over another exciting item, which is the downtown specific plan updates. Uh, we'll try to keep this presentation as, as brief as possible, uh, but we do have some ground to cover. So first, I will go over kind of a list of topics that we're gonna cover in my presentation. Uh, first, we'll go over the, uh, a little bit of background and, and project status. Uh, then we will cover some of the highlights of the specific plan document, uh, the areas of major changes in that document, touching upon topics such as permitted uses, development standards, parking, public improvements. And then I will close with, uh, the next steps in the process until the adoption of the new specific plan. Jumping into the, uh, background and status, um, this effort to update this downtown specific plan began in late two thousand twenty-one with a lot of, uh, research and technical analysis. We spent most of twenty twenty-two to, to, uh, community outreach. In twenty twenty-three, this year, we began the environmental review process, sequel process, and began drafting a new specific plan. In May, we released the draft, uh, downtown specific plan document for public review and comment. Uh, that is the same document that is attached to your, uh, uh, packet tonight. In June, the Planning Commission held a study session and gave staff some valuable input and direction on fine tuning the draft plan that is available to the public. So tonight, we wanna present the major aspects of this plan to you, confirm that the draft plan and the feedback we received from the commission are in the right direction. And it's also now opportunity to have a public discussion to inform and involve the public in, uh, in this before we finalize the draft specific plan and proceed to public hearings. So diving into the substance of the specific plan now, this is the map of the specific plan area. As you can see at the top of the screen, um, the draft specific plan incorporates additional properties along Grand Avenue at the east end of the existing downtown area. These properties are currently zoned downtown commercial. They are large, uh, properties, they provide opportunities for new or infill development and they're sort of a natural extension of the existing downtown. That's the reason why we incorporated them in the study of this, uh, in this study.
That expansion, that included that vacant lot in the, in the Rite Aid parking lot, is that the?
Yes.
Boundary line, is that vacant lot is inclusive?
That is the boundary line, sir, yes.
And would this supersede, we just looked at that CO2 zone over the possibility of putting in, in the future, if there was a service station, whether it was hydrogen or, 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 uh, electric charging, would this su- this would supersede that CO2 zone?
That, this would supersede the existing zoning on those properties.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so the new plan has a new zoning map with, uh, four districts as opposed to the existing six in the current plan. Each of those districts having its own, uh, use and development regulations. Now, the permitted uses among the districts don't differ a lot, although there are some differences. Uh, the Grand Avenue district on the top right of the screen is more geared towards residential and office development, whereas Main Street is geared more towards retail and restaurant uses. We'll go over that in a little bit more detail here. Um, in the Main Street district, uh, one of the provisions that's different from the existing plan is that, uh, all office uses will be allowed behind the street front of the property and above. Uh, reserving the, that street frontage for, uh, retail and restaurant uses and other permitted uses. The same would apply to medical offices on Richmond Street, there'll be that limitation on the location on the property. Again, this is for the purpose of promoting more ground floor, street front retail on those streets. At its, uh, June study session, the Planning Commission did have some concerns and asked staff to develop an exception process to that rule so that in under.
to have that level of height and to certain, achieve a certain level of density to make a project that's allowed correctly?
That is correct. We did have consultants that are, are experts in sort of market demand analysis that helped advise us into kind of pursuing these policies.
Also, the Rite Aid lot is such a large lot that that could theoretically be developed in some mixed use high-rise, whereas everything else in downtown is like these little shotgun, you know? So if you're going to have that high density, high, that is the only place in downtown where it would make sense from a property ownership perspective.
And I was going to point out, if I may, that the housing element that was adopted last year, as one of its goals, sort of aims to rezone the downtown to allow for additional housing, and this seemed like the biggest sort of opportunity area in the downtown, and that's why the standards are, are different than the rest of the downtown area.
Conceivably, is, even though the building, the old on the almost pizza, the bakery right by the, that's a pretty wide lot, right? I mean, that is, I guess my concern is, and the concern, I think historically, when they revisited downtown, is creating that sort of canyon-ing effect that you have from sixty feet on each side of the road, when you're perpetual shade of shadow.
Okay. Okay. Would you like me to proceed to?
Well, I mean, I think that's, that's probably something worth mulling over. I don't know, maybe, maybe this is my own personal biases, but if you end up with sixty feet on each side of the road, and maybe those narrow buildings won't support it, but.
No, when we, when we did the, the last modifications on the downtown subcommittee, we, we, we talked about that having, you know, this straight up on Main Street, and so the old rule was you kind of had to stagger back, and I think that's how it is on Main Street. So maybe the concern is the Grand Avenue that goes along Main Street, right? The Rite Aid parking lot, okay, there's a big development, housing development there, whatever, but you're right, if we do a corner of, not like the gas stations.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, when I'm looking at this, I, I'm definitely looking at like the, the greater Franklin and Main intersection area, but maybe there's lots of narrow enough that it's a, not a concern.
Yeah, I would, I would think the only real properties that could take advantage would be kind of where the Blossom Roscommon is, that little strip mall, and then the Rite Aid, because those are two separately owned strip malls, whereas when you get on Main Street, it's individual, you'd have to buy them all, tie them together, it's probably not going to happen. But good point about maybe we want to throttle down the height on Main Street to avoid all of a sudden crossing Grand and having a giant high-rise there.
Okay. So do you think that the, the step back that is required in, in, on the, on Main Street and other districts would be an appropriate way to?
I, I think the only concern is continuing Main Street to just not go up sixty feet, and even the Grand area, and then the, the sixty feet would be Grand and Standard, right? So those properties, what am I looking at here? East and west of Grand and Standard, which are basically two little strip malls that are owned probably by one person, those, because they're off of Main, sixty feet might look nice. But on that corner of Main and Grand, if the gas station goes away, we don't want to have a skyscraper, you know, little Main Street and then skyscraper and then little Main Street. So maybe just the height limitation on Main Street is a little less extreme than what we're going to allow on Grand and Standard. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, I think that's a good concern, Chris.
Okay. Great, thank you for that feedback on that issue. If you'd like me to proceed to?
Yeah.
Terrific. So moving on from those kind of highlights on development standards, in addition to those changes, the new specific plan has detailed design regulations for outdoor dining areas. This is to ensure that future outdoor dining areas will incorporate good quality design and enhance the experience of visitors to the downtown and kind of learning from our experience, especially during COVID, where we kind of rapidly increased our outdoor, outdoor dining areas, and perhaps we would have wished that the design was of even better quality. So for that reason, we incorporated several new standards and guidelines for outdoor dining. That covers the discussion on standards primarily, and the next topic is parking. The draft specific plan has a strategy for parking covering both private and public property parking. On private property, a couple of the key themes are, there'll be sort of reductions in parking requirements for several uses compared to the current plan. Those apply primarily to the smaller developments, whereas larger developments over ten thousand square feet in building area would have higher sort of parking standards. So those new developments along the Grand Avenue area would provide parking substantially onsite.
Is the concept for that subterranean parking, is the, the theory of that?
And the, the plan actually does say that we need to kind of focus our efforts on providing subterranean parking on those larger developments. Yes.
So can I ask, is, is the, the parking in lieu policy that we have in place now, is this being discussed within this? Because I, I don't see it on here, or is this all in here?
The parking in lieu policy has, there hasn't been a proposal to change the policy in this specific plan. It is still an option for property owners, so for someone who wants to make additions or build a new building.
No, I, I think the problem is, is it a barrier right now to development? Where is that parking, where is that money going? Like, where is it?
Yeah.
It's been going on, this, this has been a policy for years, I'm, I'm assuming, so.
Oh, yeah. I think the last time we spent it was to put that angled parking on Richmond. I think that came from parking in lieu.
Yes.
But I know when we spoke to Daryl, there's going to be an accounting of, we don't even know what, what we've gotten that fund, do we?
Yes. Yeah, we actually have collected since two thousand four, when the, that came into place, we've collected approximately five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we've spent approximately three hundred and ten thousand on the Richmond Street project, leaving approximately two hundred and ten thousand in the fund for use on other sort of parking related projects.
Right, so I, I think my, my question on all this is that, basing on what things are like today, is this policy that we have in place a barrier to development? Having to pay, if you're, if you're a business owner trying to build a new restaurant, trying to do rooftop or whatever, to really improve what's going on down there, and then all of a sudden at the end, you got to throw in, I don't know, I don't know how much it is per, per parking space, but is it a hundred and twenty thousand dollars? I mean, that's a significant barrier when your margins are pretty thin as it is when you're opening up a new business, some things. Is, is there some, is that an outdated policy? Because it seems to me that to have that policy in place to re, and it makes people think twice about developing for the, for a grand total of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars over twenty years? All right, you said two thousand four it was in place, right? So in nineteen years, we're collecting five hundred and twenty thousand?
Uh huh, yes.
It just doesn't seem like to be an awful lot of, of juice out of the squeeze for us, and it's a significant amount of money for a business owner.
Yeah, if I may, I think that the barrier is more accurately the parking requirements. In other words, if somebody wants to expand their business or build a new building, and the code requires a certain amount of parking for that, that would be kind of a barrier, and we can adjust the parking requirements. And in this specific plan, we are reducing the parking requirements substantially compared to the current requirements. The perspective on parking in Lufy is that it's an option for property owners who can't meet those parking requirements to pay a fee and not have to provide extra parking on their property. So rather than a barrier, I think our perspective is that parking Lufy is actually provide them an additional option, and if they can't provide parking on site, they can pay a fee for that.
And my question is, would, would the business owner agree with your assertion? I'm guessing probably not. I'm, I'm just, I, I get why we're doing it, I completely understand the concept, I just think we have to, to look at what we're trying to accomplish downtown here, and if eighty thousand dollars into the, the city's coffers is keeping a business owner from expanding to a, a bigger, nicer place that attracts more people downtown, I just think, I don't want it to be a barrier. You know, is there a way, another way to look at this, is another way to study it? Because I just, business is tough right now, and, and, and we, we want, as we develop this downtown, for it to be as vibrant as possible, and I don't want a, a small thing like this to get in the way. If, if I can ask, because on that, I think that this, this plan anticipates people going up, right, a little greater density per, per spot, so we're going to see more square footage. One thing in the parking table ratio, it shows us what it is now, but I think most of us, well, except you are planning, I don't know what it was before, right? It doesn't resonate with me. So if I look at commercial retail now is one and a half spaces per thousand square feet, do you have a sense of what it was before?
Uh, yes, I actually have some extra slides at the end of the presentation.
Oh, sorry.
I can give you a comparison. It wasn't on my main presentation, but I can show you now.
Yeah, because that's one of the things that if we look to, what's, is it a deterrent effect or a chilling effect on people being able to develop a second floor?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm going to skip through several of the slides in the presentation.
As long as you come back.
And get to that one, okay? Yeah, so just give me a second to get there.
And Paul, it might help if you explain how the reduction of the required parking, plus in your email you talked about, you know, you could do a parking demand study, there's other alternative ways for businesses to avoid paying that parking in lieu. I, I think that's part of this, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, let's talk about that, so we have an understanding of how we can, like we like to say, get to yes, and, you know, be that business friendly city, that's got to work downtown, too.
I added a few extra slides at the very end of the presentation in case some of these topics come up, so give me a second to, to get there. All right, so here's a, a table that shows a few of the permitted uses in the downtown, and a comparison of the parking rates between the current downtown plan and the proposed. So for, for retail uses, I forgive me, the current requirement is on the far right, okay? So for retail uses, today we require one space for every three hundred square feet of building area, whereas the, in the proposed plan, that is, that rate is basically more than halved. For offices, today it's one per three hundred, in the proposed plan, it is one per five hundred. For restaurants, one per three hundred versus in the new plan, approximately half the requirement. So if in a few months, you know, if somebody wanted to add, you know, a thousand square feet to their restaurant, for example, you know, today, they would have to provide about three extra parking spaces. But in a few months, if the city council adopts the plan as proposed, they would only have to provide maybe one extra parking space as opposed to three. So that's, that's why the parking requirements are kind of a bigger, a big, bigger sort of factor when it comes to incentivized development, and that was precisely the reason for proposing reductions in the parking requirements. In addition to that, if you look at outdoor dining below, there's an exception in the current code. The first two hundred square feet of outdoor dining areas on the right-hand side do not have to provide any parking. In this proposed specific plan, that, that exception would increase to five hundred square feet. So again, it would have to take, you know, they would, they would have to build a substantially larger outdoor dining area for, for them to even have to provide parking. So we have added some sort of incentives here to make it easier for business owners and property owners to, to expand, reuse, you know, add to their businesses and buildings. Now, if they can't meet even these new requirements for an expansion project or a new building, as Councilmember Baldino pointed out, they can submit a parking demand study to the city for review and kind of describe how their business operates and why it might be justified to have an even reduced, further reduced rate, parking rate, they can do that. They can provide parking offsite, sort of lease spaces on an adjacent lot that has extra parking. And then the parking in Lufy is sort of that last resort, if I can call it that. If there, if all else fails, they can pay a fee instead of having to find a parking spot. But we believe that with the reduction in parking spaces, we've given property owners a substantial incentive to expand their businesses, invest in their properties, and we're hoping that it solves some of those problems, yeah.
So when you say expand, does that mean I'm building new square footage, or does that mean I want to take what used to be an office and put a restaurant, and now I, because the use has changed, the parking has changed?
Good, thank you for asking that question. The, the existing specific plan has a, a provision in it that if you convert a building from one permitted use to another, even if that other you permitted use requires more parking, you don't have to provide additional parking for a conversion from one permitted use to another, and we are carrying that provision into the new specific plan. So in that particular case, if you go from an office to a restaurant, you will not have to provide additional parking if you maintain the same space.
So if I take that bank at the corner of Main and Grand and turn it into a restaurant, as long as I don't make it a bigger space, I don't have to pay any parking in lieu, it's, it's all within the plan?
That's correct. So the new parking requirements will really affect new square footage.
So adding a rooftop or a second story or?
Exactly.
And did, was there any public comment on that before in the, in, when you released the draft? Did you have any feedback on that? I mean, years ago, we would have had EDAC weigh in on this once, once upon a time, but.
Uh, we did not have feedback, sort of that was negative regarding the parking ratios. It is a long document, you know, people may have not gone through all those details and compared the two documents, but we did not have negative feedback on the parking ratios, and the planning commission did not have a, a comment on that.
And are these numbers, because you can tell obviously that I'm out of my element, are these numbers reasonably?
So we have added some sort of incentives here to make it easier for business owners and property owners. To, to expand, reuse, you know, add to their businesses and buildings. Now, if they can't meet even these new requirements for an expansion project or a new building. As Councilmember Baldino pointed out, they can submit a parking demand study to the city for review. And kind of describe how their business operates and why it might be justified to have an even reduced, further reduced rate, parking rate, they can do that. They can provide parking offsite, sort of lease spaces on a, an adjacent lot that has extra parking. And then, the parking in Lufy is sort of that last resort, if I can call it that. If there, if all else fails, they can pay a fee instead of having to find a parking spot. But, we believe that with the reduction in parking spaces, we've given property owners a substantial incentive. To expand their businesses, invest in their properties. And we're hoping that it solves some of those problems, yeah.
So, when you say expand, does that mean I'm building new square footage? Or does that mean I wanna take what used to be an office and put a restaurant? And now I, because the use has changed, the parking has changed?
Good, thank you for ans- asking that question. The, the existing specific plan has a, a provision in it. That if you convert a building from one permitted use to another. Even if that other you permitted use requires more parking, you don't have to provide additional parking for a conversion. From one permitted use to another, and we are carrying that provision into the new specific plan. So, in that particular case, if you go from an office to a restaurant, you will not have to provide additional parking if you maintain the same space.
So if I take that bank at the corner of Main and Grand and turn it into a restaurant. As long as I don't make it a bigger space, I don't have to pay any parking and lieu, it's, it's all within the plan.
That's correct. So the new parking requirements will really affect new square footage.
So adding a rooftop or a second story or?
Exactly.
And did, did, was there any public comment on that before in the, in, when you released the draft? Did you have any feedback on that? I mean, years ago, we would have had EDAC weigh in on this once, once upon a time, but.
Uh, we did not have feedback. So that was negative regarding the parking ratios. It is a long document, you know, people may have not gone through all those details and compared the two documents. But we did not have negative feedback on the parking ratios, and the planning commission did not have a, a comment on that.
And are these numbers, because you can tell obviously that I'm out of my element, are these numbers reasonably, uh, industry standard numbers? Or are we seeing other cities that, that, that have gone to these sorts of ratios?
When it comes to downtowns, a lot of cities try to incentivize development by reducing their, their parking rates. Below what you might call industry standard. So, these are, if I could, if, I don't know what the right term is, but perhaps generous. Requirements in that, in that they allow people to build more and provide less parking. But that, that's the intent though, the intent is to incentivize people to make improvements to their properties. Bring in new businesses, new development. And, so that's the reason why we've adjusted the rates in that direction.
One, one thing that might help is that, and, and I, I hate when we always say this, but it, it's true in this case. We're really competing, especially for restaurants and things like that, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Redonda Beach, okay? What do their requirements look like? Are they similar to what this is? Are they more, are they less? Are we able to get that data? Cause I think that's, that's relevant. Because if I have business owners here saying, you're being ridiculous, you're, you're so much higher than everybody else, then I find out, well, maybe we're not. But I don't have that data to make that decision, so is it possible to kind of include a little bit of a study of what, what the surrounding? Cause we're literally competing against the other cities for these businesses to come in, and that's all, I just wanna make sure we have our ducks in a row.
If you, if you would like to direct us to kind of look at the others, the standards in the neighboring cities.
You guys okay with that?
And perhaps fine tune this document to ensure that those rates are competitive, we can, we can do that in the final draft.
Idea, yeah, just give us a sounding too, like, hey, you know, we are.
We're not crazy.
Yeah, we're hyper aggressive or?
This can work.
Yeah, yes, we can definitely look at that, and if we are way off from neighboring jurisdictions. We can definitely note that when we come back to you, or when we go to the planning commission first.
But I feel like we have consensus to err on the side of less parking if possible. To encourage investment and expansion of business, be bold.
Okay, terrific, yeah, thank you for that. Uh, if you don't mind, I'm gonna kind of go back several slides, okay?
No, thank you for having that bonus slide, that helped out.
The double secret slides.
We were just starting to talk about parking strategy, so I'll go back to that.
Right by the bird scooter slide, you have that on there.
Okay, so I think we were on this slide, and we were going over some of the strategies for parking on private property. So we talked a little bit about parking rate reductions. Another approach will be to encourage and even potentially require some instances, shared parking among private property owners. In the public realm, on public property, there's sort of a three-pronged approach to manage our existing parking supply more efficiently. Promote our parking a little bit more. Invest and promote multimodal mobility. And potentially look at new public parking structures as a long-term sort of possibility. We'll go over a little bit more detail on each of these approaches in the next few slides. As part of our, our study, we looked at parking. We looked at the existing. Demand and supply of, of public parking in the downtown. So, our study showed that today there is enough parking in the downtown on, on-street and off-street. On public lots to accommodate all the existing uses in the downtown area. And even to accommodate some, some development that adds to that demand. So, in the near term, our existing parking can accommodate the uses of the downtown and even additional demand. As a short-term sort of solution, we can improve our parking management in the downtown. So we can look at, as I mentioned earlier, shared parking program for businesses. We can develop informational programs for drivers, we can. Put in new wayfinding signage or online parking maps showing where parking is available. We can add a dynamic sign at the existing parking structure showing people how many spaces are available. That way people know where there's parking available so they can park. So if we make a more efficient use of our existing resources, we'll be able to accommodate existing uses. And additional demand in the next few years. Multimodal mobility investment and promotion will help go further. So, in addition to our existing parking supply and better management. We can make investments in pedestrian improvements such as widening sidewalks. Investments in, in crosswalks and other sort of facilities. Make bicycle improvements such as adding new wayfinding signage. Investing in sort of space on the road for bicycles. Making public transit improvements such as, you know, relaunching the lunchtime shuttle, expanding the hours of service. Making improvements to amenities such as bus stops and so forth. And other street improvements, and we'll go into some of the street improvements in a little bit, in the next few slides here. I mentioned public parking structures earlier as sort of a long-term potential solution. The truth is, we don't know if we'll need park, parking structures in ten or twenty years. Cause, you know, we know how much, we don't know how much we'll be relying on cars versus other modes of transportation in the future. So that's always a possibility, but it's not a commitment right now that we will definitely build new parking structures or that they will be needed. It's just something that we have, that we need to consider for the future. There's two locations that were identified in the specific plan, one at Richmond and Franklin. And the other one here at the Civic Center near the corner of Grand and Standard. So moving on to some of the. Forgive me, I'm gonna gather my notes here, moving on to some of the street improvements. And starting from, from Richmond Street. Now, all these street configurations, reconfigurations will help to address sort of parking need. But also a lot of other goals in the, in the downtown specific plan. So, in the case of Richmond Street, the, the number one or the. The first recommended alternative for Richmond Street. It calls for widening the existing sidewalks. And sort of at the expense of the on-street parking. So the idea is that you take that eight-foot parking lane and you convert it into sidewalk space. That will increase outdoor dining opportunities. And in addition to that, the planning commission suggested that. We incorporate some language in the plan to allow for occasional or periodic closures of Richmond Street. Right there between Grand and Franklin. You know, for occasional events, kind of like what we do for the farmer's market on Main Street. With the goal to potentially in the long term. Consider a permanent closure of Richmond, that's not feasible in the near term, cause there's a lot of issues that would need to be worked out. But this can be the first step in that process of potentially. Closing that section of Richmond Street.
I, I have a little comment on this one, because in the end, when all is said and done. There was only one restaurant that was using outdoor dining on Richmond Street when it was, when it was at the, at the end of it. And have we looked at the restaurants that are there now? And are they going to use it if we invest in this? Because if, look, you got, you know, you got, you got a couple new restaurants there, you have existing restaurants there. Is there a plan to even use the sidewalk? Because if it's, the plan is not there, and there's, for example, in some of those places in Richmond, they have back patios, they got all kinds of stuff. So, it's not the same dynamic as it was years ago during the pandemic, so. Widening, I assume this is gonna be a, a, a pretty large cost for us to do this.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, is there a need to do it? Is there, is there, is there a desire to do it by, by all of the businesses that are there?
Yeah, if, if I may, just touch upon that, we did not interview each and every business owner on this street. But we definitely heard from some who want to have more outdoor dining opportunities. And in, in addition to that, this is more anecdotal, anecdotal. You know, when we, the city decided to remove the outdoor dining from Richmond, you know, lift that closure. We received tons of correspondence from, from residents and visitors to our downtown. I thought that it was such a great thing to, to close off the street, have extra space along that street. So that they can enjoy, you know, outdoor dining and have their kiddos have enough space to run around and play on the wider sidewalks. You know, that was safer, so we do have sort of, let's call it evidence or feedback from the community on that particular topic.
I understand, but it was also one restaurant.
Yeah, and.
That's all I'm saying, is that you have other businesses on that street, so we, we can't, we unfortunately cannot make a decision based on, on, on one place of business. So if you have, and, and, cause I'm, I'm, if you had, I know we, at one point, we had asked, hey, if you all wanna come up with a, a plan here. And that all fizzled out, nobody wanted to invest the money in it. So I'm just saying, before we go too far on this, it, it has to be more than one, just one business that wants it.
Okay, Paul, isn't the point of this is just to leave the option open so that it potentially can be done? It's not planned for any particular timeframe?
But if we're gonna narrow it down, are we gonna narrow, are we just gonna keep it this big? I think there's a, a few things that would exist in here that would be in the toolkit. Is the wisdom of this, Paul, part of the wisdom of this is that it preserves the easement for utilities down the middle in those travel lanes. So it kind of obviates one of the issues we had before with, with a potential street closure.
Um, yes, that is part of the reason that currently that street is an easement. That it needs to be used for vehicular traffic. So, today, closing it completely is not feasible. So that's why this is sort of, this is an alternative that takes us in that direction. While still maintaining the primary purpose of that easement.
How do plans like this that restrict the, the parking? How do those address, I guess I'll talk out of the other side of my mouth, how does this address the parking demands on other businesses? Because I think one of the things we saw during the closure was people who wanted to go to those restaurants were parking in front of, you know, the insurance guy. And he's like, none of, nobody can come into my store, cause there's no parking, cause people were sitting there, you know, for hours at a time eating. How, how did, how do we mitigate that?
Well, one of the ways to mitigate that is something I mentioned earlier, which is to better manage our existing parking supply. Including the parking structure right across the street. So, as you well know, not everybody knows that that's a public parking structure. So, that is part of the plan, to make a concerted effort. To promote existing parking sort of throughout the downtown, which is very near to that same, same location, so I hope that helps.
So was this the recommendation from the planning commission to do no parking and widen the sidewalk? So we have like a promenade or half a promenade on either side?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you like me to go ahead?
Oh, please, yes.
This is the other alternative for Richmond Street, which we just discussed, which is the long-term full, full closure. Which is still sort of an option in the new plan.
And do these complete closures anticipate some sort of, like a bid or one of the, like a, a special district that would?
Yes.
What defray costs on the one hand, but also get rid of our issues with who owns the easement and all those pieces?
Yes, so the, for the entire specific plan, there are some sort of implementation actions at the very end of the plan. And some of the funding sources include property owner or business improvement districts, along with other sources as well.
So if we were to get to the point of closing the street, they would have some type of lease or something to where we still own that right? So if we needed to open it up, we could. But they would also have that five, ten-year certainty of, I'm gonna put some money into this because I, I've got a lease right, at least.
Yes.
Okay.
Well. The underlying fee is owned by the property owners.
Oh, we've got the easement on them.
We have the easement on them.
We can lease our, their land back to them.
Or a license or something, that's why I think this is conceptual. As we went through this over the last year and a half, and not so much recently, there are a lot of, a lot of issues that would need to be worked out to make this work. And on top of which, ABC's li- alcohol restrictions are gonna go back to what they were pre-COVID. In, I think, February or March of next year. And so that's gonna restrict where alcohol can be served again, so there's a lot of moving parts. I think, I understand this was to keep this alive, but it will take a lot of work in the future to make some, some part of this work.
So even if we were like, close it down tomorrow, you would be like, not gonna happen?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, this is definitely sort of an aspiration in this document, something for, for the long, the long run.
Don't worry, ABC will have to get through nine stop signs to get there, so we'll have plenty of warning as they crawl toward us at eleven miles an hour.
Well, moving on from Richmond Street, on Main Street. The first design alternative in the draft plan contemplated a reduction of vehicle lanes to one lane in each direction. With a left-turn pocket at intersections to provide for easier circulation. It contemplated angled parking on one side of the street and widening the sidewalk from twelve to twenty feet. Bike circulation would be accommodated through shared, shared lane for both vehicles and bicycles. The planning commission recommended changing this alternative substantially. To maintain parallel parking on both sides of the street. Provide more space for bicycles on the road. And to widen the sidewalks to the extent possible. So this could mean something very similar to the second alternative in the plan. Which, as you'll see here, it maintains the parking lanes on both sides of the street. It provides a dedicated bike lane, a buffered lane actually. However, in the, in the second alternative, the sidewalk width remains the same. So the planning commission direction was, do something like this second alternative, but try to find some additional space for the sidewalk. So potentially we could come up with a design where that bike lane, instead of the nine feet that it is today with that healthy buffer. If I can call it that, could be reduced so that we can also widen the sidewalk. And provide space for bicycles on the road. So, we can, based on the commission's direction on this design, we can come up with a design that helps to address sort of all those concerns. Widening the sidewalk, providing space for cyclists on the road.
And is this from Mariposa all the way down to El Segundo Boulevard? Where this would be, or is it just a subsection of Main where we're talking about?
Yeah, this is, I believe, all the way to Grand Avenue, I'd have to look that up, I apologize. From Mariposa all the way to Grand, I can't remember if it takes both of those blocks all the way to El Segundo. But I, I can look that up, I apologize, I don't remember right now.
If, if we adopted this as part of the plan, would it remain just as a tool that a future city council could choose to implement? Or would it be part of a plan that is necessarily going to be implemented?
We, we, we would look at our options at a certain point in the future, look at these alternative designs. And come to the city council with those specific designs. And ask for the city council to, to weigh on that, on those options. I hope that answers your question.
No, it does, I think my, my, you know, we would probably have to see some, some real changes in automotive behavior to, in my view. Going to two lanes. I think it's important to separate bikes out of the two lanes, if you go to two lanes, cause otherwise people will go crazy when someone's on a bike in front of them.
Yes.
Probably because they're stopped at somebody's stop signs. But I think the, that, yeah, we would, it's okay to have this as a tool, but not some, something probably. Cause this was tried, right, were you here when they tried this before, twenty years ago?
That was in two thousand four, before my time here.
Okay, yeah, and that, 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 you know, wasn't a runaway success.
Also, we don't have the money or the funding to start moving sidewalks and all this, so it's, it's really a plan. You know, so wouldn't it be nice?
When it's roads, there's always.
When they come to us, then it's like, how do we pay for this two-block, five million dollar sidewalk project?
So it kind of, kind of lines up with our plunge idea and our rec park idea then?
Gotcha.
Continue, we'll talk measure M and measure R later.
Yeah, well, uh, uh, mere pretend, this is also sort of an example of traffic, a traffic calming sort of investment. Narrowing the streets, widening the sidewalk. narrowing the streets, widening the sidewalks, making it safer for pedestrians as well. Um, so uh, mov- moving on, uh, on Grand Avenue, there's some, there were some, there are some similar recommendations in the plan. I didn't have that slide here in the main presentation, but um, the concept was the same that you provide uh, angled parking on, on both sides of uh, Grand Avenue, but forego the median parking in order to accomplish that.
Can we only do that west of Maine? Because that's still a truck route east of Maine, right?
Yeah, that's something that the plan is also looking into, whether uh, we can uh, redesignate at some point that portion uh, of Maine to uh, in order to, to, to accomplish that, yeah.
With that, I mean, d- does it make a difference which side of Main Street on Grand it is? Cause it's, it's truck route east, I don't know if it's a truck route going to the beach.
Right, uh, in the, in the plan, the proposal is for both sides on the west side of Maine and on the east side of Maine. So like the two or three blocks of Grand Avenue, yeah. Those were some of the recommendations with regard to street reconfigurations. Um, and that takes us to the next topic of the Civic Center District and sort of what the plan um, includes for the Civic Center. Uh, no major redevelopment is contemplated at the Civic Center, although there are development standards that would permit theoretically expansion or additions to existing facilities. Um, for the Civic Center, the plan focuses on the open space areas along Main Street and particularly the Civic Center Plaza. And there, the plan has some detailed sort of design recommendations and guidelines to help convert that uh, that plaza into a multi-use outdoor space, um, providing passive and active sort of recreation, event space, shaded areas. And then the next couple of slides have some images and examples of things that could occur at the, at the Civic Center Plaza. As I mentioned, providing uh, gathering spaces for uh, concerts and different events. Um, providing um, uh, planting that of uh, sort of uh, native plants and uh, potentially plants that provide habitat for the blue butterfly. Adding uh, signage that's sort of educational regarding those native plants and the blue butterfly. Providing perhaps an outdoor stage or amphitheater for music events. Um, children's play area, whether that's a sort of a green space or a, a, a water sort of feature and so on. That covers our presentation so far on sort of the highlights, on some of the major parts of the specific plan regulations. The next slide just goes over the basic uh, next steps from today. Um, and those are, after getting your direction, uh, we will go ahead and sort of finalize a draft specific plan. Prepare a, and release a draft EIR for the project, which we've been working on uh, for several months. Uh, we anticipate that would occur around the November timeframe. And then finalize the EIR after that uh, public review period and uh, work on scheduling public hearings in early uh, 2024. That concludes our presentation. Be happy to take other questions and have a discussion.
What's the current height allowance in that, what would be the Main Street corridor? Is it 25 feet or?
The, the current uh, allowance is uh, 30 feet.
30 feet?
However, um, past the front 25 feet, so if you go back into the property, you can go up to uh, 45 feet.
And this would allow for 45 all the way to the front of the building?
Uh, that setback, uh, past the first uh, 30 feet, that setback would be 10 feet. So the building at the front property line could go up to 30 feet and then have to step back 10 feet and go up to 45.
Okay, and, and now it's that same thing, it's just back 25 feet?
Today it's back 25 feet exactly.
I'm dealing with a question, it's downtown. I already got all mine out, I'm good. Great report, by the way. Yeah, thanks, Paul. Um, and I appreciate the email summarizing some of the, the big points, so. Don't really have any problems with the changing the FAR with the housing. I, I can visualize how that would work on top of some of those existing buildings, whether or not that pans out to a different area. Uh, I want to thank you for, I believe it was you that brought in that group of student designers that came up with creative ideas of what to do with the Civic Center based on blue butterflies and airplanes. Um, nice to see, but again, something we don't have the money to do, but keep those in your back pocket in case we get a grant or something. That would be great to really kind of revitalize this area and, and bring more activity and life to it. I, I do like Chris's idea of trying to maintain somewhat of a smaller footprint on height throughout Main Street, even in the Grand area. I get the logic of allowing the Rite Aid or this, I don't know what they call that shopping center, the Blossom Ramen Plaza. That green, my, there you go, Chase Bank, the Chase Bank Green Monster. I can see how those areas get redeveloped with some, some, something nice and high. And then for outdoor dining, are you confident, basically, are you confident that kind of the folks who are using outdoor dining are gonna be able to continue to do outdoor dining under this plan, or will there be a change in that?
The folks, meaning the businesses that have outdoor dining?
The current businesses that are using outdoor patio space. I understand that this, we're saying, we're gonna take away some parking for that, we're gonna let you use like parklets and things for extra space. Because the reality is, we don't have any money to widen sidewalks or go from two lanes to one lane anytime in the foreseeable future. But if we can allow private enterprises to invest, knowing that they're going to have the right to use that space, that's where you're gonna see things actually happen.
Yeah, if I can um, just uh, make a couple of points regarding that. One is that uh, adjust those uh, reductions in parking requirements and raising that exemption for outdoor dining areas will probably incentivize uh, property owners, businesses to expand their outdoor dining on the existing sidewalk space. And if they hesitated to do that in the past, this will kind of incentivize them to do that. Uh, and beyond that, and this is more of a medium-term uh, sort of provision in the plan, permitting uh, parklets. Sort of, uh, and we uh, we, we will put in some time to develop a sort of a outdoor dining slash parklet program in the downtown. And we could not do it as part of this effort at this time, but that is one of our goals in the plan to, as a sort of an implementation step, to further expand outdoor dining opportunities in the absence of the city, expanding sidewalks and doing all that uh, work.
Some of, some of the challenges we're gonna face, like the ABC rules are gonna change. And that's gonna be significant because these property owners, to the extent they're selling alcohol, they did, they were, um, they could just get the right to sell it out there. That's, they're gonna have to approach ABC. Generally, there are restrictions ABC has about getting those licenses. They don't own the property, that could be an issue. It has to be immediately adjacent to, fully, I mean, there's, there's a lot of restrictions that if ABC puts those back all in place, um, that will make it more difficult. Uh, again, our ownership in the land, our ownership rights are, are gonna make it complicated. We went through quite a analysis of this with uh, um, Elias and his staff and Barbara and her staff and, and, and uh, uh, planning. So there are some challenges to it. I mean, we think we find, find some ways to keep some of it going. But part of that would be, might be depending on how, whether Sacramento does things to make this easier for us too.
So again, before we spend money widening sidewalks, thinking people are gonna be dining outside, you're basically saying, hey, if they're not selling alcohol, they're probably not gonna be sitting people outside anyway. So maybe the best way is, let's allow them to maintain what they're doing now, and then if ABC changes, then we'll deal with it then and.
Well, they said that once, it was, it was worded such that a year after the governor, um, there was an outside date or a year after the governor's order expired on the pandemic, and they would roll the back the rules on the ABC um, as far as the, you know, all the restrictions that got lessened. So we're just gonna have to look at all that and how it applies to these different properties and what accommodations can be made. I mean, there are fewer of them there, you know, there aren't, I don't know if there's that many out there left, I know there's a few.
Well, I, I think the reason we, we have these orange barriers is because there's really no certainty on what we're gonna allow and not allow. So even if we say, hey, you can do outdoor dining, that will encourage someone to invest and make it look nice if they think, okay, this is a long-term use, then I'm gonna get a return on my investment on. We've kind of been kind of working under emergency ordinances for a long time. Um, so I appreciate the effort to get something done on that front, and I think this is a good step towards that, so thank you.
Personally, again, I know beating up the Grand Avenue District a bit, but with the expanded ability to do residential south of Franklin, are any of those units deed restricted? Because I know we historically have had some issues around the refinery for safety that we were using. I know in Smoky Hollow West, it was only conditional use permits for, for, for uh, keepers and things like that, for like one, one bed. Do we have any of those? Do you know if those are deed restricted or?
Uh, I do not know, um, Mayor Portem, um, we did not look at each individual property to see whether they.
No, I just didn't know if there was a broad swath that, you know, we could have people who think that they are going to be investing in a mixed-use development and then a- as it would turn out that they, that that might be obviated.
Well, I, before someone gets to that point, I'm pretty certain they'd run a title report and see what restrictions, unless they, even if they have a lot of money, you know, smart investors are gonna look and see what restrictions are on their property, so.
Well, I think what I was driving with a bit on that is to find out if those are, some of those deed restrictions are for legacy uses on the property that may not, it may not be relevant. You know, there, there are certainly areas that have been restricted based on previous configurations of the refinery that we might be able to, to ask them, see if, if we can have that released.
Right, um, no, that's a good point. I, you know, there are a lot of those refinery-based restrictions sprinkled all over town. See what pops up. I don't know, those were, in your concern about particularly the residential areas, so, yeah, I get it. We may want to see if someone has a, all of those in one place, but I'm, I'm not, they might.
I will defer. Anything else, uh, any other questions for Paul?
Paul, do you need anything else from us as far as coming back with next steps?
No, that was very helpful. I, we wanted to hear uh, what you thought about the plan as it was drafted and also about the planning commission's comments. And so you gave us kind of a good uh, direction here, so we know where to go from here. So we need to make some more fine-tuning, some changes to the plan itself, based on what we heard from the commission and from you tonight. And then, so the next time you see this, this plan, it will be a little bit different to reflect your direction.
Great, and you'll have those comparison numbers on parking. Perfect.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, just sort of that, you know, see where we are in that range, and then I guess we will, any further questions, we will individually send through the city manager. So with that, do we have consensus to receive and file this?
Yes.
Baldino seconds?
Oh.
Consent I when you second it. Uh, I think we have consensus. Okay. Uh, and with that, uh, that's all. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Committees and commissions and boards, city clerk.
Okay, thanks.
City treasurer, newest key, council member comments, Councilwoman Baldino.
All right, first I want to start by thanking Ron Swanson. He provided that in-and-out truck on the 13th for appreciation of city staff, and I know staff really does appreciate that. He's been doing that on a yearly basis. Carol, I had a meeting with the El Segundo Economic Development Corporation uh, to talk about their ideas on housing. We kind of explained the reality of what we're dealing with, with housing. Uh, thank you to Ally and Parks and Rec and the police for putting together that Little League parade and ceremony. On the 15th, I had a meeting uh, with Daryl George, with Jamin Griffith, the president of Little League, and with Sean Gerges and Susan Bray-Magel, Magel, from Raytheon. And the request from the president of Little League was to ask Raytheon if we could allow two teams practice at that field at the same time because of daylight savings and getting on there at 5 o'clock, we're only getting one team practicing. Uh, Little League's been swarmed with new kids who want to play Little League, go figure. Uh, and then we also asked, you know, if we could start at four, to get more kids out there, to get more practice time. The response was, send us an email, we'll look at it, we'll get back to you. I asked also what the timeline was for phase four, which would trigger the obligation to truly give us the seven and a half acres, and I got a very non-committal response. So we are stuck with the memorandum of understanding, but hopefully, I know our city manager will follow up with the good folks at Raytheon to see if we can't help our Little League program get the access they need over there. Um, and then just a really amazing tour from Joseph Roth at the Kite Pharma Facility that I went on with the mayor and the mayor pro temp. Their new expanded facility, the way they run it, their, their lifesaving mission is really inspiring. And uh, we're very thankful to have that company in our community, and they actually donate a lot, and they're, been a great corporate citizen. So um, that's it for me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Giroux?
Yeah, just uh, one thing, I think I've spoken enough tonight. Um, the Aquatics Subcommittee met yesterday, uh, really good group, by the way, everybody's very invested. It's, it's really focused on the things that we need going forward. But one of the things that we discussed, we bring into council pretty soon, is the new fee schedule for aquatics. And um, we, we had a pretty lively uh, discussion on that. But staff did a great job of giving comparative analysis and, and data sets from other cities. So we'll have some, you'll have all the info, but we will have all the information needed to make that decision. But other than that, it's a good group, and I, I think we uh, we're going in the right direction on that, so that's it.
Thank you. Uh, on transportation, the metro is slated to meet and we believe make a decision about the Green Line extension that would move the last stop from uh, Redondo Beach here, our Redondo Beach stop all the way down to the Torrance Transit Center. Uh, what, there's effectively three options, don't build it at all, take it down Hawthorne Boulevard, down the middle where the old train used to be, or follow the right-of-way as it exists now. Uh, it's an impossibly divisive topic. Uh, the Redondo, the residents of North Redondo do not want it on the right-of-way. And similarly, the Torrance City Council does not want it to go down Hawthorne Boulevard and shut down their car dealerships. And they've got, they both have valid points. It is a lively debate for a multi-billion dollar project. You know, the, the current estimates come in at about $2.4 billion uh, of your money for it. Uh, so it will be a big deal, and by virtue of the timing of their decision, the South Bay Cogs position will all be held at a Monday morning meeting at 10 a.m., which will be packed with irate people yelling and screaming. But it is a big deal, it's a lot of tax money, and it's interesting to know the variables that go on uh, in the conversations because they both have really valid arguments, Lawndale is somewhat stuck in the middle. And so people who, who realistically just don't want to be the last stop on a train line in the current environment in Los Angeles. Uh, so stay tuned for that. Um, other than that, uh, nothing further from me. My father's birthday, happy birthday, Dad. The old Colonel, Crankin' at 83 today. City attorney?
Nothing, Steve, thank you.
City manager?
I also have nothing else to add this evening. Thank you, Mayor Portem.
Very well, and with that, we are adjourned.